To participate in the general public comment period, please call now at 818-238-3335. For any scheduled public hearings, please call when prompted to speak if you want the comment to be part of the record. Members of the public may speak for up to three minutes, dependent on the number of speakers.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a regular meeting of the Burbank City Council. Today is Tuesday, September 10, 2024. I thank you all for joining us both in person and virtually this evening. As we begin every meeting, I ask that all of you, in your own way, join me for a moment of brief reflection. This moment is intended to begin our meeting with the positive and collective support of our beloved Burbank community. The City Council welcomes everyone joining us this evening, both those of you who are here in person and those of us watching live virtually this evening. We encourage you to take a moment right now to reflect on our community and the work that we will be doing together tonight. Although each of us has our own unique reasons for being here, we're united in our passion for this wonderful city that we all call home. And as we pause, let us consider our individual contributions and what it means to those around us. Let us find solace in knowing that by working together with a shared spirit of community and partnership, we will always act in the best interest for the betterment of Burbank and we will achieve great things together. So, thank you all. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it. Now, we have a special treat tonight. I understand that we have some scouts from Troop 204 with us. If you're here, would you mind standing up? Wonderful. So, scouts, I think I need a little bit of help with tonight's Pledge of Allegiance. Would you be willing to come to the podium and lead us all in giving the Pledge of Allegiance? Wonderful. Outstanding. So, everyone, please rise and we'll follow the lead of our scouts.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nicely done, scouts. Madam City Clerk, how are you this evening?
I'm terrific. How are you, Mr. Mayor?
I'm doing great after that. We should do that more often. Would you please conduct the roll?
I will. Councilmember Anthony?
I am in attendance.
Councilmember Mullins?
Here.
Councilmember Tagahashi?
Present.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Here.
And Mayor Schultz.
I'm going to construe that as a present. So, I'm also present. We have two present, two here, sorry, three present, two here for a quorum of five. Good job, everyone. There will be five periods of public comment tonight, everyone. This is the long part where I have to go through all the instructions, so please bear with me, but we're going to tell all of you when and how you can participate in public comment this evening. So, as I said, there will be five periods. Members of the public may comment in person or by telephone during the first period of public comment, which is the general public comment period. The first period of public comment is for any matter concerning city business and/or any agenda item that the council will be considering tonight. If you're here in person and would like to speak during general public comment, you should have and still can submit one of the yellow public comment cards, Ms. Clark or Ms. Ty. Would you mind holding that up so everyone can see it? They're available right over here when you enter the room, so you still can fill that out. When you fill out the card, you will have the option of selecting either one minute to speak or three minutes to speak. Those who select to go with one minute will go first. Once we've completed all of those comment cards, we will then take all of the three-minute speakers. If you'd like to participate in the general public comment by phone, you can call right now at 818-238-3335. You'll be placed in a queue until all of the in-person public comment has been received. Now, the second period of public comment tonight is for our public hearing. We'll be taking, again, in-person public comment and telephonic public comment for that item, but if you're hoping to speak to the public hearing item, please do not call in just yet. We will prompt you when to call into that number so you can get into the queue. Additional in-person-only public comment will follow each of the reports this evening to the City Council made by our staff. We also have interpreters available with us this evening to assist for those who need assistance with public comment. We have both Spanish and Armenian interpreters here with us. Would our interpreters give a wave of the hand or stand up? So, they're right over here in the corner. Thank you both for being here. If you are in need of interpretive services, it's currently, you know, about 6:10 PM. I'm going to ask that you check in with one of them if you need assistance by 6:30 PM. If no request has been made by 6:30 PM, then you're both free to go, and thank you very much for your service this evening. The last thing I would like to add is that with five periods of public comment, I don't anticipate it, but I always reserve the right as the presiding officer to reduce speaking time if necessary to ensure that everyone who wants to address the council has ample opportunity to do so. I do not anticipate that being necessary at this time. The last instruction I'll just give is that in this front row right here, we have a chair that's marked for public comment, so as is our custom and tradition, I will call up two names. The first name I call up, it will be your opportunity to address the council. The second name, you're in the queue or on deck or however you like to describe it, that seat's reserved for you, so that as soon as the person giving comment is done, you can jump right up and we'll make the whole process move a lot quicker this evening. So, thank you, everyone, for your participation. And before we get to public comment, we would actually like to have a special recognition of adjournment this evening. Tonight, City Council will be adjourning in the memory of former Burbank Water and Power Board member, Justin Barden. And we have the slideshow on the screen. I invite you to direct your attention there. Justin Barden was someone who achieved extraordinary things. He graduated top of his class at the Naval Academy and went straight to Harvard Business School, also finishing at the top of his class. From there, Justin, in his naval career, began learning about nuclear power at the Naval Nuclear Power School. He served on the fast-attack submarine, the USS Nevada, earning several awards and distinctions. And after his service in the United States Navy, he found his way to Southern California Edison in their e-mobility program and ended up becoming the lead of the Program Management Office. Justin truly enjoyed working in the energy sector. He absolutely loved and cherished his time on the Burbank Water and Power Board and often talked about it with anyone who'd be willing to talk about power. I was one of those folks. On behalf of the Burbank City Council, I'd like to extend my condolences to Justin's family, and I just want to add a personal note. Justin was one of the folks who, after the results of the 2020 election, welcomed me with very open arms to the city. He was the very best among us. He was a family man, and I know that his family may not be here with us tonight, but I know that they are all with us tonight and celebrating everything that he contributed, not just to our nation, but to this community. And I think that if we all hold Justin in our hearts as an example of an incredible public servant, someone who just wanted to make the world a better place and leave it a little bit better for his kids and for the next generation, I think if we all carry that in our hearts, our world's going to be a better place. So, tonight, we will be adjourning in your memory, Justin, and you will be missed but never forgotten. With that, we have seven announcements this evening. If we can play the announcements.
The following are announcements for September 10, 2024. The City of Burbank is hosting several community meetings to receive public input on a potential rent cap study in Burbank. The City invites residents to attend any one of the remaining in-person or virtual meetings to learn more about a potential rent cap and provide their feedback. Each meeting will provide the same information to give residents multiple scheduling options to attend. The City is also collecting public input through an online feedback form. Interpretation services are available in English, Armenian, and Spanish. To participate and learn more, please visit burbankrentcapstudy.com. The volunteers of the Burbank Animal Shelter's annual online silent auction fundraiser is returning September 13 through the 15. Take this opportunity to bid on a variety of items, including vacation stays, wine tastings, Disney and DC memorabilia, Disney park hopper tickets, artwork, and more. Get a sneak peek of available items by following the QR code or visiting new.biddingowl.com/vbas. The Burbank City Clerk's Office is accepting applications for one vacancy on the Burbank Housing Corporation Board of Directors for a full two-year term and one vacancy on the Art and Public Places Committee for an unexpired term ending July 31, 2026. The deadline to submit an application is Monday, September 30 at 5:00 PM. If interested in applying for either of these vacancies, apply online at burbankca.gov/bccapplication. For more information, please contact the Burbank City Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851 or email cityclerks@burbankca.gov. The City Clerk's Office would like to remind everyone that National Voter Registration Day is Tuesday, September 17, 2024. You can register online at lavote.gov or pick up a voter registration card in the City Clerk's Office or at any Burbank library. In addition, the City of Burbank and the Burbank Unified School District will host the annual Clerk's Cup Voter Registration Contest, in which high school students from Burbank High School and John Burrows High School compete to see which school can register the most voters. The contest runs from September 16 through October 4 in conjunction with National Voter Registration Day. The City Clerk's Office would like to remind residents that removal of election signs from another person's property is a crime. To report election sign violations, please contact the City Clerk's Office at 818-238-5851 or email cityclerks@burbankca.gov. In honor of California Clean Air Day and a commitment to promoting sustainable transportation, the City of Burbank will be waiving all bus fares for the Burbank Bus on Wednesday, October 2. This includes all fixed route and senior and disabled transit services. Learn more and find your route at burbankca.gov/burbankbus. The City of Burbank has launched a new initiative, the Free Bicycle Rack Program, which offers businesses the opportunity to have bicycle racks installed in the public right-of-way at no cost, fostering a more bike-friendly environment across the city. The bike racks will be installed on a quarterly basis with applications processed on a first-come, first-served basis. Interested businesses can complete an interest form or learn more by visiting the city's website. This concludes the announcements for this evening.
All right. Next up, we have one council presentation this evening, and I'd like to assist with that presentation, invite our elected City Clerk, Kimberly Clark, to join me up here. Everyone, feel free to give a round of applause to Ms. Clark. So, September 17 is National Voter Registration Day. Kimberly, thank you for being here. I have a proclamation that I'm going to read, and then I think you have a little bit of words of wisdom for the community. Whereas, one of the most fundamental and sacred rights of any democracy is the right to vote. In order for our government to function effectively and to respond to the needs of our people, all citizens can and must play a role in shaping it. And whereas each year on National Voter Registration Day, we reaffirm the strong sense of civic pride among our people and encourage our friends, family members, and neighbors to get involved in civic life by registering to vote. And whereas democracy is not a spectator sport, if we're serious about improving our country and ensuring our government reflects our values, we can't afford to sit out on Election Day. Unfortunately, among those who are eligible to vote, far too many choose not to. Far too many folks disenfranchise themselves by not getting involved. And whereas, when we do not take full advantage of the right to vote, we not only give away our voice, our power, our ability to shape the future of the country and the communities that we love, we also do a disservice to the generations of Americans before us who risked everything, who gave everything, including their lives, to protect this fundamental aspect of our republic. And whereas heroic things happen when people get involved, our government is only as strong as what we put into it, and it's only reflective of the will of our citizenry when we exercise our right to vote. Now, therefore, I, Nick Schultz, Mayor of the City of Burbank, do hereby proclaim September 17, 2024, as National Voter Registration Day in recognition for all of us to carry forward the tradition of promoting voter registration and civic engagement. I encourage all of us to recommit ourselves to exercising one of the most precious rights of our democracy, and we must remember that the task of perfecting our union belongs to all of us. I call upon all of our residents of the City of Burbank to observe this day by ensuring that they and everyone they know are registered to vote. Kimberly, floor is yours.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I think there's an old expression that says something like, "A politician thinks of the next election. A statesman thinks of the next generation." I thought that was a good quote to share tonight. So, National Voter Registration indeed is September 17. You can register to vote online at lavote.org, sorry, at .gov, or you can pick up a voter registration card in my office downstairs or in any Burbank library. In addition to the Clerk's Cup, which is the comprehensive high school contest between Burrows and Burbank, we will also be participating in two community events tomorrow, the 55 and Beyond Resource Fair at the Jocelyn Adult Center, and we're having a voter registration drive tomorrow at Woodbury University. The idea with the second event is to capture some of the students who are here from out of state who may not be able to participate in this election if they don't reregister at their temporary address here. So, as a reminder, oh, the public's invited. You're definitely invited to come to both events. The Jocelyn Adult Center event will be very nice, too. As a reminder, the last date to register to vote for the upcoming November 5 election is October 21. If your name is changed or if you moved, you will need to reregister by the deadline. So, remember, your vote is your voice, and your voice is important. So, thank you for participating, and thank you for the proclamation.
Of course. Here you go. Thank you. Thank you all. That completes our presentation. Mr. Hess, what's the latest?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do have one item for tonight. I'd like to introduce Mary Hamzoeen from our Community Development Department, and she's going to provide a brief update on our new business concierge position.
Good evening, Mayor Schultz, Vice Mayor Perez, council members, and members of the public. My name is Mary Hamzoeen with the Community Development Department. I'm here tonight, and I'm very excited to provide you with an update on our efforts since you adopted our five-year economic development strategic plan back in March of 2024. When we were developing the plan, the number-one thing that we heard from the public was, "We need someone to help us." Our small and medium-sized businesses go through our permitting and entitlement process. So, we heard them, and you heard them, and during our fiscal year 2024-25 budget process, you approved a position for our business concierge back in July. While business concierge services have always been a priority for economic development, until now, we hadn't had a designated staff member that was working on that task. So, I want to introduce you all to Jordan Hill. I'm not sure if you've seen her. I'm sure you've already met her, and if you haven't, you will definitely get to know her. She is our new business concierge. Jordan's focus will be to proactively, and I say that proactively because she's doing a great job in assisting small and medium-sized businesses through the city's entitlement process, while also working with the internal city team to streamline and create greater efficiencies within our internal city process. So, in economic development, we work as a team, and we provide a variety of different business services to the community, such as site selection, zoning assistance, and business concierge services. So, Jordan began her role in July, and since then, we have provided over 700 business concierge services to the community. Some of the success stories I'd like to share with you include assisting Rivian Motors in obtaining their permits so that they can open for their deadline of 2024, assisting Hollywood Production Center right down the street with their tenants obtaining their business registrations, and working on options and solutions for restaurants with our outdoor dining and private parking lots. So, we're very happy to have Jordan join our team. And just for clarification, members and potential members of the public and the business community may contact me directly for economic development and business concierge services. And now, I'd like to ask Jordan to come up and say a few words.
Thank you, Mary. Good evening, Mayor Schultz, Vice Mayor Perez, and council members. I'm so pleased to be here this evening. Thank you for allowing me the time to introduce myself to you and to our community. My name is Jordan Hill, and I'm excited to say that I am the city's new business concierge. I began my career here with the city and the Community Development Department, and this is section of Building and Safety. And during that time, I worked closely with the business community in a slightly different capacity for code enforcement, but as of July of this year, I transitioned into economic development, and I am dedicating my services to our business community and all the business concierge services that they deserve and have been asking for for so long. And prior to the City of Burbank, I have a long history of career, but the most important, I think, I'll share is that I did work as a business and community liaison for the Port of Oakland Social Responsibility Division. I have experience in community services program management, real estate, as well as contract compliance. The focus for my new role is to provide support and assistance to our business community from small to medium-sized businesses, and that includes providing guidance throughout the city's processes, whether it be business licensing, permitting, and a lot of the obstacles that they face along the way that we are finding that we can mitigate pretty easily in many cases and some not, but we're working on those as well. And the end goal for us is to improve our processes overall, so that their experience is enhanced and that they feel like they are important and that we guide them along the way so that they don't feel like they're just lost in the process and ultimately provide them with exemplary service. So, I'm thrilled to be in this position, to serve in this capacity. I've always wanted to be in a position where I can make a big difference, and I think that this is the opportunity to do so, and we've already made a lot of great changes. So, thank you again. Also, I wanted just to say that for any questions or assistance, you may again contact Mary Hamzoeen through our Economic Development. And it should be a slide. I thought we might have a slide up that had our contact information available, but if not, you're welcome to reach out to us, and we'll guide you in the right direction. Thank you again.
Thank you both. Congratulations. Mr. Hess, anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. McDougal, would you please report out on tonight's closed session?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the City Council, for the benefit of the public, the City Council met this afternoon at 4:30 PM to discuss two items in closed session. The first item was a matter of existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.91 in the case of Sally Caddick versus City of Burbank. That was a personal injury case. And also, they met with the city's labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6. The city's negotiator is Ms. Betsy McClinton, the Management Services Director, and the council met to discuss the Burbank Police Officer Association contract. City Council took no reportable action this evening.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. McDougal. Now is the time we've all been waiting for, general public comment. I will be calling out the first speaker's name, as well as the person who will be next in line to speak. In order to keep public comment moving in a timely fashion, we have the aforementioned designated seat right here in the first row. Please note that a timer is available on the podium so that you know how much time you have remaining. You may choose to use the first period of public comment to address an agendized report, but if you do so, you will not be able to speak to that item following the staff report when we get to that later portion of the agenda. The council asks that you state your name for the record, and for those wishing to call in, if you haven't already done so, you can call right now at 818-238-3335. Again, you'll be placed in a queue until all in-person public comment has been received. All right. I have our general public comment cards. I will note for the record that we have no one-minute speaker cards, so we'll go to three-minute speaker cards. First up, I have Joel Schlossman, followed by Ron Backs.
Good evening, everybody. You know, I read the everybody's applications for the parking rec item on your agenda tonight. Look no further than right there, Mr. Hirsch. Wonderful record of service to our community, and it's a no-brainer. I like what the City Clerk said about thinking generationally instead of short-term. And that brings me to this bond. It's called Measure ABC, and it is a disaster for everybody here in Burbank. It's a disaster for our seniors, fixed income, disabled, and, most importantly, our youth, because it saddles our youth with 30 years of higher payments. And our youth does not understand compound interest. Our youth does not know what an amortization schedule is. And these very basic principles, their mathematic principles, can yield great wealth, but it keeps you poor when you're taxed and taxed and taxed. This is the sixth time the school board, and I've been around, I've been around over 40 years paying attention, has come to us for either a parcel tax or a bond, and we've been generous. We gave them two bonds, hundreds of millions of dollars already. And this, the total cost of this thing, ABC, is $1.1 billion. It's more money than all the other bonds combined. Now, we've been generous, and if you want to see mismanagement at the school board, you watch last Thursday's meeting. All you got to watch is the five minutes I spoke and the 15 minutes they spent berating me. There is no accountability, and I'm embarrassed to say what Weisberg, I'm embarrassed to repeat what Weisberg said to me. It's shocking, and there's no trust, and we should not trust them. And in my last 55 seconds, the superintendent, Paramo, said I looked to him for help through all the chaos, and he said, "They have their First Amendment, too." But as we all know, and the city attorney will tell you, they do not. I have it. Everybody here has it, but you folks up there are bound to the Brown Act, the Ralph M. Brown Act. You must comply, and it's not anything goes over there. And they think because a few air conditioners break down, they got hundreds of air conditioners. And when a few break down, we're supposed to reach into our wallets for 30 years and destroy our retirements and destroy our children's future. Last 12 seconds, do everybody a favor. Vote no. And here's my phone number, 818-442-8118. I invite you to call me, and I'll be happy to put a yard sign in your yard that says, "Vote no."
Thank you for your comment.
And that goes for everybody.
Next, we have Ron Backs, followed by Jeff Ferguson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, Mr. City Attorney, Mr. City Manager, Ron Backs. I've crossed the 72-year line now. You have before you tonight a seismic retrofit ordinance. Please keep in mind the financial impact it will have on housing providers when you are considering rent caps. When I investigated the potential cost, Jennifer at David &amp; Schultz told me to expect $250,000, and that was before the present inflationary cycle we're in. I don't know other, how, I don't know other housing providers' financial practices, but I don't have that lying around. I haven't, I had to take out a line of credit. I proposed subsidies as an alternate to rent caps at this podium and in emails to all of you. The mayor confided subsidies was brought up during the previous council session when he spoke at the Burbank Association Realtors and lamented why it was not pursued. You have asked for a counter to the BTU-proposed ordinance. I have given you that. Subsidies, they are far better approach than rent caps for the reasons I have previously given. They are targeted, thereby efficient and effective. They help those in need of help and exclude those who do not need it. Housing is a societal problem and should be handled by society. A solution should not be forced upon some housing providers to implement. They are immediate, that is, the subsidies are immediate. Organizations such as Hollow guide their clients into recovery, not indiscriminately throw money at them. Here's some deductive reasoning. Do some citizens of Burbank need financial housing assistance? I think the answer is yes. Do you want, do we want to help Burbank citizens needing financial housing assistance? Again, yes. Do we want to grant a windfall to Burbank citizens that do not need financial housing assistance? The answer should be no.
When I investigated the potential cost, Jennifer at David N. Schultz told me to expect $250,000, and that was before the present inflationary cycle we're in. I don't know other, how, I don't know other housing providers' financial practices, but I don't have that lying around. I haven't, I had to take out a line of credit. I proposed subsidies as an alternate to rent caps at this podium and in emails to all of you. The mayor confided subsidies was brought up during the previous council session when he spoke at the Burbank Association Realtors and lamented why it was not pursued. You have asked for a counter to the BTU-proposed ordinance. I have given you that. Subsidies, they are far better approach than rent caps for the reasons I have previously given. They are targeted, thereby efficient and effective. They help those in need of help and exclude those who do not need it. Housing is a societal problem and should be handled by society. A solution should not be forced upon some housing providers to implement. They are immediate, that is, the subsidies are immediate. Organizations such as Holla guide their clients into recovery, not indiscriminately throw money at them. Here's some deductive reasoning. Do some citizens of Burbank need financial housing assistance? I think the answer is yes. Do you want, do we want to help Burbank citizens needing financial housing assistance? Again, yes. Do we want to grant a windfall to Burbank citizens that do not need financial housing assistance? The answer should be no. Do rent caps satisfy two and three above? No, they violate three. Do subsidies satisfy two and three above? Yes, two and three are met. Holla presented a few meetings ago its multifaceted program. Based on that presentation and having worked with the city previously, is Holla a good candidate to administer a housing assistance program? Absolutely, yes. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, council.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Jeff Ferguson, followed by Lawrence Hill.
Council members and community members, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jeff Ferguson, and I am applying for a seat in the Art in Public Places Committee. As a business owner here in Burbank, I have a deep appreciation for the culture and artistic heartbeat of our city, and I'm excited about the opportunity to contribute further with this community. With my background in retail, marketing, and community events, I believe I can bring a unique perspective that bridges business, community engagement, and artistic expression. My record store, Run Out Groove Records, is not just a business, but also a space that has fostered creative expression, whether through in-store performances or collaborations with local artists. In addition to my application, I also wanted to take a moment to formally announce this year's Holiday in the Park event in Magnolia Park, which I'm actually the event coordinator for. Many of your calendars, mark your calendars now for November 22nd from 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM. This year, we are expanding the event to 10 full blocks of Magnolia Boulevard, stretching from North Hollywood Way. With this added space, we expect to be bigger and better than ever, showcasing local businesses, artists, and a variety of food and entertainment options. I also like to remind everybody that registration is open for exhibitor spaces, our annual car show, and sponsorship opportunities. Early bird pricing ends on September 15th, and regular registration ends middle of October. So now is the perfect time to get involved. For more information, you can direct your web browser to visit magnoliapark.com. Thank you again for your time and consideration, and I look forward to the possibility of serving the Art in Public Places Committee and continue to contribute to our vibrant community.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Lawrence Hill, followed by Jane Boylan.
Good evening. My name is Lawrence Hill. I'm a 58-year resident of Burbank, and presently, I live in a nine-unit condominium building with the Homeowners Association in Burbank. We also have a rec room in this condominium building, and it's not a gym or anything like that. It's just a 600-square-foot studio apartment. So the reason I'm here tonight is that we're having an issue with the city of Burbank on the building permit application for the ADU. Now, the rec room is about 600 square feet. It's a studio apartment. It has a full kitchen. It has a bathroom, central air and heat. It has a parking space and a secured garage, and it also has just one entrance in, one entrance out. This rec room was built at the same time as the condominium project, which was 2001, 2002, and the city issued a occupancy permit in 2003. So many of our owners, because of the costs of running an HOA now in California, is just rapidly increasing, they said, why don't we get, turn our rec room into an ADU? It's already finished. There's nothing to do. It's 20 years old. We don't have to do anything to do it. So we applied in July of 2023 for an ADU. We paid all of our fees, all of our permits, thousands of dollars, and a few weeks ago, the planning board, so it took a year, the planning board said, everything is approved for you. Come in and pay your fees to the Public Works, and we will give you a building permit application. Well, we did. So we then paid another $1,500 to Public Works. We took our building permit application, which showed zero construction changes. Nothing was done. Value of construction was zero. So we took that to the building permit office, and they said that our permit would be $4,091.99. $4,000 for a permit where nothing was done, nothing was required. They also said that we'd have to pay another fee for a valuation of $200,000, and we would have to get a building contractor to pull this permit. The question that I ask is, why would we have all of these fees for an ADU permit that absolutely nothing was done, and the whole purpose of a building permit is to pay a permit fee, pay permit fees on the value of your work? We had zero work done. It says right on the permit application. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Before we take our next speaker, I just want to note it's approximately 6:37 PM. Our interpreters, have we had any requests? No? All right, well, thank you both for being here. You're both free to go. Thank you for your service. Next, we have Jane Boylan, followed by Vicky Kirschenbaum.
Hi. I have a tremor, so I'm not going to self-combust. Don't see me shaking. I live up on Purvis Drive, up on the hillside, and one of my adjoining neighbors has built a McMansion, and they don't have a permit for it. They have a permit for a 1,500-square-foot addition. They're building, they completely demolished the house, trucked in six feet of dirt, and they're building a 3,600-square-foot McMansion that is now blocking my view. Every time I look out my window, I see that superstructure when I used to have a sweeping view of the hillside that you could see coming up my driveway. I had a real estate agent over to my house today. They told me I've lost $50,000 in value on my property due to the loss of view. That is not right. They should have had to go through the appropriate permitting process. That would have given me notification, because my property borders theirs. They would have had to put the sticks up. They would not have been able to truck in dirt to do this monster, whatever it is. And I can't, so I went down to the building department, and I asked to find out what their permitting was, because the structure just kept getting taller and taller and taller. It is actually taller than a two-story, eight feet taller than a two-story house, and it's a one-story. And so the person I spoke to informed me that they couldn't truck in dirt, that they didn't have the appropriate permit. I spoke to the inspector. He was incredibly rude to me and told me not to call him, and he also said, I said, fine, I'll talk to your boss, and he said, ha, 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 go ahead, bring it on. And so the manager of the department called me, and I expressed my not having confidence that he was going to do anything because of what the inspector said to me, and he was saying, well, what's my problem with this? That, so what? They have this permit for 1,500-square-foot addition, and so what if they demolished the house? And I said, you guys failed me because my concrete pad wasn't thick enough when I redid my electrical box, and you don't have a problem with that? I said, I was denied my due process. If I had been notified and those sticks went up, you better believe that I would have been down to the city of Burbank. I am close to retirement age. If I had a car in my driveway that was worth $50,000 and somebody stole it from there, the police would arrive, they would take a report. Why should they be allowed to build equity in their property in that way while robbing me of my equity when I am so close to retirement? This is completely wrong. When I talked to the real estate agent, he told me that I am not alone in this, that is, this is happening to multiple people. This cannot go on. You know, this is so wrong. It, you know, it just, they don't even have a permit, and the building department doesn't even feel like that is a problem. You know, this needs to change. It can't happen to me. You know, there's probably nothing that's going to stop what's happening to me. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Next, we have Vicky Kirschenbaum, followed by David Kishian.
Hi, my name is Vicky Kirschenbaum. Thanks for this opportunity to speak tonight. I am the Chair of the Sustainable Burbank Commission, although I'm only speaking on my own behalf this evening. I strongly urge council to support an ordinance banning gas-powered leaf blowers modeled on the pasting ordinance, beginning with a transition to electric leaf blowers on city properties and setting a deadline of one year for a citywide replacement of gas-powered blowers with electric. The staff report is flawed. Noise is a significant nuisance to residents and can lead to hearing loss for operators. Health and safety are major concerns. Gas-powered blowers emit high levels of benzene, formaldehyde, and fine particulates, all known carcinogens. The two-stroke engine is among the dirtiest on earth, emitting carbon monoxide and NOx. 20 pounds of CO2 are emitted per gallon of gas burned, contributing to greenhouse gas emissions, which is a major reason why California banned the sale of all-new gas-powered leaf blowers, lawn mowers, and small off-road engines as of January 1, 2024. Also, switching to electric leaf blowers is a cost savings over time. There's no gas to buy, no oil, no spark plugs, no filters, and no engine maintenance. Glendale, working with the American Green Zone Alliance, has successfully banned not just leaf blowers, but almost all gas-powered landscaping equipment at its 147 city properties, including parks. At the press conference, which I attended, Glendale staff and electeds celebrated the transition for the health and safety benefits, the improved quality of life, and cost savings, I'm going to repeat that, the cost savings were celebrated by the city of Glendale. So let's start with eliminated gas-powered leaf blowers on city properly, property. Let's roll out a citywide ban, and let's work toward that goal that Glendale accomplished of transitioning to all electric landscaping equipment on city properties.
All right. Thank you for your comment. Our next speaker, David Kishian, is actually hoping to speak to another agenda item, so we're going to put that card aside. That would make our next speaker, Maya Shavzian. I apologize for any mispronunciations. Please feel free to correct me, followed by Diane McKinnon.
Esteemed council member and staff, I'm Maya Shavzian. Thank you for listening. I will use the acronym SOARS, Small Off-Road Engines, to refer to gas-powered landscaping equipment. It's leaf blowers, but also tremors, mowers, et cetera, and I support the banning of two-stroke engines, not just leaf blowers. SOARS emit pollution, greenhouse gases, and cancer-causing particles that are truly mind-boggling. For lack of time, I'd be happy to send resources detailing their horrors to anyone who's interested. But understand, delaying action is irresponsible, both in terms of noise and air pollution. They degrade the quality of life in our city. They pose a serious health hazard, and they are everywhere. I am a highly sensitive person, so my personal experience of noxious smells and noises is physically painful. Hearing a two-stroke engine is like a giant drill, burrowing it into my skull. Smelling the fumes is utterly choking. I understand, not everyone is like that, but I assure you, there is a vast and silent majority of residents who despise these machines. The report that will be presented to you later today claims there will not be much difference in noise reduction compared to electric equipment, but I argue it completely misses the point in the potential improvement in people's experience. Of course, I'd much rather everyone just use rakes or leave the leaves alone, but battery or electric equipment, putting aside the world of difference in emissions, has a different frequency of sound, and that matters significantly. That is why I hear SOARS from two blocks away, but new equipment from only half a block away. To me, that is the difference between a vacuum cleaner and a jet engine. SOARS harm the quality of life for all of us. They warm the planet, and they poison the very people who rely on them for work, despite the existence of alternatives. Honestly, the profits of landscaping companies are not my concern. I understand, however, that to a degree, they are to you. But I implore you, serve your constituents. Prioritize the benefit of the larger community above a minority of business interests who make their own employees sick. There are existing incentives to switch. The employers will have to adjust, and I wholeheartedly support funding for the city to help them do that. But don't forget, the greater good of the community is within your charge. Peace and quiet, clean air, worker health and safety, greenhouse gas reduction, that's what we are trading off daily. For what? Leaves? It's just not worth it. You know what I would like much more than not seeing leaves on the ground? To breathe fresh air, to wake up in the morning when I choose to, to take a walk outside before sundown, or open a window during the day. You have the power to gift these basic rights to all of us, and I ask you with everything in me, do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Diane McKinnon, followed by Mark Scroggs.
Hello. You haven't seen me in a while because we've been busy. Such a great speech to come after, actually, two great speeches, and it's due to, obviously, the tree removals, mast tree removals that we are having in this city, as you all know about. It's been about a year now since we've started our legal issues with the city. Thankfully, Marissa showed up just in time to hear me speak. I'd like to let you know, something you probably don't know, is that your MND, which is your mitigated negative declaration, has been completed. The 45 days of public comment has also been completed. I urge you to get those emails, please, from Parks and Rec, from your city manager. Read through what the public comment has said. I also urge you to take that almost 1,000-page document that is full of very interesting information, I'm not going to call it facts, and I suggest you have a very true, real third party that you come up with, not us, not your legal team, that you guys come up with, who can read that document and give you the lay terms on what it says, as we have paid for and done for ourselves, and you will see them in our comments. Please read it. Also, as we know, there is an election coming up, and as we know, a former person who used to work for the city is going up for a city council position. I suggest, since that's a little bit of a conflict of interest, that we complete this project together. You, as the council who started it, with us, we keep your integrity intact as positions change, and you see this through to the end. I ask that you please take the rest of the month to do this, and that we are on the agenda for October, as we were supposed to be on the agenda for August, and were randomly removed without any information, and the website was changed without anyone being told. So we have had zero information given to us, and we have had to constantly ask numerous times, and then go through lawyers to ask, because no one will respond, and no one has an answer. Please, this information is very important. We talk about clean air. You talk about the future for your children. You guys need to look up what a heat island effect is, because that's what this woman is creating in your city, and your children, literally your children, their generation, will not be able to live here. You are turning an oasis back into a desert when people took so long to create this place for us to live. Please don't let that happen.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Mark Scroggs, followed by Joe Pimienta.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Mark Scroggs. I've recently started reaching out to city council candidates and reviewing materials they have online. There's a lot of material, a lot of good interviews, articles, podcasts. It's really helpful, because I had noticed that hadn't happened in the past here. I've been really wanting to find out more what they would think about the current state of the entertainment industry. So, but then I was thinking, there's nine candidates, and I remember in an earlier meeting that there was a discussion about changing certain things to rank voting. Rank voting is where you kind of put everybody in a category and then kind of eliminate as you go along. With nine candidates, that would have been great this time. It's too late, I understand. Most years, I'm a longtime Emmy voter, we do that for voting for shows. You know, you pick at one to eight, and the Oscars also does it, where you have to kind of think about what you're voting for. So it's not like, oh, I'm just voting for this one, although that one has a great name or, you know, let's do this in random. You have to think, because number four's choice may be more important in that, and I just think it's great to start thinking about implementing that for certain things in the future. So I'm just thinking ahead. I just think it's, you know, it's time, and people just kind of, you know, you want to get people involved, and you want people to know who they're voting for. So that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Joe Pimienta, followed by Eric Hock.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, staff, and everyone, and everyone else in the chamber. I just want to echo what the previous speaker said. I think rank voting is great. I hope it comes up later. I'm going to try to be really quick about this, just, I just want to continue to inform everybody that the rent cap studies have already begun. Two of them have already gone down, one in person, one virtual. Presence was, presence was great. The presentations were very good, and all the responses from the city attorney were very informative. So I just want to thank everyone that has been working hard on that, and also just for everyone that has been participating. Not to mention that it also has been, you know, some of the results have been exactly what everyone was looking for. There has been a lot of input for the community, and there were a lot of people that not only did not know, that were not aware of what a rent cap could be, were not aware that there was a tenant landlord commission, let alone that the BTU has been fighting, you know, for more stable rents for quite some time. And also, a lot of landlords have also been coming out, asking us also very interesting questions. They have been asking They have been asking us about a rent stabilization ordinance, they've been asking, like, what else is in there? So we've been engaging a little bit in those conversations, and that, I think, is a very positive thing. The only thing that kind of does stick out, because it has happened more than in one occasion, is that I have had a couple of different people come up to several tenants, and myself included, asking that, like, well, if you can't afford to live here, where should, you know, don't you think that you should move to, and that there's no legal requirement to live here? To which I say, well, yeah, okay, but however, don't we think that if you have found a place to call home, isn't it also your right to fight to remain there? And that is also something that kind of tends to stick around, because, again, most people, you know, most of our opposition seems to think of tenants as transient, not taking into consideration that some of them have been living longer even than I've been alive. Anyways, just wanted to put that in there. The rest of it, yes. The other thing that I wanted to bring up is that, as someone who bikes everywhere, the other day I was biking on my way to Glendale, on my way to Glendale, and I noticed that some of the repairs on San Fernando Road have finally been made, where now it's a very clear distinction on where is a bike lane, and that has been very pleasant to, just as a cyclist, to know that there are designated spaces, that there are designated indications. And I would just hope that that gets more taken into consideration, and that we have more of that here in Burbank. More designated lanes for bikes, more designated lanes for buses, because that would actually help all the people who do not use a car, or who choose not to, you know, who choose not to use a car. Thank you for your time, and enjoy the rest of your evening.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Eric Hock, followed by Nissenia Espinoza.
Hi. Hey, hey, and good evening, everybody, to the Burbank City Council, of course. My name, for the record, again, is Eric Hock. I'm the president of the Burbank Community Band Board of Directors, and I think it's appropriate, I should start my statement, by thanking this council. Earlier this year, the Burbank Community Band was honored to be recipient of the first community arts grant to the city of Burbank. Our band is deeply honored by the support the members of this council have shown to our volunteer band, are so happy that we may continue to be part of the fabric of the city of Burbank, and it's been now 85 years since our band's first musicians performed for the employees of Lockheed as they built aircraft in the 1940s, just a short distance from here. For those of you watching this comment, who may not know who the Burbank Community Band is, we are a band of between 50 and 60 volunteer musicians, and if you've ever played a brass or a woodwind instrument, would like to rehearse and perform with other musicians, please do not hesitate to reach out to the Burbank Community Band, as we will be happy to welcome you to our Friday rehearsals from 9:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. at Robert E. Gross Park in Burbank. The start of our 2024-2025 concert season, I am so happy to share with you all that our first concert this season is coming up at the end of October, and this will be, and I think the band is really excited about this one as well, on Saturday, October 26, at 5:00 p.m., the band will be performing in the city of Burbank at First Christian Church of Burbank at 221 South Sixth Street, and this is going to be the Burbank Community Band's second annual Halloween concert, featuring the music of this haunting season. Among the pieces we will be featuring will be Edvard Grieg's March of the Trolls and Puccini's La Tragenda. We also feature scores from stage and screen, with selections from Harry Potter and the stage production of Wicked, and a number of Danny Elfman themes from Tim Burton films, including The Nightmare Before Christmas, as well as Beetlejuice. This will be a free concert, and to further celebrate the season, we will also have a costume contest with prizes for best Halloween costumes, a contest for children in costume, as well as a contest for adults who also attend in costume. So I do hope you can join us on Saturday, October 26, at 5:00 p.m. at First Christian Church of Burbank at 221 South Sixth Street, at the corner of Sixth Street and Angelino Avenue. And with respect to this concert, I am very happy to say that this concert is being made possible by the generous support of the Community Arts Grant from the city of Burbank. Thank you once again to this council, the city's support, and hopefully you can attend our first concert this season. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment. Are you looking for any more tenor saxophonists? We should chat. I'll do it offline, otherwise Joe's going to get mad at me here. All right. Nissenia Espinoza for three minutes, followed by Mary Parcells.
All right. Good evening. You're either going to love me or hate me, because I want to take just like a second to say how proud I am of all of you, seriously. I am a counselor, I'm in education, and you are the role models that I talk about when I go into the classrooms and tell my kids, you know, keep going, education is the way. So thank you for being here in leadership of this beautiful Burbank. So I also want to say thank you to everyone else here, because every single person here is also a great example of what it is to be a city member and to have that love, which is why, as a committee member of troop 204, the scouts that opened our meeting make us just so proud, because they're here to get their, to learn about being good citizens, and to get their Eagle Scout Award in the future, very near future, we hope. And so I am here to just say that we are meeting at First Christian Church, and we meet on Sundays at 5:30, and our scouts here are actually founders, and that means that they are going to be a part of Burbank's legacy forever. So if I can have a round of applause for them. The Boy Troop is actually, was there 100 years, and so this is huge for our scouts here, and so we want to welcome other scouts to join us on Sundays at 5:30. And before I forget, I just want to say, you've heard of Girl Scout cookies, yes? Well, we have popcorn, and so please support our troop and any scout troop with purchasing popcorn. We are going to be picking up our bunch tonight, and so just, we get a big chunk of whatever gets sold, and that helps our scouts keep growing and learning about being good citizens, about helping others, and also have a little fun, like hiking, and rappelling, and canoeing, and doing all of these things. We are proud to be a part of this awesome organization that I'm sure a lot of you were part of, too. So thank you for the time, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you for your comment. And thank you again to all of our scouts. Next, we have Mary Parcells, followed by David Donahue.
Hi, I'm Mary Parcells. I'm a member of the Society of St. Vincent de Paul here in Burbank, the St. Vincent Conference, and I have invitations for all of you. We are holding our 10th annual Friends of the Poor Walk, which is our only fundraiser all year. St. Vincent de Paul is an international Catholic volunteer organization that serves the needy of any religion, religious background, or no religious background, free of charge, founded in Paris, France in 1833 by a compassionate college student and five of his friends. Due to technical things, technical glitches, I couldn't get this to you earlier. It's September 21 in the morning. We have gladly had, he was then Vice Mayor Anthony, would join us, and you can get to know who we are, and we put out, along the walk route, is poverty statistics, what are some of the things that are affecting our community. We do mostly rental assistance, utility assistance, but we do, our motto is no act of charities foreign to the society, so if somebody needs something, and we know about it, we try to help them. And if they live outside of our area, our designated area, that's what Friends of the Poor money comes from. And also, we go out and find out what their needs are, and we bring it to the council, to the next level up, and say, how do we help them? And I'm considered a resource person, because I live on social security disability. I have to know what the resources are. So when they need help, they say, Mary! So that's, and I'm the walk coordinator, that's why I'm officially inviting you. So I'm just going to, and I have five extra flyers, because I didn't know how many other people would want one, so. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I'll see you on the 21st. Looking forward to it. All right. Next, we have David Donahue, and then my last comment card is Michael Stanley.
Mayor Schultz, council members and staff, my name is David Donahue. It's been my pleasure to be in front of this dais many times, make comments. To the scouts that are in this room and in this chamber, welcome. You have an opportunity to pay attention to deliberations. You have an opportunity to see the process that happens when two different parties have different opinions, and this is an opportunity to kind of take that all in, and I think that's wonderful that you are here. It's wonderful that your troop leaders brought you here for this process, and thank you for the pledge of allegiance. My comments for this particular point in time regarding the rent cap meeting that was had at Jocelyn Center, I believe city attorney Joe McDougall and staff did an exceptional job, and seen all of the questions. It was also nice to be able to see council members Anthony and Mullins in present, and the, it was good that you could see the number of people that showed up. I'm not sure if Mayor Schultz, you saw that, but I think there was close to 100 people in the room. To council member Tagahashi about the same, well, I know that you and I, you've heard me talk, let me correct that, to this issue many times. There were so many new faces. There were several people that came up to me and said, I have watched and listened to this body deliberate this topic. So thank you for the opportunity to be able to do that. Some of the questions that I have a concern on is that there was only limited response opportunities on the boards that the FM3 or Proxima came up with, and you'll notice, and if you did see, you'll see where some of the orange dots were put outside the parameters that were presented to the public. I think that that would be nice to address. The other part, and I think this one is important, because I've been part of this conversation for nearly 19 months now, is the fact that when you were deliberating the community outreach, it was a survey that was going to be sent out to people and a call, and it was going to be the community outreach. Well, guess what? There's a third one that popped up out of nowhere. That was the online survey that anybody can get. Anybody, anywhere in the country, in the world, you'd get this survey and ask and fill it out. So my question to this body, does it dilute it? Does it sort of slant it in a way? I can say that I'll do my very best to send it to everyone, my friends, family members, and associates, to have them fill it out, because there's no gatekeeper to that. And I would imagine that the people on the other side of the argument, the very well-intentioned Burbank Tennis Union would do the same. If they don't, okay, maybe I just gave them an idea, but it's the dilution of the polls and the results that I'm concerned about. So thank you very much for your time and your service to the community.
Thank you for your comment. My last public comment card is Michael Stanley.
Good evening, council members, mayor, vice mayor. So nice to see you all. Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm here representing two music groups tonight. First, I'll reference the comments that Eric made earlier. I am the conductor of the Burbank Community Band, and yes, council members are welcome and encouraged to join the band if you would like to. We rehearse on Friday mornings at Gross Park at 9:30. I just want to echo his comments that we've, in the last couple of years since I've been on board, we've expanded the number of concerts, we've added the Halloween concert, the holiday concert, and so we're doing a lot of activities, and it is a community group where all community members are welcome to join and play. So we hope you'll be able to attend some of those events. I'm going to switch hats now. My other hat is as the conductor of the Burbank Philharmonic Orchestra, which is our city's professional union orchestra that gives concerts, and I'm here, and I want to introduce our community outreach coordinator, Alejandro, here, and we are here to talk to you about the homecoming of the Burbank Philharmonic. So the Burbank Philharmonic, in its current form, has been around for over 30 years, and prior to that, it succeeded the original Burbank Symphony from 1944. And we have been on a quest since COVID to get back to performing in the city of Burbank, and we want to extend our great thanks to you for funding the Community Arts Grant, because due to the Community Arts Grant, we will be having our first concert in Burbank in a long time. It will be at the Colony Theater on Saturday, October 5, and it's going to be a string orchestra concert. As you know, that's a small room, so we've got to adjust, we've adjusted the size of our orchestra to fit that space, but it's going to be a wonderful concert with some classic music, Bach's Brandenburg Concerto, Barber's Adagio for Strings, some wonderful pieces of music that we think everyone will enjoy. But we're just very excited to finally, after all these years of planning, to be able to come back to the city of Burbank and perform in our home city, and so we wanted to invite everyone to that concert, and again, thank you for the grant that has supported that, that's allowing us to do that. We have more concerts planned throughout our season. We have November, December, and we have some in the spring, and we'll be back to let you know about those at that time. So we have some flyers here that we will leave with you for the October concert. We're billing it as the Burbank Philharmonic Coming Home. So thank you for your support of the orchestra and of the arts in general in Burbank. We hope to see you there.
Thank you for your comment. All right, that was my last public comment card, so we have now completed in-person general public comment, and we'll be moving on to call-in public comment. For our callers, please remember to lower the volume on your TV or computer, and be sure to take your phone off of speaker mode, so that we can hear you loud and clear when you deliver your comment. Madam City Clerk, do we have any callers on the line?
We currently have one caller on the line.
Okay, send them through.
The first caller is Tracy Tab.
Tracy, you're on with the city council.
Hello. Good evening, mayor, and vice mayor, council members and committee members. My name is Tracy Tab, and I'm the president of Burbank Press. I'm here to express my strong support for Evermore as a candidate for the Parks Recreation and Community Services Board. I've had the pleasure of working closely with Ever for the past three years, and I have seen firsthand how dedicated and passionate he is about our community. I believe Ever would be the best candidate for this position, because he would bring unparalleled energy and commitment to this role. He has a genuine passion for Parks, Recreation, and Community Services, and I have no doubt he'd be devoting himself truly to making meaningful improvements. Anytime I actually have questions about city matters, I always look to Ever for guidance, because he has been such an integral part of the city of Burbank. His enthusiasm, dedication, and unwavering commitment to our community makes him a perfect choice for this role. Ever's ability to work collaboratively with diverse groups, and his dedication to inclusivity makes him a perfectly suited to advise the council in all matters related to park squares and grounds. He's not just a candidate who checks boxes, he genuinely cares about enhancing our city's quality of life. His experience, leadership skills, and dedication to public service make him an outstanding choice for this position. I believe Ever will serve as a strong advocate for our Parks and Rec services, ensuring that they remain vibrant, accessible, and well-managed for all residents. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Next caller?
The next caller is Alessandra Valdez.
Hi, you're on with the city council.
Hi, I'm just calling in to speak briefly about my experiences at the local community rent cap meetings that have been held on Saturday and on Monday, but I did want to call, because I was really deeply disappointed to ask the question to our housing staff and to not be able to get an answer. So just for context, I asked staff if they could provide the percentage of renters who were rent burdened and severely rent burdened, providing context to those in the call, to discuss what situations tenants are currently facing in the city of Burbank, and unfortunately, staff did not have that information on hand. So I would like to request that at future meetings, city staff is able to provide that information, especially because that was data that was provided at the August 8 study session last year. That is something that is readily available, so I would like to request that our staff has that information on hand in the chance that someone asks at future rent cap meetings. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next caller?
That was our last caller.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your in-person and telephone public comment this evening. There being no further general public comment, I now declare the general public comment period closed. Now is the time for a brief response brief from the city council, the city manager, and/or the city attorney. Mr. Hess, you look eager to go.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A couple of things. We had two speakers talk about building permit issues, that they are having different issues. Our community development director, Patrick Prescott, actually reached out and got information from both of those, and he will be following up, along with his staff, to make sure that we could hopefully resolve both of those issues. So he's working on that, so I just wanted to let you guys know that.
All right. Banner job, Mr. Prescott. Thank you, Mr. Hess. Anyone else like to go? Yes, council member Anthony.
I'll be real quick. Thanks.
Thanks, everybody, for coming down. Thank you to the scouts. Thank you to the band. I'm glad the money is going towards a good use. That's incredible. First off, Maya Shavzen, I think you are absolutely correct on everything you said, and we'll come back to that later in the evening. Mr. Hess, I wanted to ask, there was a commenter who told us that a mitigated negative declaration has been finalized. Is that a public document? Can we access that? How does, is there a way to find that, or?
It was out, it was circulated for public review, so yes. It is a public document. It may still be, I'm not sure, but it may still be online. But that's, I believe there's going to be follow-up to council at some point.
Yeah, so I don't know where we're at with the actual document, but I know that staff is working with the consultants right now. We're looking for a late year, by the end of this year, coming back to council. I just don't have a specific date. I know that's changed a couple of times, but we'll try to lock in a date, but we're working towards prior to the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hess, sorry to speak out of turn, council member. Could we get the MND, which I believe is available digitally? Could we get that circulated to council by the end of the week?
Yes.
All right, and if we have any public comment easily storable and readable, if we could get that circulated as well, that'd be great.
Sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All of those documents, so before an MND is adopted, a notice of intent to MND, to adopt an MND is published. That has not yet been published, and that would be prior to any decision.
Thank you, Ms. McDougal. Anything else, council member?
No.
Okay, anyone else like to go next? Councilmember Mullins, click to the button.
I was going to yield to Councilmember Takahashi. I saw her writing her notes down, but in that case, I'm going to go for it. Thank you to everyone that came and called, and thank you, staff, for answering those questions because I obviously wrote them down as everyone talking. Thank you to Mr. Jeff Ferguson for letting us know in advance about that you applied for the Art in Public Places, and also letting know about the upcoming event at Magnolia Park. Again, it's on November 22nd. I would like to acknowledge our troop, 84, yeah, go for it, selling popcorn. I love popcorn, so I'm glad that you switched from cookies to popcorn. So, thank you for that. And also, I want to acknowledge, thank you, Mary, for the invitations that you left us. I'll definitely do my best to attend, and you said it was September 21st, so I appreciate the invitation. Community Band, it's always nice to see you. And I promised you, as I told you at the park on Saturday, that one day I will make the band the concert, so I promise to do that. And I think everything else that we heard tonight is regarding agenda items, so I'm going to yield to the council members for it.
Thank you, Councilmember Mullins. Councilmember Takahashi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo sentiments of my colleagues, and I wanted to give a general thank you to those who are here tonight. We have a little competition tonight for viewership, so I appreciate you being here and being willing to participate in our, in our local.
Debate of sorts, really?
Yes. Conversation. So, I appreciate that and those who called in. And of course, we always appreciate the emails and the phone calls and meetings we have in between meetings. As a reminder, my phone number and my Calendly link are all available on our website if you want to meet about items in between. And several of you have used that Calendly link, so appreciate that. I also wanted to just touch a little bit on Ms. Hill's presentation earlier. I, you know, news travels fast in Burbank, and I've already heard great things about her work. So, if you're out there, no, so if she hears this, kudos to her for already making an impact, and it's really, it's really helping our community businesses, so. And thank you to whoever hired her, thank you. Let's see. Mr. Bax, thank you for being one of our regulars. And I also wanted to mention tonight, the way I process information, I really appreciate the bullet points. The numbers help me digest your information, so thank you for putting that out that way. It was helpful. And Mr. Ferguson, and I think there were a couple others that spoke about positions, thank you for coming in. And I really appreciate folks who come in early and introduce themselves if they're planning to one of the boards, folks who reach out to us and talk to us. It helps us get to know you better, and it shows us also how dedicated you are, that you really want it. So, appreciate you coming out and letting us know that you're interested. See a couple more things. And then to Mr. Hawk and Mr. Stanley, you know, I've appreciated your concerts before I brought my family, and it's always been a joy. Last, I believe the last concert I went to, there was an astronaut, so I'm looking forward to something else that might surprise us at the next one. Don't know if we'll be able to make it to all of it, but we'll definitely try to make it at least to one or two. And, oh, and I'm so glad to hear that the Philharmonic is back in Burbank. That's so exciting, yay! Great, great news. I think that's all I've got. And thank you again to everybody who's coming, who came tonight to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Vice Mayor?
Sure. I, you know, the city manager had less faith than I did that we'd have some folks speaking out today. But look, we got, we got a full room. People want to be here, even though we do have national competition. I'm grateful to everybody who is here, who's taken the time to speak, to share wonderful events in the community that are happening. Please, please continue to email those, send them our way. We'll make sure to spread the word. Just grateful again to the scout troop 204. Thank you for being here. Thank you for leading us in the pledge, and thank you for inviting us and all who are interested to your troop meeting. Other than that, I won't repeat anything my colleagues have already said. Thanks, everybody. Have a good meeting.
All right, thank you, colleagues. Just a general thank you to everyone who gave public comment. To troop 204, thank you for calling an audible with me and doing the Pledge of Allegiance. You all did a great job. I'm going to have to talk to you about some cookies and some popcorn, though. Not that I need it, but I'm a sucker for it. So, we're going to have to, we're going to have to have that conversation. Mr. Hawk, I also don't want to overpromise here. We had five tenor saxophonists in the band, and I was number five. So, we, I can do it, but I'm not good, my friend. Mr. Schlossman's not here, but I actually want to thank him because he introduced me to Ms. Boylan, who was one of the folks Mr. Prescott spoke to. So, to Mr. Schlossman, thank you for making that conversation happen, and hopefully we can get Ms. Boylan some resolution. Let's see, Ms. McKinnon addressed your comment, so hopefully we can get that information by the end of the week, Mr. Hess. Mr. Scroggs, I'm not sure if you're still here. Let's see, Mr. Scroggs? Nope. Oh, he's hiding? Are you saying Mr. Bax?
No, he's over there. He's not there. He normally sits there.
Oh, I got, okay, got you. You had me going. I'm like, okay, I must be losing it. No, I think, this is something that Councilmember Takahashi has brought up several times. Fully support the idea. Can you remind us, Mr. Hess, do we have anything on the forecast or the to-do list related to ranked choice voting? Or the exploration of ranked choice voting or cumulative voting?
We do not. The matter of the city's procedures for voting are currently subject to litigation. That litigation is moving forward, and any briefings that I provide to council at this point will be in closed session.
With that said, there were a few commenters about the rent cap study outreach session. Thank you all for providing your feedback. I have heard a couple concerns about the back-and-forth opportunities and the ability to ask questions. Has staff considered, is there an opportunity for folks to submit questions in advance of those outreach meetings so that staff can come prepared with the statistics that folks may want to have access to? Is there a way?
So, the specific question that was asked, sorry, Mr. Mayor, for cutting you off mid-speech, mid-question. But those statistics are not readily available. The, the nature of the particular question of rent burden has, is very specific to the tenant's income and the rent that they pay. And normally, when the city captures that information, it's part of an application, and we have the ability to verify both the income and the rent. So, the statistics that are available to staff are national or state statistics, and staff did indicate they would make those available. But there are a great variety of questions, and there are limitations in the format to, you know.
Totally understand that that specific question may have been difficult, and this is my last follow-up question, so I'm almost done. But just in general, if we have folks that want to attend the meeting that may have a detailed question, is there a way for them to submit it either to council, to pass along to staff, or directly to staff so that our staff members or our consultants have the information they need to be as informative and helpful in those outreach sessions?
Well, the questions should be submitted to staff because staff has a direct ability to provide those answers. Generally, we took all questions, and most got answers. I believe that was the only one. So, there, this is not agendized, Mr. Mayor, but?
I got you.
Yeah, you did get me.
All right, so with that, I'll simply say that if, thank you all for your comment, and if anyone has a question related to that, you're welcome to submit it directly to me, and I'm happy to pass it along to staff so that can be part of a future agendized in some other manner conversation, right, Mr. McDougal?
Correct.
Okay, fantastic.
He's going to miss you.
I'll miss you too, Joe. All right, all right, back to the agenda, folks. That completes response to public comment. Thank you, everybody. We now move to our consent calendar. The consent calendar may be enacted in one motion. Ms. Clark, would you please read the consent calendar?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have three items on this evening's consent calendar. Item one, approval of the City Council minutes of the regular meeting of August 13th, 2024, the joint meeting of August 27th, 2024, and the dark meeting of September 3rd, 2024. Item two is approval of a professional services agreement with the Ferguson Group for federal representation and advocacy services. And item three is adoption of a resolution modifying City Council meeting policies and procedures and repealing Resolution Number 17-28970. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone like to go first? Motion, comment? Councilmember Takahashi, anything?
By all means.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you.
Second.
I knew I could count on you. Motion and second. Any other discussion? Yes, Councilmember Anthony?
Just a quick note, on item number three, we had 15 comment cards today, so that would not have triggered any of the changes for the meeting. So, today would have been a typical meeting, and I'm in favor of moving forward with this.
All right. Thank you for that observation. Without any further discussion, let's do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Takahashi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Schultz?
Yes. And if anyone has a cell phone, if you don't mind silencing that, that would be fantastic. But that is a yes, and so the motion carries five to zero. All right, now we're moving to our public hearing item tonight. Now is the time and place for the public hearing regarding the proposed introduction of an ordinance amending Title 10, Chapter 1, Article 19 of the Burbank Municipal Code to require an indemnification agreement on all planning applications and associated environmental determinations. If you would like to comment on this item, you can submit your public comment card now, or you can call 818-238-3335 because we will be taking telephonic public comment on this item. Please note that you'll be placed in a queue until all in-person public comment has been received. Colleagues, before we begin, are there any disclosures related to the hearing? We'll note none for the record. Madam City Clerk, have all the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Do we have the complete file of exhibits, correspondence, emails, and other documents?
You do, and we did not receive any correspondence on this.
Thank you. Has the city received any written communications on the matter, and have they been provided to all council members? A little redundant, but I still have to ask.
No, no comments were received.
Okay, thank you. Will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Schultz, Vice Mayor Perez, and City Council members. I'm Vanessa Guido, senior planner with the Community Development Department, and I'm here tonight to present a proposed ordinance to amend the Burbank Municipal Code Title 10 zoning regulations to require an indemnification agreement as an objective standard on all planning applications and their environmental determinations. The city of Burbank currently only applies indemnification clauses on projects that are approved through a plan development application. The indemnification agreement would require that all project applicants protect and hold the city harmless from all costs and liabilities associated with a legal challenge on their project. Project applicants would be required to acknowledge awareness of the indemnification agreements on project applications. The agreement would be applied as a condition of approval and would apply even if the applicant fails or refuses to enter into the agreement. In the event of a legal challenge on a project, the city would have the right to approve all significant defense decisions and would retain the right to participate directly in the defense. This ordinance would offer the city a variety of benefits. That would include a financial protection. It shifts the risk and liabilities of a legal dispute from the city to the applicant. It helps to preserve city resources, and we anticipate that it will lead to responsible development. Codifying these provisions in the BMC is of the utmost importance since numerous housing laws streamline development review and limit the city's ability to request indemnity agreements unless they are established as objective standards. The proposed ETA is consisting with the California Constitution, the California Government Code, the Burbank 2035 General Plan, and several of the city's policies and goals. In addition, the proposed ETA was determined to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Therefore, staff recommends that the City Council introduce the ordinance to establish indemnification requirements as an objective standard in the Burbank Municipal Code. This concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you for your presentation. Don't go too far. But we will now open the public hearing to hear from any persons who wishes to speak on this matter. Each person may address the council for up to three minutes on this public hearing item only. For members of the public who are here in person, please present a completed salmon public hearing card to the city clerk if you'd like to speak. This is also the last call for anyone who wants to join by phone. Please call now at 818-238-3335. You will be placed in the queue until all in-person public comment has been received. Ms. Clark, I don't have any cards. Does that mean there's no in-person public comment?
That is correct, and no callers.
Okay, then. Well, there being no public comment, I now declare the public comment period closed for this item. I assume that staff has no response to public comment. Fair to say? Very good. Does the council have any questions of staff? Yes, Councilmember Anthony.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excellent presentation, thank you. This is your first presentation with the city, yes?
Yes. Sorry, yes, it is.
Well done, well done.
Thank you.
So, I'll give you some softball questions here. I don't want to scare you off. Indemnification, that is more about protecting the city financially rather than legally. Is that correct in my understanding of indemnification?
It includes both, both the costs associated with defending the project, but also, you know, the legal aspect of it. So, in terms of like, you know, the processing the lawsuit itself.
Okay, oh, I see, okay. And typically, we would put forth indemnification, get an agreement on it with each development one by one as it comes through the approval process, typically is what we normally do, yes?
Currently, right now, we apply them for the projects that are processed under the plan development application.
Okay.
What we're asking now is to expand it to all planning applications.
And I'm gathering that that's happened because a lot of the projects that have come through the last few years have been streamlined, have gone through ministerial review, and all of the steps to build that don't necessarily require either a plan development or the approval by the City Council. Is that correct?
Yes, that's one of the reasons that the city is doing this.
Okay. And but if we apply it, like you're saying, under state law, it would automatically apply to all those other projects moving forward. Is that true?
Correct, yeah. It'll apply to discretionary administrative and ministerial applications.
Okay. All right. Great. Thank you for the presentation and being here.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Mullins?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. One is, does the process, the indemnification process change how careful the city is reviewing the project or its duty to follow under the law?
No, it does not. The city will continue to do a thorough review of each application.
Okay. And would the city or the developer would be, under the scenario, would hire a consultant or conduct a needed environmental impact report?
Correct. All projects would, or applications would still have to comply with SEQA, the process and the review.
So this doesn't change anything?
The city's practice is to direct hire the consultant and have the developer pay. Some jurisdictions may have the developer contract with a consultant. That is not the city's practice. So we would continue with our city practice of direct hiring the consultants to prepare the document for the city as the lead agency.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any? Okay. Well, no questions, but I just want to say, great first presentation before the council.
Yeah, thank you.
There might be some public comment on the next one, but tonight you did a fantastic job. There were no questions. A-plus effort.
Thank you.
There being no further questions, I will again declare the public hearing closed. Now is time for council deliberation. Do we have a motion?
I can make a motion to move forward?
I was hoping so.
I'm happy to do it. Make a motion to introduce an ordinance amending Title 10, Chapter 1, Article 19 of the Burbank Municipal Code to require the indemnification agreement on all planning applications and associated environmental determinations.
Second.
All right. Thank you for the motion. Thank you for the second. So that's Mullins and Anthony for motion and second. Let's take a roll call vote. Ms. Ty, you're up tonight. All right.
All right. Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Takahashi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Schultz?
Yes. Motion passes 5-0. Nicely done, Ms. Ty.
Thank you.
Okay. We now move on to council reports. We have three reports to counsel this evening. Before I go on, Ms. Ty, would your preference be to wait for Ms. Clark? Take a short recess, or are you prepared to go forward with the first presentation? Which is the vacancy on the Park Recreation and Community Services Board?
I think it would be better to wait for City Clerk Clark.
Okay. With all that said, Mr. Hess, would you have any objection if we just move to the next agenda item, and we'll come back to that?
We could certainly do that. I know there are people waiting, so, you know, wanting to speak, but on the next item, but it's clearly.
Let's take a two-minute recess. No one go too far, and then let's see if we can get Ms. Clark back, and we'll move on to the item, okay? All right. Two-minute recess.
So I'm looking forward to an amazing year with Sister Cities for our city. For me, I have been very fortunate. I've been appointed by the city to two different boards. And, you know, we, we work hard. We're the eyes and ears of the city council and the city. And I just wanted to highlight, at least for me, my first assignment was on art in public places. There are a couple of things that, that I'm so proud of. One is our hats at the Buena Vista, Buena Vista Library. Those spaces had been empty for many years. We heard from city council, let's get that going. I visited the foundry and watched those hats get poured. True public art, you can climb on them. The second is the first time we worked with community development. Our board really worked on this for the painting of those utility boxes in our city. And council member Mullins, we gave priority to Burbank artists and art that was about Burbank. You'll see it all over the city and I just beam whenever, whenever I see one. From there, I was appointed to Burbank Water and Power Board, which I also chaired. There was nothing we could do about COVID, but man, our board and the city worked so hard for the COVID relief policy. Those were meetings till midnight to help our businesses and residents who were affected by COVID. I, I just can't tell you how excited I am about everything going on at Parks and Rec, whether it's our dog park, our master plan, a theater that we're talking about in Eze Park. Gosh, I'm so excited to continue working with the city and I hope you will consider me for, for that board. Thanks very much.
Thank you for your comment and your application. Next, we have Terry Hirsch, followed by Ever Huerta.
Good evening, Mayor Schultz and Vice Mayor Perez. Thank you very much for everything this evening. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. Gosh, I looked at the applications of everybody else, my competition, and you've got some really great applicants. I noticed on there a lot of university degrees that were beyond what I have, and I noticed a lot of certifications beyond what I have. But in my 80 years as a resident of the city of Burbank, in my 34 years as an employee with the city of Burbank, in my 24 years as a Parks person that enjoy, enjoyed working with the staff on the board, I have the experience. And the experience to me trumps, ooh, that's a bad word. The, the experience, the experience is beyond what you have educational wise because I have a hands-on perspective of everything with the parks now that I gained in those 24 years, especially in appreciation for the staff. Having watched that staff grow in their careers, getting to the point of where they are now and serving the community as they serve in so many different capacities, I, I want to make sure that there's a continuity on the board because it's only a brief period of time. It's only 10 months. And in that 10 months period, I could pick up the slack if there is any slack lefting. And I have no aspirations of going any further, of going back for another four-year term or anything like that. Right now, I'm just trying to help. I have a vast experience in the community itself, along with all the budgeting and everything else that the, that the city of Burbank has. And you're coming up to a budget season real soon. So I'm looking forward to working with staff in the future and making recommendations to council that council will enjoy, I hope. So available for any, for any questions if you have any. Other than that, I want to take your time and let the others speak. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment and your application. Next, we have Ever Huerta, followed by Arno Dionisian.
Good evening, Mayor Schultz, Vice Mayor Perez, Councilmember Takahashi, Anthony and Mullins. My name is Ever Huerta and I'm applying for the vacancy here on the Parks and Rec Board. First of all, thank you so much for providing this opportunity. And I just wanted to share a little bit of why I'm applying. I think I believe I bring a unique perspective and skill set for the position. I've been proudly born and raised here in Burbank. And parks and other recreation services have always been a big part of my life, whether I'd been participating in recreation services and classes provided at our different facilities or just as a local resident utilizing those facilities, playing sports, using our gyms and X, Y, and Z, as well serving on our youth board and learning the inner works of the certain programs that are involved with Parks and Rec. Something that I want to highlight is that I think I bring a unique perspective. I'm young. I currently attend California State University and I believe that that is something that is lacking a perspective that brings youth and allows for new programs that can come to arise in Parks and Rec and as well bring even more involvement to our city. As well, I want to highlight my service on the Youth Board Commission. Firstly, I was able to connect with staff and giving my input regarding the youth athlete inclusion gender equity policy discussed. I was honored to be able to give resources and a more perspective to ensure that safety and inclusion was a top priority for our student athletes here in the city of Burbank. Furthermore, working with our Resource Equity Day, allowing for students to have resources for college or different career paths that they wanted to take, providing textbooks, AP textbooks and other resources that are financially, provide a financial burden to some. As well, I take pride. I have the experience working logistically, serving as the Associated Student Body President of John Burrows High School, class of 23, as well serving as a student board member for Burbank Unified School District. In those both positions, I helped find solutions, work connections, whether it be with school admin, our superintendent of schools, and even our elected school board members to finding solutions that students were facing day in and day out and that many people were, wouldn't know about. Further, while being these issues, facility maintenance, supporting our arts and theater programs, and as well setting up events and showcasing the amazing diversity and culture that John Burrows had. Lastly, I just want to mention my pride, my work on Burbank Pride. It's been an honor serving as their coordinator of volunteers, just being able to work with city staff as well regarding Parks and Rec and the, the use of our facilities. And I think I can also bring that perspective when it comes to bringing even more events and even more types of festivities that people of the city want to see and, and want to experience. So with that, thank you so much and I hope to earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment and your application. Next, we have Arno Dionisian, followed by Andre Dionisian.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor and other body members. I'm here to, my name is Arno Dionisian. I'm a recent graduate of Burbank High School and a new voter as well. I'm here to speak in support of Mr. Huerta, who is applying to the Parks and Rec Commission. I've known Ever for the last four years and at a time I've known to be candid, reasonable when it comes to offering advisement to individuals and hopefully this body as well. He's mentioned just now he is a recent product of Burbank School as well. And although he comes from the rival side of Burbank, we know that he's mentioned his experience on a public, as an effective public official, working with students and other stakeholders, as well as in, you know, you're an adjacent governing body, the school board, in working with a lot of similar work kinds he'd be doing with Parks and Rec's commission, such as facilities maintenance. There's one anecdote particularly told me that I don't want to botch the details of, but it was working on some infrastructure issues with the, with Burrows Campus Water Fountains. And he's got also a number of siblings younger than him, so he's got an extended stake in the community beyond himself being a citizen. And I know council will not find a more committed citizen to offering this body sound, reasonable advice. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Andre Dionisian, followed by Karen Pavlosak.
Good evening, council. Burbank is growing. Burbank is evolving. And the future of Burbank, I believe, should be guided by the future of Burbank. Ever Huerta is that future. He's an aspiring educator and an accomplished community activist. But most of all, Ever is a consensus builder. Throughout his experience at Burbank Pride, Elevate Burbank, and Burrows ASB, Ever has consistently proved himself skilled at connecting with and reconciling diverse opinions. Lastly, as a member of the Burbank Transportation Commission, not speaking on behalf of the Burbank Transportation, I know that I will find a partner in Mr. Huerta. And I know that my colleagues on the Planning Commission, I know my colleagues on the Sustainability Commission will find Mr. Huerta, somebody who can connect not just within the broader community for the issues surrounding Parks and Rec, but how Parks and Rec integrates into the broader vision for the future of Burbank that I know we all share. And with that, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment. Next, we have Karen Pavlosak, followed by Joe Pimienta. If I mispronounced your name, please feel free to correct me.
No, I would like the record to show that everyone has said my name exactly correctly for the first time in the history of my life.
Well, that's a wonderful night. We might as well all go home. Thank you.
I think that says a lot. You have no idea how big this is. And to my family listening right now, this is a moment that I would like to have memorialized. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. I want to personally vote for Mr. Huerta for president. But right now, I'm hoping that Age Before Youth can be present on the Board of Parks and Rec. My name, as I said, Karen Pavlosak. I am, I'm a school administrator. I'm a teacher leader. I've been part of the educational community for 35 years. I'm seen as a culture builder, an expert in education, programming, diversity, equity, inclusion, and how we support the widest range of our community members here at Burbank. I'm inspired to apply for this position because my students challenged me. My students right now are so active in the community and supporting local government, and they said, why not you? And when this position presented itself, new to Burbank, there is nothing that I have seen that is more impactful and powerful than what I saw here tonight in the parks, the recreation, the community and culture of the city. And I speak coming from just across the hill, which, you know, from West Hollywood is a different lifetime and experience. This community has heart. I mean, heart is in the mission of Parks and Rec, but heart is in this room, the gratitude, the connection, the community, the calls I received and the, the help and inspiration that you offered. And so I believe that I can offer you fresh eyes. Much like this seasoned pro, I don't have ego in the game. I'm here to listen. I know how to problem solve when things are challenging. I know how to see nuanced thinking and support civil discourse. And I see the widest range of opportunity here by listening, asking the right questions, and really digging in to the elements that can support our community goals. The culture and community that I love best is, and I said it in my, in my writing, is the, is the whimsy, the charm. You know, I've taken bike paths all over the city. I've gone from the Elliot Bookstore to Boba. I know about the Random Act of Breadness. And I've been to Geeky Games and Tea where I tried to adopt a cat. But all of that is just to say that I, I appreciate deeply what we have here, but accessibility for all members, really looking deeply at how we're supporting the widest range of community members. I like to look at how our educational programming really enhances and amplifies the challenges for parents right now, students and adolescents. I serve students in my community and I've seen the unique challenges that we're facing with social media and the absolute need to support hands-on, real world, real-life opportunities through Parks and Rec. Either way, I'm so impressed with what you do. The robust and vibrant programming is extraordinary. That we could take this little city nestled in these natural edges of the Verdugo Mountains to Griffith Park in the LA River and find ways to bring students to an understanding of place-based learning and why this place is so special. Thank you for consideration.
Thank you for your comment. And thank you for your application. My last public comment card is Joe Pimienta.
Good evening again. I'm going to make this brief really quickly. I simply just want to express my support for the candidate Ever for, you know, for the position. As someone who has been participant in organizing and other things, I've asked, I've had the personal experience of, of, of being involved with, with Ever a couple of times. And it's been a wonderful experience. So I look forward to having him represent the community the way that he does. I think he would do an excellent job. So simply just wanted to express the support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment and thank you all, for those of you who applied and for those of you who stayed around to give comment tonight. Colleagues, before we can go through the, through the voting process, does anyone either have a question or a brief comment before we get started? Oh, yes, Councilmember Takahashi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I'm wondering if we can expand the Parks and Rec to eight members.
Why not make it an even 10?
Because that would include every, right? This is going to be a tough vote. But we've had a lot of tough votes recently. I mean, actually, a lot, all of them are tough, but this one is particularly challenging. And I, but I love the enthusiasm and the, the participation of our community. And I'm glad to see so many qualified and passionate folks applying. So only one person can get onto the board tonight, but as you saw earlier, there are already two openings on other boards. There's always openings on commissions. So please, whoever does not get picked tonight, please continue to participate and apply to boards. This is where a lot of the work happens before it gets to council, so we need you there. So please continue to be engaged. And thank you for applying.
Extremely well said. Thank you for that comment. Does anyone else? Yes, Councilmember Mullins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would like to thank everyone. I know we've had a lot of emails, calls. I've spoken to quite a few of the candidates and I do appreciate your willingness to serve our community and to put yourself out there. It's not easy, but we are going to do our best. It's one position, 12 qualified candidates. I also want to applaud our younger generation here for coming forward and wanted to serve on the Parks and Recreation Board. So congratulations to you, just putting yourself out there as well. So with that, I think I'm ready to move forward.
Anyone else? I'll just say good luck to all of the candidates. And I echo what both of my colleagues said. This, it feels like the last few appointments are getting increasingly more challenging, but in a very good way because we have so many people that care about the community and have experience that want to serve. So to whoever gets it, congratulations in advance. Whoever doesn't get it, please continue to apply. We will find a spot for you. So with that, Ms. Clark, do you want to walk us through our voting process?
Yes, I'll call each name and we'll do a show of hands.
Are we going to start right now? Are you going to read through the list first? Just want to-
Your preference.
Unless anyone would prefer, I think we can just go right into voting. So let's just go with it.
Matthew Nelson, James Atwell, Robbie Brody, Karen Pavlosak, Natalie Torres, Chris Giuseppe, Lisa Goldfisher, Stephanie Kim, Terry Hirsch, Angelica Campa, and Ever Huerta.
By my mark, I see that we have three votes for Robbie Brody, two for Ever Huerta. Keeping with the custom and tradition of this body, I'd like to move that we unanimously appoint Robbie Brody to the board unless there's any objection. Okay, record will reflect a 5-0 appointment to Mr. Brody. Congratulations to Mr. Brody. I'm not sure if he's in the room, but congratulations to everyone who applied. Thank you so much for putting your name forward. We hope to see you again real soon. Thank you for, for applying. So, all right. So that completes the appointment item. Next, we have our second report to council this evening, which is the introduction of an ordinance to amend Title IX, Chapter One of the Burbank Municipal Code to establish mandatory earthquake hazard reduction standards in existing wood frame residential buildings with soft, weak, or open front wall lines by establishing mandatory retrofit regulations and approval to amend the fiscal year 2024-2025 budget. Albert Lopez, Principal Plan Check Engineer of the Community Development Department, please present the report.
Hello. My name's Albert Lopez, Mayor Schultz, Mayor Schultz, sorry, members of the council. As mentioned, Principal Plan Check Engineer in the Building and Safety Division under the Community Development Department. And I'm here to present a seismic, new seismic retrofit program. May I have the presentation? So the building, building and safety group and myself have been working on a program, seismic retrofit program that will help residential buildings with tuck-in building parking, prevent them from collapsing during an earthquake, and allow for first responders to provide aid quickly. These residential buildings with tuck-in parking level have what is called a soft story condition. The following slides will show how important this is to mitigate and how our program is doing its part in helping the owners and tenants stay safe during an earthquake and after an earthquake, and how we're doing our part to keep our community safe, beautiful, and thriving. So what's the purpose of the ordinance itself? First of all, information, transparency, awareness. These type of buildings with a soft story condition are present in our community. And this is an opportunity for us to save lives and families. It's also an opportunity for us to avoid reduction in housing. It's also an opportunity to provide a preventive measure to conserve parts of the community itself, and also to make buildings earthquake safe. And when I mentioned earthquake safe, that means to have given opportunities to, for these buildings to remain standing after an earthquake. And also, it considers the tenants and owner's perspective on the, on the impact they will have on the, on the ordinance itself, such as costs and the, and at the time when construction, when it goes to construction, what type of nuisance the tenants are going to have. Past building codes, when these particular buildings were built, they didn't take into account this soft story condition. And this is our way to do our part to mitigate that and acknowledge that. So what is the soft story, what is the soft story? And how does it look like? Well, it's a, the ordinance itself is targeting three units or more residential buildings, minimum two stories. And it's scoping out buildings that were enacted, that were designed under building codes prior to 1978. It will have an open ground floor structure. And, and after, because we learn most of our, most of our learned moments through earthquakes, during the 94 earthquake, these were the type of buildings that sustained a lot of damage. And so this is our, our way to mitigate that. So what the soft story is, is that the first floor doesn't have enough stiffness so that during an earthquake movement, there's an offset of the previous floors and it causes collapse. So the six excessive lateral movement causes an offset and a collapse of the structure can occur. Why is it needed? Well, as I mentioned, in, by showing in the pictures, that type of failure on these buildings is what we try and avoid. It, it puts the tenants' lives in danger. It may, it, it also makes it more difficult for our first responders to provide aid quickly. And, and, and so we feel that this is a good way to, to, to avoid that type of stress on the city. As I mentioned, 94 earthquake was the record itself that highlighted these type of buildings in this, this type of building deficiency. And we're trying to avoid that. So this is what the, the intent of the whole seismic retrofit program is. Additional picture showing damage during the 94 earthquake, as I mentioned, is highlighted these type of buildings that, that are susceptible to collapse. So what's Burbank, city of Burbank's soft story history? Well, started back in 98, four years after the earthquake, where we provided voluntary measures, voluntary ordinance to give owners parameters for design in order to protect, in order to retrofit their buildings. In 2007, during a building code cycle, we tried to amend that, make it mandatory, but it wasn't the right time. In 2019, we were given direction by council to work on the seismic retrofit program. And this is where we are at this moment. How have we done? Well, since it's been voluntary since 98, with our stock of 675 buildings, only about 5% have been gone into construction and per refinalization. Compared to City of LA, who started their program back in 2015, with the end with that building stock of 12,347 buildings, they've been able to get 76%, 73% of that, 76% of that to be retrofitted. So this is one of the goals of highlighting, making it mandatory so that we were able to get that compliance and we were able to retrofit these buildings. So there's different types of retrofit types for soft story. One's called like a moment frame, which is just a steel beam, steel columns. It could also be sheer walls, which are just solid walls. So depending on onsite conditions, on the, on the existing personality of the building itself, that the owner, along with the engineer, they're able to have different options to satisfy the needs of, of the retrofit itself. Another retrofit type would be what's called cantilever columns with a, with a stiffened foundation itself, or steel columns with a deep fold, deep, deep foundation. And the intent of the two types of design is to, as a one option for the owners if they have underground utilities. So each, it just gives them the options of, of how to retrofit. So there's different ways to retrofit to the ordinance itself. These pictures are shown to highlight what a finished retrofit looks like. The work itself is all external. It's also not compromising any of the existing clearances of the parking itself. And it's not being, it's also kind of blends in with the, with the, with the structure itself. Part of our seismic retrofit program has items for compliance. Similar to other ordinances, there's a screening report where we ask for information from the owner itself to confirm that they're part of the ordinance and, and its criteria. There's also a step in there for submit of, of plans and calculations to justify the design. Then it goes through the plan check process and permitting process. And then it'll go into construction where our inspectors will, will, will inspect and confirm that was approved, is done onsite. The ordinance itself also has elements for reciprocity for those 35 buildings that did go, go through the retrofit process voluntarily, so that we weren't asking them to do, go through the ordinances, specific ordinance parameters for design. And also, the ordinance provides clear time period criteria for them to comply with the ordinance intent. Timeline. We're looking to have the program itself be successful and completed in five years. The first biggest milestone is the screen report. The screen report is important for us to kind of get information for, from the owners themselves so that we can really confirm and make sure that the ordinance itself is being followed, as well as getting clear criteria with, with type of different types, type of soft story configurations we have present. And then the next milestones would be submitting plans, going into plan check, obtaining the permit, and going into construction. Just like the other ordinances that we have on our books as far as for, in Title IX, there are elements for, for non-compliance, such as violation parameters, recordation on the property itself, and, and worst-case scenario, vacating the building itself. The way building and safety is looking at is these are just tools in the toolbox that we have. We want compliance and, and we want these buildings to, to be retrofitted. So we're just following what other ordinances I've provided in the past that were adopted. Order, the official order will begin from the building official. The ordinance says highlights that we're going to use the, the last property tax assessment rule to get these notices to the, our owners. And they'll be certified mail. There's going to be administrative components as well. There's going to be on pure procedure and then an extension, and, and extensions if requested. But everything is, is dependent on, on the initial startup, which is the receiving a screen report. And, and it's a way to kind of, for us to kind of have the buy-in from the owner that they're doing their part to kind of help us out so that we can, we're able to kind of eliminate the, the 675 buildings that have the soft story condition. Comparing with, well, looking at other cities, there, that neighbor, city of Burbank, other cities have implemented their own mandatory retrofit ordinance, which is great for us in the sense that the ordinance itself is in alignment with what other cities are asking for from their, from their citizens. It also helps us out because it's, it's, we can confirm about the same components that they're asking for. They have a screen report, the, the method of retrofitting, some kind of financial support, and then having a timeline itself stays clear for the owners of what, what they're expected to do. And so it also establishes a standard procedure with the industry. So contractors, engineers, and architects are all in line as far as what's, what the expected retrofit methods are for each city because they have the practice on it. The next slide, well, this particular antenna of the slides to just show how, what year these mandatory retrofit ordinances came into play for each one of the cities. As you can see, they're kind of similar within this, within the neighboring time range, time range. And so they're, they're, and then I would add also that, that Glendo's also working on the current retrofit ordinance. So it's we feel like it's the right time for for us to to implement this program. Outreach. At the beginning of the year, we 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 created a website with a dedicated email. And we made announcements at council. We did an email blast. We promoted in social media to invite our residents to provide questions and comments for what the ordinance, how they would like the ordinance to be, to reflect. We also provided community meeting forums. One of the meetings were a standard Q and A presentation. The second meeting was more of a of a panel where we have a past building official who implemented their their ordinance along with the contractor and a building owner who did the voluntary retrofit. And then our consultant to kind to ask questions and respond to questions to to the to the to the owners and tenants. Then we followed up with the landlord tending commission meeting and given the information that this this we're working on the seismic retrofit program. Afterwards, we went to our Board of Building and Fire Appeals and also informed them about the program and what what the contents were. And then we took it a step further also to connect with the Structural Engineers Association of Southern California. They're they they were able to review the 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 ordinance itself and kind of give us good information and good lessons learned from other cities. So what were the results of all this outreach? Well, the we we were, we were ready to hear the concerns of the owners. They they brought up items sort of cost, the reciprocity, what happens to the owners who already went through their own voluntary retrofit. They asked about costs from the issue from the engineer as far as what what what, you know, what what kind of costs that are they expected to hire an engineer for? And then the tenant impact. So what our program result acknowledges that is by giving them for cost, a pass through criteria in our ordinance. Reciprocity, we're putting in the ordinance that anybody who had done voluntary retrofit, they're not being, they're not being asked to redo it or to to follow the parameters of what our retrofit asked for. And as far as the screening, our screen is a very unique one in the sense that a building owner can actually fill it out and they don't have to take, pay any initial cost at the beginning. While other cities do ask for a professional licensed engineer to do the screen for them. We made it so the owner can do it themselves so that way we're saving some cost at the front of the of the front of the program. And as I mentioned, the reciprocity, there's some owners like Kusumano's properties have been retrofitted. So that's the kind of things that we want to kind of honor. And then in addition to that, these, the retrofit orders are all based on FEMA guidelines. And the program itself, the first report about soft story was in 2012 and then did an updated one in 2023. So our ordinance takes into account the learned learned lessons from all the other ordinances who who have implemented. Because now the report itself that was updated kind of gave us additional information of what we can, of of those lessons learned. And then we implemented that in our ordinance. Fiscal impact, we're asking for our budget, the budget request for 112,000 for consulting costs. And for the 2024, 25 budget fiscal year. And that's to take into account the initial influx of questions, screening, review of screening forms for the seismic retrofit. We'll use that to help the staff with the with the consultant services. So we are able to 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 provide progress in the ordinance. And then the cost is going to be fully recovered from plan check and permit fees. In conclusion, the the city ordinances considers buildings with the 16, with a with a soft story condition and considers stakeholders' needs to provide a path for safety and protection of property, which is the goals of the building code. And with that, I conclude the presentation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for the thorough and thoughtful presentation. I believe it's also your first before the council, is that right?
Yes, and it's really hot in here, so.
If only our vice mayor was standing by the thermostat. If only. Well, well done, seriously, very well done.
Oh, it was rough at first, but.
We don't bite. All right, feel free to grab a seat. We'll have you back up here after we take some public comment. I have two public comment cards, you'll each have three minutes. First, I have David Kaishian, followed by David Donahue. Sorry for the false start there, David.
Good evening, counsel.
It's Kaishian.
Spot on.
There we go. I get it eventually.
You like the pronunciation that I wrote out?
You just had to tell everyone how I got that one right. Okay, Mr. Kaishian, thank you.
On the record too. All right, well, David Kaishian, Apartment Association of Greater Los Angeles. While the importance of safety is crucial, this ordinance as currently written will destroy existing affordable rental housing as the cost burden is simply unaffordable for small mom and pop owners that own the vast majority of soft story properties. These retrofits will cost tens of thousands of dollars per unit at a time when small owners are still struggling financially from years of unpaid back, back, back rent due to COVID-19 moratoriums. Staff has acknowledged that there is no funding currently available to help with these enormous costs. As a result, it will force many existing owners out of business and their properties into the hands of new corporate owners for redevelopment as luxury units. Now is not the time for Burbank to take action that only a handful of other cities within L.A. County have taken and push more affordable rental housing units out of the city. Before taking any action on this draft ordinance, we urge the council to conduct a thorough cost study using up to date data as the figures currently being used are severely outdated. We know costs for labor materials and steel have dramatically increased in recent years. It is extremely reckless to impose a new unfunded mandate based on years old information that will put more than 2,025 units of rental housing at risk of being lost. In addition, the city must recognize that the key reason that existing owners have not yet compiled with the voluntary program is a huge upfront cost required for such retrofits. In order to preserve existing affordable rental housing, the city must first identify and develop financial assistance programs to help existing rental rental housing providers manage these huge upfront costs. Such assistance should include zero interest loans from the city, permit free waivers and allowing 100% pass through of retrofit costs to renters who directly benefit from safer buildings and avoiding the risk of permanent relocation due to future earthquakes. Without these financial mechanisms, seismic retrofits are extremely unaffordable for existing mom and pop owners providing needed affordable rental housing. Renters cannot afford to lose existing housing for future uncertain events. Once funding is available, then and only then should an ordinance mandating seismic retrofits be considered. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Kaishian. Mr. Donahue, three minutes.
My short's counsel and staff, David Donahue. It's kind of interesting that on an evening where we're talking about tenant protections and there's flyers that are out there in the lobby that I get to follow David in his presentation about the cost for soft story retrofits. I've been at two of the presentations, so I think staff is doing an admirable job as directed by the city council in 2019. What is interesting is how everything has kind of come together very neatly, though very curiously, about a mandated cost increase of hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not in situations, millions of dollars that'll be borne on certain housing providers. When, I'll show it to you again, we're talking about tenant protections. What is the request from the Burbank tenants' union? 2% or less that a housing provider is going to be able to raise their rent. How in good conscience could you, the City of Burbank, sit there and say, within five years, or we're going to, and again, respect to staff, they're going to red tag you? I understand that there is a safety component that the council has to do. That's your job, that's why you were elected. You're here to do it. And if this is a safety issue, it has to be done. But for crying out loud, this body is deliberating in this chamber before the end of the year, whether or not to cap what a housing provider is going to be able to rent? Are you kidding me? And then you're going to sit there and say, okay, as soon as we have this thing in place, it may take two years. If there's going to be a housing board, a rental housing board, that in another couple of years, we're going to mandate to you that you have to do this. Let a little bit of information that was omitted from any sort of study is $25,000, $35,000, $45,000 per parking unit is what they cost. Per parking unit, 25,000 to 45,000 per. You heard some information about the costs that are going up by David, the previous speaker. That's relevant. Please take that into consideration when we have been before this body for almost two years talking about the cost. Mr. Ron Backs has presented a stack of papers to you of just his own personal costs. Get ready for the train to come. Because it'll be coming for those 640 mom and pop housing providers that will have to endure this expense or lose their building because they're red tagged. Now, I'm being a little bit salacious, but I'm doing it on purpose. I want your attention. I want you to look at this. Staff did a good job getting, following the direction given by council in 2019. This is a new body, I think it needs a new perspective. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Donahue. That was the last public comment card that I have. So we'll now go to a brief response from staff if you have anything you'd like to add based on public comment.
Hi, good evening. Mario Suna, Assistant Community Development Director with the Community Development Department, representing the Building Division. And in response to public comment, our outreach did prove that that the cost was one of the major concerns that that we got from our constituents. In response to that, what we did was we implemented a pass through provision, right? Pass through cost provision. That means that on top of the of whatever rent cap the state mandates, any costs that are associated with the soft story seismic retrofit can be tacked on as a temporary surcharge to rent. It's capped at $35 per month, per unit for a maximum period of 10 years. This is the starting point where we, this was based on L.A. City's pass through cost provision. And the reason we chose to go with L.A. City's provision is that they had a successful program, right? They had a mandatory program that saw 76% of 12,000 buildings get retrofitted. So it's 12,000 buildings, we only have 675. And, you know, I, we totally understand that this is an expense that 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 is, it could be crippling to some building owners. But we we did include that provision in the ordinance to 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 help alleviate some of that pain. Also, you know, it's a difficult decision, right? It's, I shouldn't say it's a difficult decision, it's a hard decision to make. But it's the right decision to make, right? Because what's the alternative? If if there's, if if someone has to invest money into into their in building, they're not only protecting their their investment, their their structure. In the event of an earthquake, they could lose their 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 investment. The city can lose housing stock. And worst case scenario, there can be significant loss of life. So while it is an expense and and it's not a fun decision to make, I think it's a necessary decision that that we have to make and that other cities already have made. That being said, there are other cities that did not choose to do pass through costs. I believe Culver City was one of them. So I feel that 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 we 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 address that that concern. I know Beverly Hills had a provision in in a, in their ordinance that rewarded people who completed the retrofit ahead of time, right? So we're giving them five years, Beverly Hills gave people three years. They said if you comply within two years, you get 50% of your permit and plan check fees back. If you comply within 18 months, you get 100% of your permit and plan check fees back. We didn't include that provision in into this ordinance because we felt that we we needed to recover the costs associated with it. But that's also out there if if council chooses to to pursue that 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 path. I think that that's all we.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Suna. Colleagues, questions for staff? Yes, Councilmember Mullins.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, I have a question and I wanted to clarify the dollar amount, which is on page five under number four, and it's $38, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Can you tell me, I know you you mentioned that it was the City of L.A. where you got this information, what the their program, what they did. What year was that when they allowed for $38 pass through?
That was based on 2015.
So that was nine years ago.
About nine years, yes.
Okay. Okay, I just want to make a note that that was a long time ago and $38 was back then. This is not something current of.
It still is current today. It's still, it's still the the number that L.A. City is using for soft story retrofit pass through cost. But but you are correct in that that it is, that it was initially thought up in in 2020, 2015.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember, do you mind if I just have one quick follow up to that? Did staff look at whether the City of Los Angeles has anything in development to revisit that number? Whether they're exploring, whether it's sufficient or needs to be raised?
So L.A. City, I think, at first deliberated over whether to allow any kind of pass through costs or be associated with the retrofit. I I believe the original program was was intended for for maintenance or necessary maintenance of buildings. And as a as a compromise, they they allowed it to to be applied to self story retrofits. We don't know of any, 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 anything that's in place for them to revisit it, especially considering that they've already completed a significant amount of of their inventory. But that's something that we could follow up with and and look into deeper.
Thank you, Councilmember, for allowing me.
No, that's good thought, that was something we're going to get to. Yes, go ahead.
Since we're on the subject, can I just follow up? Are there other cities that do the pass through costs? Is there anybody that's done it a little more recently and maybe has numbers that are more timely?
You know, I don't believe, I think pass through cost was not done by West Hollywood, to my, to my knowledge. I think L.A. City was the the major one that did pass through cost.
But from what you said, other cities had incentives, different incentives that assisted them. And perhaps if you finish the work earlier on time or earlier, then you get reimbursed for part of the permit fees? Because we will be charging them for permit fees and everything that pertains to as a any remodel or any type of construction, we will be charging them for that.
That's correct. Beverly Hills gave gave incentives for people that complied ahead of schedule, 50% and 100% of the plan check and permit fees.
Okay. So that option is out there and I'm curious to know if there's anything else that you've found. I know, I believe Glendale still have not implemented, they're still in the process.
Correct.
As a volunteer, I believe.
They're currently voluntary like we are. And they are looking into making it mandatory. They actually reached out to us and and asked us a lot of questions about how how we're proceeding.
Okay. May I continue? Okay, so I want to talk a little bit about, I know the the proposed in the staff report, it's it's proposed that all the work will be done on the exterior walls instead of disrupting the tenants and being on the, doing some work on the inside. However, I'm just curious if there is a need to be doing that work on the inside because perhaps it would be a stronger way of, much better way of doing construction. What would happen in this situation to the tenants or living in the building? As we know, we just adopted an ordinance that we have to pay for relocation fees. I I want to make sure that we talk about this because there's a possibility some of those units out of the 675 units that we're looking at that perhaps will be affected in the event that they have to do work on the inside and it would exceed the amount of number of days that they're anticipating to do the work, given that we have, everyone is fighting for the same contractors, for the same engineers. And so I don't know if the work will be actually done on time.
Just for the record, I believe the council member said, we will have to pay for relocation. I mean, the landlords have to pay for relocation.
And and that's what I meant. They would have to pay for relocation assistant, three months of relocation assistant. So I just want to talk a little bit about this because we need to make sure that everybody understands and aware of consequences and what could happen. So it's not a surprise to anyone.
Absolutely. So the the approach of compliance, the standards that were chosen are the least invasive. And they were, they were designed this way so as to not not be invasive or disruptive to to tenants, right? There's a couple of 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 main ways to comply. One is the the line approach, in which you you address the deficiency only at the wall where the deficiency exists. And the work is limited to to the outside. Now, could they potentially, an engineer, design a solution that goes into the building? Absolutely. An engineer can get very creative in the way that they that they design a. way that they, that they design a solution to a retrofit problem. And that could result in displacement. But that's not unique to retrofit work, right? I think if a building owner hires an engineer and one of their, one of their requests is to come up with a solution that's the least invasive, then more than likely, that's going to be the path that the engineer will take. You know, today, a landlord could remodel, a kitchen could remodel two bathrooms. They can do a full gut of their unit and that would result in displacement as well. So I think that that is a valid concern, but it's not a concern unique to the retrofit. It's completely possible that it could result in tenant displacement. But the standards were developed in a way where it would minimize that potential.
Well, and I appreciate the explanation because it's really a lot of it, once you go in construction or design or do any type of work, we all know we can start with a small remodel in our kitchen. And before you know it, you have to change the electric system. You have to change the plumbing because you're faced with other issues in construction that you have to fix since you're spending the money and you have permit. And my concern is the displacement of the tenants and the cause of the chaos that could happen. We have all seen the tenants come here because of somebody buying a building and they have to remodel and displacing the tenants. And my question is, and I understand that we can't control of what consequences and how each project is going to be, but what we're going to do for outreach, educating, besides only the meetings that you've conducted so far? How do we get the word out to the tenants, to the landlords, to let them know that the landlords are doing this to be in compliance with our regulations, with the law, and they have to do this because it is an issue that we must deal with? Otherwise, we may have a catastrophic situation in our hands.
Right. So one of the requirements is to post on the building. Once a building has been vetted, they submit the screening report and we confirm that this building requires the soft story retrofit. At that point, it's the landlord's responsibility to notify their tenants that they're living in a potentially dangerous building, right? So at that moment, maybe the language that we draft up for the notice includes our contact information where they can reach out to us and we can answer any questions that they have. We can continue to keep up and maintain our seismic retrofit website that we have up and going. And just open to suggestions too, if you feel there's any other ways that we could better spread the word.
Yeah, absolutely. I think it's really important to provide direct contact information for staff. And in the notice, like we do with, you know, I know they have these big billboards, well, they're not a billboard, like a big giant notice on the property that we're in construction. Here is the permit number, places to contact in the event that, you know, they have any questions regarding construction. I think that's going to be very important, that the tenants are fully aware. And then they know who to reach out to in the event that we have a displacement that might take place. Also, I'm wondering, given that there is going to be this giant project that's going to happen in the city of Burbank, and everyone's going to be fighting for the same contractors, engineers, consultant, do we, are we going to be providing the landlords with some resources of who they can go to or what's available? Are we going to send out some notices out to certain individuals to say, "Hey, this is what we're doing in Burbank"? So I know we don't make recommendations because of requirements and things can go wrong. But how do we, how do we make sure that the landlords have the resources available, that they were able to hire the engineers and the construction, the construction company to be able to complete the job on time? Because everybody's going to be fighting for the same contractors.
That's actually a really good question. I think what other cities have done was they refer them to professional organizations like the State Contractors Board, the Structural Engineers Association of Southern California. I think we can follow suit in the same way. Beyond that, I know, like in the past, when we implemented a new requirement, I'm thinking of the setback certification requirement that was new for verifying or establishing setbacks on the field. We did release a list of surveyors that had done work in the city of Burbank. So we were not recommending the surveyors, but we were saying, "These are people that have done something for the city." And with that disclaimer, we provided that information. Maybe checking with our city attorney, we can do something similar where we can, we can release lists of contractors, right? Like, I think it could be accomplished with the records request anyway, like, "Give me a list of contractors that have pulled a retrofit permit in the city of Burbank."
Okay, thank you. And I know that in here in the report, and I could be, oh, I think it's, if they need an extension, it did mention that they can get a one-time extension. Is that correct? Is it 180 days?
Correct. One-time extension. And just to follow up on the previous question, contractors will probably be coming, reaching out to us, right? Because they're going to be very eager and hungry to get this work.
Okay.
But yeah, to answer your question, sorry, one-time extension, 180 days. Total completion should not last more than five years and 180 days.
And that extension can apply either during construction or is it to the first phase of the screening form or engineering plans? Or is that applied towards the end and the middle? It's just one time applying that between year one to five?
So any time after the screening report is submitted. So the idea is that the screening report, which, again, sorry, I failed to mention early, but Albert really did a good job in illustrating that, is the screening report, other cities require that you hire licensed structural or civil engineer to perform the analysis. We wanted to make it very simple for the building owner. Some of the feedback we got was that, "Does my building even qualify?", right? And there are cases where we can make that determination right away without needing an engineer to do a report. So our screening report is very friendly to the building owner. It doesn't require that you hire a structural engineer right off the bat. But you do have to complete it. So once you complete it, then you can apply for the extension. The idea is that having such a basic initial requirement, if you're not completing that, then you really are not showing good faith effort to comply. And at that point, we want to move into enforcement more than, more than giving a 180-day extension.
One last question, enforcement. So what is the penalty if somebody doesn't complete the job on time?
So one of the penalties is to have to post a sign on your building saying that this is, I shouldn't call it a penalty because it's informative to tenants as well, but posting a sign on the building that notifies people that this is, this is potentially a building that is unsafe. One of our more, I would say, based on previous retrofit ordinances, one of our more common tools in the toolbox would be to record the property. That way that it shows up if you're trying to sell or if you're trying to refinance or if you try to pull permits on different work, that this property is in need of a retrofit. The big hammer in the toolbox would be to vacate the building. That tool is there, it's written in the ordinance. We don't, we don't hope to use it. And in all my years here, when we did the tilt-up anchorage of the flexible diaphragm to concrete and masonry walls, the city did not force anybody to vacate a building. So it's there, but we hope not to have to use it.
Is that what people refer to with red tag?
It's...
Or condemn?
Yeah, it's similar, yeah. Similar to a red tag. And it's just, it's hard to go that hard right away, right? Because a red tag, you look at the building and you know, this thing can collapse anytime or there's a very unsafe condition. Whereas a non-retrofit, the building can be completely fine and standing for another 10 years. And could it fall tomorrow? Absolutely. But it's just, it's difficult to displace a lot of people from their homes if it doesn't have that very imminent danger.
Yeah. Legally, a red tag prohibits the occupation of the building. A recorded notice of violation or the instrument that Mr. Osuna references is simply on title and gives notice to prospective purchasers and lenders that the building may be unsafe. It's, so there's a different legal effect. It can still be occupied.
Thank you. Those are my questions right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Great job, Mr. Osuna, Mr. Lopez. And then, I'm sorry, what was your, what was your name, sir?
Yes, my name is Sean Hughes. I'm a structural engineer with J.L. Engineering, working with the city on the project, on the ordinance.
Thank you. And I noticed a couple of times you were on the edge of your seat, you were going to jump in. Anything you wanted to add to supplement?
No, actually, I think they've done a great job on conveying the points of the ordinance. A couple of times, I'm thinking, you know, from a technical standpoint, but I think we've got it well written into the ordinance appropriately.
Okay. Well, thank you for being here. I like the technical standpoint, so feel free to jump right in.
Fair enough.
Who'd like to go next? Councilmember Anthony?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to just ask about the timeline. If we were to approve this tonight, it comes back for second reading, and then it goes into effect 30 days later. And then what's the next, you know, marking timeline-wise?
So the significant marker would be the day that we send out the notice. That's not written into the ordinance, but we, our plan would be to send it on January, January 1st, if possible.
Okay, to all the 675 or so? Okay.
Correct, yeah. Other cities did prioritization. They did different categories of, like, you know, a very large building is more, it's a higher priority to a three-unit building. They did this because they didn't want to get slammed with a huge amount of work at one time. I think 675, if we assume 50% of them submit within the first year, I think it's manageable, especially if, with smart use of consultant help.
So within the first year, that's the screening report. That's the very simple, basic, "Hey, I'm complying. I'm doing my quick check" kind of deal?
Yeah. So we think that the screening report is due within the first year, but there's going to be some building owners that want to get it out of the way. As Councilmember Mullins mentioned, there's going to be competition for good contractors, right? So if you're a responsible building owner, some of the people that did it voluntarily, for example, you might see this. Okay, I'm going to take care of it right now before, I don't know what happens in the future, if I have the means to do it today.
Okay, so, so if I'm, if I'm a landlord and I submit my screening report in that first year, now I'm on the clock. I have to get full construction done within five years?
Yes. You're on the clock anyway, right? So you gotta do screening report by one year. If you do screening report the first day, that doesn't mean that now you only have four years to complete. You still get the whole five years. It's just that these benchmarks are there to...
Oh, so we have to get if, okay.
Yeah.
All right. That's my misunderstanding. So it's not five years from when they submit the report. It's five years from when we put out the notice.
Yes, yes. So you can submit your screening report. You can submit drawings, get approved in three months, conceivably start construction and sit on it for...
People who are earlier, not who I'm worried about. So talk to me about somebody who doesn't submit a screening report within the first year. That's the notifications that you're talking about? That you want to start?
Correct, yeah. So every, every case is going to be different, right? So if someone completely disregards the order, then we're going to follow up with enforcement. If someone is making an earnest effort to comply, but they run into issues, finance or personal issues, then we will, we'll try to work within the five years to get them to compliance. The goal is to get these buildings safe. So if we feel that there's progress and that the building owner is making an earnest effort to comply, we're going to, we're going to follow them.
So that brings me to something that was mentioned earlier. We have a lot of stick if they don't comply, but we're not offering any carrots if they comply early. There's no incentive, like, there's no reason why they wouldn't wait till December 31st to submit their report and they're still in compliance.
Sure.
Okay. Here's a different line of questioning. And it might be outside the scope of the staff that's in the room today. Have we ever offered loans to private individuals from the city? Private businesses?
On a very limited basis. The city has done business improvement loans back when we had a redevelopment agency. Actually, it was the, it was the city that offered most of those loans. And then we put a lien against the property. We've done it on a very limited basis.
Do you know, does anyone know, like, what the interest rate was, what the maximum was? Like, any of the parameters of that? Or...
That's really beyond the scope of this item. It's something that could come back.
Okay, fair enough.
You'll want to know whether you have any funds and what your policy trade-offs are.
Right.
It's something that can be looked into.
Okay, then let me ask this. For, say I had a four-unit building and I needed to do a retrofit, what is my average cost on something like that? You said it was anywhere from, so 30,000 to 80,000 on a small?
Think Mr. Lopez wants to jump in?
Yeah, sorry. Albert here. The price ranges, depending on the size of the unit, and this is just for information only, but... So if it's a... So it starts about $20,000, ranges to 80,000 around, like, for medium size. And they could go up to very large ones, like 100,000 to 250,000, depending on the size of the units.
What's, we had a chart. We only had a handful that were bigger than 10 units, right? Most of the buildings are five to 10 units? Okay. Okay. And then, just to follow up from a very earlier question, we had the $35 that LA City does, they didn't include an increase for inflation or updated changes? It was a one-time point and then it stayed? Correct?
That is correct. It was a one-time deal and that's where it is today.
Okay. All right. That's it for questions for me. Thank you.
Thank you both. Anyone over on the side? Councilmember Takahashi, you want to go? I'm going to call on Councilmember Takahashi.
I actually have a follow-up for the question that Councilmember Anthony just asked. So, okay, so, and apologize if I, I apologize if I asked a question that's already been answered, but I'm trying to, going to follow the thread of understanding how this works. Okay. So going back again to the pass-through costs that we just talked about, and using LA as a model that we've been talking about, I just looked up their ordinance real quick and, or their requirement real quick. And they have actually two elements to their requirement. One is you can do a pass-through up to 50%, that's one part. And the other part is at a maximum of $38 per month, per unit. And so that ends up being about $4,500 a year per unit to, if you're doing 38. That's what I math in back of napkin math. So I'm curious, I'm curious if, actually, not per year. What was the number that looked up? It was for, for the entire span of the payback?
120. It's 10 years.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so the 120 times 38, right. So for each unit, they can get $4,000, $4,500 back from that unit. Right, okay. So if that were the case, I'm curious, again, I think you already said these numbers, but I'm just trying to do the math together. Considering the average cost of how much it would do, cost to do a retrofit, would that even be close to be able to get to 50% to cover? That's, I think, what we're trying to get to here. And so I want to do a little bit of math to see if, because we could do just one... because we could do just one. We could just do up to 50% and not have the top number or... But I wanted to see if that was even close, that they can get any kind of closeness to 50% with that $38 per unit.
Not likely for smaller buildings. I think you would have to get into more units. More units and not a large, soft-story condition for it to get close to 50%. If you're looking at a small building, you're probably not going to get to the 50%. And that's kind of why we kept mentioning the monthly cap versus the recoup, half the cost.
Right, right. Okay, just for us to consider when we're thinking about it. And then, back to the less invasive standards for how to do a retrofit and the different options that are available for a retrofit. And Councilmember Mullins asked about potentially having to displace tenants. Is there a possibility that a small multifamily unit owner would be forced to do a retrofit that would displace tenants? Or is it always, is it always an option to do that less invasive?
Yeah, it would be very rare. Is it possible? I guess anything is possible. Sean, maybe you want to?
Yeah, it's not realistically foreseen in other jurisdictions that we've discussed this with. That's, the point of this is to give the owners and their engineers and contractors the opportunity to do the work in a way that is explicitly non-invasive. There's been quite a bit of work by the other jurisdictions, by FEMA, that has provided us in preparing this ordinance and those in other jurisdictions. Information, a lot of research has been done about the specific building types that let us know. Most of these buildings are built in such a way that we don't have to get in and dig in to do the work that we need to do. And so, like I said, of course, anything is possible. It's just extremely unlikely and, in our experience, not done, because nobody wants to do that. I would think it would be a building owner's determination to say, "I don't want to displace people. Let's put that extra column on the outside," or something along those lines.
Okay. And the less invasive standards are also less expensive, correct?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I think that was an important point, just to make sure we don't spend too much time on something that maybe is not going to happen very likely. But I mean, definitely, it might happen. Maybe we could have an extraneous situation provision or something. But if it doesn't, isn't likely to happen, then I think it's important to focus on what is more likely.
Sure. And I think the phenomenon that Councilmember Mullins brought up, that once you open up walls and you have boots on the ground, you're like, "Well, maybe I want to do a little bit more." But at that point, it's really the owner's decision and their right to do so, right? If they want to take on that displacement cost.
Right. And that's actually bringing me to the next question. So kind of combining the last two questions. So for the potential recoup cost, when we're looking at the cost of the retrofit, are we looking at just the construction cost or the cost of the entire thing with all the permits? Cost with everything else? So what number are we looking at when we're thinking about getting recouped?
It is mostly based on the construction cost. We use the definition that's currently in the California Building Code that is used for similar determination for accessibility upgrades. So we wanted to use something that's vetted and established, rather than kind of invent our own definition.
Okay, great. All right, moving on to the timeline of five years. And again, some of these questions may have been answered, but to help me kind of through the thread through. So there are five years of process to make, potentially, up to five years, because it could be done sooner. And it looks like the last two years, years four and five, really are when the construction happens. You begin and end construction somewhere in that two-year timeline, right? So am I understanding it correctly that the bulk of the cost would be in years four and five, if you were to go along this timeline?
Sure, that's reasonable.
Okay, so the first three years, obtaining permits, submitting plans, et cetera, what would be ballpark the cost incurred for those first three years of the process?
Oh, boy. So engineering fees?
I would say less than 10%.
Less than 10%. So probably less than 10% of the construction cost, if it's a $40,000 job. And this is just an estimate, right? We're not out there promising anything, maybe in the $4,000 range.
Okay, so mid-thousands, maybe-ish? Okay, just kind of looking at what the immediate impact would be on our landlords, of them having to immediately have to find a way to fund without a pass-through, right? So just looking at that number, try to understand that. And then also the time that it takes for them to have to figure out how to get funding for...
Councilmember Takahashi, could I ask a follow-up to that real quick?
And I have one, too, if it's okay.
Yeah, go ahead. Might be my question, but go ahead.
The state allows up to 10 years for them to get the pass-through back. Is that right?
It's us. It's not the state. So we're not defining the temporary surcharge as rent. And the state limits how much rent can be increased. So we took the interpretation, similar to LA, that this is not rent as rent is defined, but that it is a temporary surcharge associated with the requirement that we're making.
Okay. Did we come up with 10 years, though?
LA as well.
Oh.
Yeah.
During the five-year process, when can they start that 10 years?
The day that the permit is final. So when the work is completed, that's when their 10-year recoup begins.
So they have to wait five years, finish it, and then start recouping?
We have to make sure that it's done, yes.
Well, sure, yes, of course. I get why. I'm just trying to, okay. That was my follow-up.
Councilmember Takahashi, if it's okay, on the cost itself, since we're talking about the total cost, what is the cost for pulling a permit and also whatever else that's involved, citywide costs? How much ball figure, if you can give us that?
I would say, I don't have the fee schedule in front of me, but $1,700 for plant check and permit would be a good estimate.
That includes the permit cost?
Permit and the plant check, yes.
That's it?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Great. Yeah, that's really helpful. And I'm glad that you asked that question, Councilmember Anthony, about when the recoup can begin. Because it looks like by, over the course of the entire process, that all the funding does have to happen upfront before the recoup can happen. So there has to be some long-term planning, financial planning of, you know, getting the funding, getting everything going, and then recovering the money from later on. Okay. And then, at what point during this process do you predict? Let's say a landlord takes this five-year process. They go ahead and use that five-year process. At what point of this process would they know how much they're going to have to get for the actual construction? How much loan they're going to get, or how much funding they're going to have to find for the actual construction?
Good question. I think a lot of people that, or a lot of contractors that specialize in this kind of work, they tend to work with an engineer that they know, right? Because they want to be able to predict what the project is going to be for them. So if they get an engineer that they have a good working relationship with, they're going to try to keep that relationship. So when will the building owner know how much it's going to cost them? I think usually it's going to be right when they engage the engineer, right? Because they're probably going to get approached by specialists, and they're going to sell them a package deal, like, "I'll get you the permit. I will do the engineering. I'll do the construction, and here's my bid." It's possible that they could go à la carte. And then I'd imagine that that would be a building owner who's a little bit more business savvy. But for regular transactions, I'd imagine that would be, they would probably have a good idea what the entire thing is going to cost from the get-go. Or from the first contact with, not the first contact, but when they get contacted by the contractor they want to work with.
Okay.
Could I add one thought to that? If they do, let's say go à la carte, then at the point of building permit issuance, so before the construction actually starts at that point, the, everything is approved, and at that point, the contractor should know what exactly they could give an appropriate bid at that point in order to get a final determination on the cost.
Okay. And that, from what I understand from this timeline, that would happen around year two? Because the first year is just the screening. First year is just finding out whether you qualify to be under this. Okay, so that gives a landlord time to figure out their financial situation and look at it from a little bit long-term. Okay. So it's not like tomorrow, they wouldn't?
And just real quick, most landlords and property management associates, they have people they use a lot, and they have a list of folks that they tend to go with, and they get estimates upfront, bids upfront. So they'll know the cost pretty much right when they're jumping in.
Okay.
Correct, yeah. That's a really good point, because since LA City and Beverly Hills and Culver City and Pasadena and Santa Monica have already implemented this, there are specialist contractors that do this all day, every day, and it's repetitive work. So they have a very good handle as to what something should cost. So there shouldn't be that big, kind of like enigma as to like, "Oh, it could be $300,000, or it could be $30,000." People should be getting a very consistent bids, at least. We hope so.
What that tells me is that they can get a pretty good idea pretty early on and have time to plan out their financial process to make it happen. Okay. How long does it take to do a retrofit for, like, let's say, a three? Did you ask this question already about how long? How long does it take to do a retrofit for, let's say, a three-car retrofit, a three-port retrofit?
You mean, start to finish, like, plant check and all that stuff?
No, no, like, the breaking ground of, like, actually doing it and then wrapping the bow on it at the end of the construction part?
So like a three-unit apartment building, that's, I mean, it could be quick. It could be as little as three to four weeks. Two months, three months is not unreasonable. You know, if you get someone who's got a lot of jobs going on, and for some reason they don't focus on this one project, it could be longer, right? But we're probably looking in that order of magnitude.
Okay, great. Thank you. I'm really starting to get more of a sense of what this entails, yeah. And then one last, I have two more questions. This one actually is for the other staff, CDD staff. Maybe you know. I passed along some information about a BRIC grant. Does the staff know anything about the BRIC grant? And if that, I asked, this is information I got through SCAG, the Southern California Area Governments, and asked them if this kind of project, citywide project, could qualify under BRIC, and they seemed to think it might. So I'm wondering if any of the staff knows about the BRIC grant. It's a federal grant, but you can do a sub-grant through California.
Correct, yeah. We did look into it. The BRIC grant, there currently is no notice of funding. And when we looked at the sample projects, cities would have to apply as sub-applicants to the state. And when we looked at the projects that were approved, it was mostly infrastructure, like city infrastructure, like water treatment plants. We did see a different grant, which is from FEMA as well, and that's a Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. And that one seems to be more applicable to building owners. Unfortunately, right now, it's not funded currently, but we're going to keep monitoring it and see when that opportunity opens up again. Thankfully, you don't have to apply before the program. I think one of the requirements is you have to have a retrofit program. And then when the opportunity opens up, staff can apply for it, and we'll see how that plays out.
Great. Thank you for finding that. I really appreciate it. Because if we can find a grant, even if it's a small one, to distribute, it would be really helpful. And then lastly is about the fiscal impact to the city. And you had mentioned in one of your slides that the 24, 25 budget impact would be $112,000. But that's for year one. So for years two through five, would there also be a fiscal impact?
There could be, yes. And we'll have a better assessment as to what it is once we see how much gets done in the first year. Now, this is all cost recovery, right, with the $1,700, $1,800 plant check and permit fee? So in terms of like, it shouldn't be, it shouldn't take a hit, right? It should all be cost recovery.
Okay. And if we did decide to go down the route of early adopters get, you know, their fees refunded, that would, the cost would go up a little bit, for that, I would imagine?
For the city, yes.
Yeah.
And we can run those numbers if you would like us to.
Okay, great. Those are my questions, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. That was a seamless transition, because my follow-up to that was going to be, can you explain the Beverly Hills, I think it was Beverly Hills that is doing that model? I'd like to hear a little bit more. And is there another city that's doing kind of that incentive for folks who apply early on, to Councilmember Anthony's point?
Just, the only one that we found was Beverly Hills. And they gave people, or they gave building owners three years to comply, where we're proposing five. They're just a little bit more aggressive. And what they did was that if you complied within two years, right, so one year ahead of schedule, they would refund you 50% of your permit and plant check fees. And if you finished after 18 months, right, so halfway through the allotted time, then they refunded you 100% of the permit and plant check fees.
Okay. And there's a possibility for us to run those numbers to see what it would look like for us?
We could run those numbers, and it would be a bigger impact to the general fund, but we can run those numbers.
Okay, I would love to see that personally. I know I'm starting to beat a dead horse, but have we looked at any other incentives that we haven't discussed yet? I know we've discussed this one just now, and then the, what is the cost recovery, the $30? Are there other incentives out there that any of the other cities listed have explored or currently have in place?
We did look into, when we did the Building and Fire Appeals presentation, one of our board members, Victor Tarasina, asked us a question to look into property tax assessment relief. We looked into that, and seismic retrofit improvements do count. So if you spend money to improve your building, a tax assessor won't ding you on the evaluation.
Mr. Prescott, welcome back.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Patrick Prescott. Before you go too much further along in permit refunds, fees, I would just like to remind the council of our cost recovery policy for services rendered. The level of subsidy the city provides is based on who benefits from the service being provided. And in this case, it would be the property owner and the tenants for their safety. If you do a quick calculation of $1,700 permit fee times, say, $650, it's $1.1 million. You know, so it's not a small amount of money that you would be refunding. I just wanted to pour some cold water on that, be the little black rain cloud just for the purposes of your conversation.
Well, I thought you were delightful regardless, so thank you for jumping in.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask Mr. Prescott a quick question while he's up there?
If that's okay with the Vice Mayor.
Is that okay? I'm getting permission through everybody on the dais.
Just about.
Do we have to hire additional inspectors and/or staff for permit check?
That's what we're asking for the allocation, yes, for consultant, not permanent staff, consultant staff.
Okay. And that also goes for inspectors who are going to be going out to inspect on a regular basis?
Yes. And so the cost recovery from the permits would cover that cost that we would be asking you to allocate.
Okay. And are they specifically hired for this project, or they're just going to be?
Mario, would we be displacing existing work?
Yes.
So displacing existing work and having our inspectors and plant checkers, correct? Yes.
So is that going to delay any other projects that are going on in the city? As a result, they're focusing on inspecting the permit, going out and inspecting the 657 projects?
No, that's why we're bringing in the consultant staff.
Good question. Is it, Vice Mayor, is it all right, will he pivot here to the?
Can I just grab Mr. Prescott before we?
Is it a follow-up?
I was just throwing cold water on the conversation. They might actually be wondering, please.
Just real quick, this is, I believe I sent an email this morning to a constituent about the fees and how we assess them. What would, why would there be an incentive for people to comply early? Does that help us in plant check and community development? Does it help us to get this done sooner, rather than waiting until, like I said, December 31st?
I don't know. I mean, it's obvious you're looking for an incentive or some way to perhaps defer the costs to the property owner, particularly those smaller property owners who are concerned about the financial impact it will have on them. You know, it could get them to do it more quickly, but it's a five-year, right? And the voluntary ordinance was adopted in 98. So it's been quite a long time. People have been aware of the need to... a long time people have been aware of the need to, to retrofit these soft story, weak front structures that have been proven to collapse in a significant seismic event, two hundred of them in the Northridge earthquake, loss of life, fifty-seven people, and so uh, it's very important to keep that in consideration, um, take that into consideration.
Well, I think, I think the, the base of my question is, we have a mechanism for if they don't comply, right, so we know we have something to do if they're not done, and I, I guess I'm trying to understand, is there any benefit to us at the city or to our plan checkers or just city work to get it done quicker rather than wait the full year? I'm, I'm just trying to figure out why an incentive program would even be adopted.
So um, I'm sorry.
So go ahead, Maria.
We don't know when the, when the next big earthquake is gonna hit, it could be tomorrow, it can be one year, it can be two years, three years, five years, so we want compliance, and if we can get it quicker, we want it tomorrow, right, we want it yesterday, really.
How, how, if I have, say, uh, you know, anyone, like the vast majority is five to ten units, if I have a five to ten unit building and we pass this and it's, starts January first, how quick could I actually get to the end? Would it actually take me five years, or can they get done in six months?
If they are motivated, they can get done in three months.
Okay, I'm done.
Back to the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, and just hypothetically following up, I know Mr. Prescott put a damper on, on some of that, but hypothetically, we are thinking about the fact that in granting an incentive, it is, to your point, so that people do this faster, not everybody will be doing this faster, not everybody will be hypothetically benefiting from that fifty percent, right? So our loss margin is, is very hypothetical, it's up in the air, and to your point, granting an incentive is for the safety and well-being of people, the fact that folks also save on some of the costs is an added benefit, in my humble opinion. Another question for you, I, I know one of, or more of the cities considered it, is there a reason we didn't consider prioritization? So a- again, thinking in this line of questioning of safety, um, why didn't we start with larger buildings and work our way down?
Because priority, prioritization in other cities meant longer, it didn't mean shorter, so we want to get everything done quickly, if it means a, a bigger burden on staff, then we, we, we would take that on, uh, because our ultimate goal is, is, is safety, right? And we, uh, the city tried to get it done in two thousand and eight.
Two thousand and eight, yeah.
Two thousand and eight, so um, I think we've been very fortunate that, that we haven't been hit by a big earthquake, but you know, every time you, you, you feel an earthquake, it, you know, first thing you do is, is, oh my God, like, I, I hope nothing happened in, in Burbank.
And, and apologies if you've already shared this, but I know it's at the beginning of the staff report for all of us to read, but for the benefit of the public and everybody here, um, the reason that we're bringing this up now, if you guys wanna talk a little bit about the timeline in those thirty years?
Just like the history behind it, yeah, so nineteen ninety-four earthquake, four thirty-one AM, apparently that's when the earthquake started, uh, hit Northridge, uh, collapsed buildings, all types, it was a learning moment, not just for uh, people that felt it, but also the structural injury in community and all the other cities themselves. There's been articles, pictures, uh, books about kinda showing what kind of um, stress cities felt because it created basically housing concern, people living in camps, uh, it took a while for a lot of uh, um, for, for people to get back to their homes, so we're looking at this from the perspective that this, among other buildings that we learned from, apartment complexes, units that, that, that have a soft story condition basically suffered loss, and uh, from then on, that's the reason why, four years later after that, we implemented that ninety-eight voluntary uh, seismic retrofit, giving uh, the citizens a parameters to, to, to mitigate that. But yeah, it, it's, it's the ninety-four earthquake, they said in thirty years, there would be something, and um, and the staff report says like, for twenty-six years, yeah, last month, there was a couple of, of reminders, and, and you know, we, we feel like the timing is right, that's the reason we're here.
Thank you, and I just wanted to remind us of, of the timing on that, right? Most experts say we're reaching that thirty-year mark, and we should start thinking about that today because the big one, or whatever you wanna call it, but seismic activity is going to be increasing according to most of our experts. I think those are my only questions, Councilwoman Takahashi had the same question about the hazard grant program, and I appreciate you all looking into that, and, and, and obviously, a- as we can see in the timeline, this is something that is going to take us a few years, so I really appreciate you all looking at the funding opportunities available for grants and, and all that, because it is, it's gonna be a cost for us, for the landlords in our city, for everybody, so wanna make sure we can mitigate that as much as possible.
Great, any other brief questions before I jump in? All right, uh, thank you colleagues, you asked the lion's share of the questions I had prepared, um, again, to staff consultant, uh, great presentation, so I, I only have a few cleanup items. Are you familiar with, uh, I, I don't believe it's in effect this year, but there was the Cal OES Grant Application Program for Soft Story Seismic Retrofit, I believe it was accepting applications last year, the staff, take a look at that. And for public consumption, could you share a little bit about the program?
Sure, yeah, the, the program was open for, actually for single-family homes, so it's, it wouldn't fall within the scope of this ordinance, and it was for the uh, the, the brace and bolt, so the, the foundation, the anchorage of uh, the sill plates to, to foundations, so this is to keep homes from like shifting off their foundation in case of a, of an earthquake. They also have a, a soft story retrofit component to it, but it, again, it's limited to, to, to single-family homes, so it kinda falls outside of the scope of, of this specific ordinance.
Sure, the, the reason I'm asking though was, uh, for the, for the model, I, I, again, I think my understanding when I looked at it was they were offering thirteen thousand dollars for applicants to help with some of those costs, if I'm not mistaken?
That, that seems kind of like a lot of money, I, I don't know if it's thirteen thousand, I feel that the...
Up to thirteen thousand, Cal OES does like to, you know, claw some of that money back.
Are you speaking of the brace and bolt or the soft story?
Mr. Hughes, you wanna weigh in?
I was asking, uh, and he just had the good point, uh, uh, was it the, they do have the, the brace and bolt program, they also have the soft story one, um, I know the brace and bolt had uh, numbers around three thousand.
I was referring to the soft story.
You were referring to specifically the soft story.
Yeah.
I thought it was, I don't remember it being that high, I, I think maybe like you said, it was up to a certain amount, I don't recall the exact number, um, once we did look into that, we saw that it was um, uh, for single-family residences, uh, so that obviously was a, a hangup, um, and I believe it's that program that has some additional information or coming out, I think later this week, that I was, we were looking into.
Okay, very good. I, are you aware of any sort of state granting fund, grant programs that would apply funds for multifamily units like these?
Not at this time, but we have been uh, looking at those and we can continue to look at those to see, you know, uh, when they do, uh, if and when they do become available.
Yeah, it seems interesting that we, I get why we prioritize single-family homes, but I could see grant application assistance needed for situations like this, and maybe an opportunity for state advocacy and state leadership, we'll find out.
That's definitely a question that I may wind up asking, I think it's uh, on Thursday.
Okay. You know, the only other question I had, well, the reason why I'm going down this line of thinking is, I, I don't wanna get too much into deliberation colleagues, but this is my thought process, we're trying to balance multiple aims and objectives here. Obviously, public safety, the preservation of life and property is one of the ultimate goals, responsibilities of local government, that's why we have a police force, that's why we have fire and EMS services, but we also are trying to tackle a housing crisis, and the reality, with some, something that some of our speakers and commenters have spoken to, is that when you have this cost, um, and I understand why Los Angeles has a path through, pass-through requirement, and I understand the equity component to it, but it also does add to increasing cost of housing, and so it can be counterproductive to some of the other goals that city governments have in trying to encourage more housing. That's why I love the idea of grant assistance programs like the state did for single-family residential, because what you're allowing property owners to do is to accomplish a mission of making their property ultimately safer for the inhabitants, you're safeguarding their investment, and you're not inadvertently contributing to rising housing costs, so with that context, when you looked at what other local jurisdictions are doing, or when you were trying to think outside the box, have we thought about our, either our ability to secure funding from federal and state government, or our own capacity with one-time funds to put in place some sort of a pilot project like that?
We, we did look at, at the state funding opportunities, and we're gonna continue to, to monitor as they become available, we have a, a, you know, at least a, a year or more, we can reach out directly to this, uh, to, to the agency and, and find out, I, I'd imagine that if they find out that there's a city who, who, who just established this requirement, that there would be a, a need for it, maybe there isn't funding available 'cause, 'cause that, 'cause there isn't, do I, when was, when was the last retrofit program enacted? Uh, there hasn't been a recent one enacted, so maybe there wasn't a, a necessity for it, but maybe with Burbank uh, making it a requirement and there being another seven hundred uh, buildings that, that need funding, that might kickstart um, uh, the, the funding process, but we can continue to look into it, as far as um, having the city uh, up, 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 put the money upfront, we, that's not something that uh, that, that we felt was within our, 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 um, yeah, we, we, we tend to want to uh, make sure that we re- recover cost to the city.
I totally understand and appreciate the policy, um, but I had to ask. Colleagues, that's all my questions, did that spur any follow-ups? Yes?
I'm wondering if the three years, because we were talking about the timeline and how long it would take before the, the funding would be ultimately necessary to, to do the construction, in the three years that we have kind of going into that, that, that'll give us time as a city to advocate to our state-level legislator on um, maybe having some state funding that can help us and add that to our state-level advocacy legislative platform. Um, I think that, you know, this sounds like this, I kinda want, I'm, I'm sure we're not the only city that's had this, um, has this uh, issue, other cities have done the, already have done them, you know, Mandy, but then there's other cities that are like us, like Glendale, that are trying to figure out whether to do it, and if we have the, the support from the state, so is it possible that during that time, the, the next two, three years, we direct staff to keep advocating and looking for those funding sources, and we can add it to our legislative platform for the next near, years come to come? Okay, thanks.
Seems like the answer is yes, Mr. Hesse, that can be done?
Yes, in, in fact, too, you actually, uh, during consent calendar, you did approve the uh, Ferguson Group, uh, which also, that, that's federal, but they also, there was some uh, ability to um, help us with grants, federal grants, uh, on the federal level, so, so we would recommend doing both, both state and federal.
That's true, Congress does give money out too. Okay, any other questions? All right, let's go to, oh, question, yeah?
Actually, yeah, I have a question. If they're looking, if, if, if a, if a property owner is trying to get fifty to a hundred, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a capital improvement project like this, do we know the typical rates when they go out into the, the market on, on a loan of this size? Do we?
Not, not off the top of my head, no, we, we'd have to, to look into it and then get back to you.
I know, I, I do see, there is a couple experts in the room, I'm gonna throw out a number and just give me a nod, I thi, if, if I remember correctly, something between fifty and a hundred and twenty, depending on their credit rating, we're looking at anywhere from seven to fifteen percent, is that what I'm looking, uh, depending on their credit rating, is about what we're looking at?
For the record, Mr. Donahue is giving an affirmative response.
Yeah.
No, I know, but no, it's important that for the record, we actually know who's giving information to the council, so if you have a specific question for anyone in the audience, you can invite them up.
Yeah, uh, there is a representative from Agla here, do you, would you wanna weigh in on, on this kind of, no, all right, I'm, okay. I did work in this field for a little bit, and that, that's kind of where I'm, I'm seeing that number. The reason I ask, 'cause it takes a while to get that kind of funding and the application process, so I guess my next question would be to either the city attorney or the city manager, has Burbank, as a city, ever co-signed loans for private property owners or individuals?
Uh, no, and we're well beyond the scope, you will not be able to approve a financial assistance program this evening.
Fair enough.
You will not be able to fund a financial assistance program this evening, the only thing before you is to adopt or not, to introduce or not introduce the proposed ordinance, and also, if you choose, give some proposed modifications to that ordinance.
All right, thank you. Or areas for further related study, right, Mr. McDougall, to come back at another time, properly agendized?
That's correct, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I'm trying to keep up, all right. Anything else, Councilmember Anthony? No, Councilmember Mullins?
No, I don't have any questions.
Would you like to lead us in deliberation?
I, I do, I think there's really a lot of good discussion in regards to um, the financial impact on the landlords and getting this project completed, um, and, and yes, I, I can already see some of um, the small mom and pop that will have some perhaps issues financing this through a bank or asking for a second loan, or, I mean, that's, there's a lot of different ways, you'd have to go either get an equity line, a second loan, the cost of the loans nowadays, we all know it's somewhere in the range of six to eight percent, depending on your credit record, um, but since we are not a financial institute, nor that we are giving loans out, uh, it's probably a good...
And that's if you have a good credit rating and, and...
Yes, yes, that's, if you have a good credit rating, you're still gonna be paying seven percent about getting a, a loan, um, so there's definitely a financial impact. The other side to it, yes, we do need to um, approve or adopt something in the event we get the big one, which I hate to talk about and don't like to mention it, um, but we know it happened in Northridge, we know that, well, this can very much save lives and, and protect um, our community, so it is a difficult situation because um, we need to get this done to, to make sure we're, we're saving lives and a property and not displacing people from their homes, but in the same time, the financial impact is going to be really great on, on the landlords. I, I think the, I, I read the staff report from cover to cover, and I have, I had all these questions, I know that some cities have done it in three years, um, and some cities have done it in five years, and some are looking at it now, but we're, what we're in control of is, is what I like to talk about, which is the length of the time where we can work with some of the landlords, if they have an appeal process perhaps, if it's a financial burden on them and they can't get the loan, or because the loans, the interest rate is extremely high right now, I mean, we remember two years ago, not even, maybe a year and a half ago, it was two to three percent, it was affordable to be able to finance, um, so I think it's, it, it's not that we don't want this to prove it, in my opinion, as the council member, yes, I'm concerned about safety for our residents, but I also wanna look at financial impact, and is there a way that we can allow an appeal for financial impact, if we can allow them to maybe work through other institutes where they can get the loans, it might take them a little longer um, to obtain that loan, so the, the amount of, you gave him a hundred and eighty days, I believe, I think that's not long enough to be able to secure a loan and work with somebody to see if you can maybe borrow the funding through um, a different bank or, or work on trying to obtain those funds. So um, appeal process should be included, not to excuse them completely, but perhaps not to start retaping, and I know the city attorney says we don't retape, or you said this is not the extreme we're going for, but I'm going for that, um, we don't allow, maybe we say this is not, um, the, the place is not safe for people to live there, we need to work on something with the appeal process that we can do an extension, in the event there is the hard financial uh, impact, and specifically for the small mom and pop, a lot of these folks are retired, they don't have jobs, they have to qualify for a loan, I don't know how they're gonna get it, honestly, if they're living on social security and income just from the rental property, and that's why I asked the questions I did earlier about displacement of renters, um, the, the impact of some of these constructions, I've done a lot of construction in my life in my home, and I know every time I opened the walls, it took me another five to ten thousand dollars because something was there, um, so that's one area that I wanna explore with my colleagues. The other area is the thirty-eight dollars, I think, setting that up back in twenty fifteen, it might have been feasible to do it, it was... It was, um, maybe it worked back then, maybe they, I know you said they never revisited. This is the same amount. I think with our economy, uh, everything tripled, if not quadruple. I, I'd like to look at doubling this number. That comes up to 76 dollars, I'm gonna say 75, so we're not confusing people, just to throw it out there. Given the economy and given that things have increased, that maybe we do a flat 75 dollars for, um, getting some of those funds back. And I'm really open also to incentives and I know this is a financial impact on the city. Um, because that's the reason I asked Mr. Prescott, are we hiring additional folks? Are we gonna have inspectors? But perhaps people like to get incentives to maybe drive them to get the job done. I'm, you know, 1,700 dollars our permit process fee, maybe part of that will be half of the permit process fee. Um, I like that idea as well. I think it's, it's nice to be able to help them out and give them that extra push, extra incentive. It's still some money that would come back to them. Um, so I'd like to see that also being added in our thought process to help them out, increase a little bit of that, give them an appeal process. Um, five years, I'm, I'm grateful that you came back with five years. You didn't come back with, you know, let's just get this done today. And let's not, you know, turn our head on this. We, it took us a long time to get here today. So since we're going through this process, we approve it, but let's give him a little bit of leeway to allow them to obtain the loans if they need to and work with them. Those are my thoughts, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. Um, Vice Mayor, did you?
Yeah, well, um, Councilwoman Mullins was like talking ahead. I had one more question that sprung up from the very beginning of, of your line of questioning. Um, hypothetically, if this also passes, are, are we prepared with a website or some clear instructions? Because we all received emails about this, ad- admittedly from folks who I know and who I know they're building and I, I would guess that they are not in the category of folks who are gonna have to do this. So there's gonna be some confusion out there from, from our community as they hear. Do we have a, a plan for a clear website, somewhere where they can get instruction? And, and they can call somebody and find out if they qualify or if, or their building that's going to have to go through this process?
Absolutely, we do have a website and I think, uh, we will continue to maintain it. Um, we can, we can post updated statistics on, on compliance. Um, we can include the list if, if it's advisable to include the list on, on the website. Um, absolutely, we can do that.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then I guess I can continue with that. I, um, I would agree with, with, with Councilwoman Mullins in that I, I'd like to see a little bit more leeway for folks who, who are trying to get loans, who are looking at this process. In, in looking at the numbers of folks who have to retrofit, we're looking at folks who have three to four units, that's about 104 of, of the buildings we're talking about. The great majority is between five to 10 units. So we're talking about that middle range. Uh, when looking, it's the reason I asked the question about the tiered process and prioritization. The reality is some folks are going to be able to get this fast, done faster than others. And if our goal is faster compliance, I do agree with Councilwoman Anthony that I'd love to see some kind of incentive here to tell folks, if there is a way that you can do this faster, great, this is a safety concern, let's get it done. And in the current proposal, I can see why, and, and if I'm sitting here and I have my building, I can see how I would wait until the last date possible to comply. Because that's a hefty cost and I have to think not once, not twice, multiple times about how I'm gonna pay for it, when I want to incur this cost and talk with my financial advisor about when to start. And if my financial advisor says, hey, save a little bit before starting this process, I'm gonna be incentivized to do that, which is most likely the case. Versus if my city is offering me an incentive to start sooner, I may consider that option instead if I have the financial means to, to start this process. So it's something I think really worth considering.
So I think we're saying the same language is to look at the, in the permit fees that we collect from them because that's what we're in charge of, right? The fees.
And, and that's, you know, that's one thing and I know I can see Patrick sweating over there in the corner. So I, you know, I appreciate that we're trying to, I appreciate that we're trying to cost recover. I, I get that. I also appreciate that we are asking the landlords in our community to spend a pretty penny. And if we can reduce that, I would like to see how. And I know that staff said they could bring back better, better numbers on, on what that would cost us. I'd love to see that as well. I, I feel like I'd like to have that information in front of me. Um.
Yes, okay, because I think, um, that incent, this might be, this might be a bit that we're gonna have to go a little bit around about. So the incentive, I also want to add to that thought that yes, it's true that the landlords who are having difficult, would potentially have difficulty funding would benefit from the incentive. But it's difficult to differentiate an incentive for those folks than for people who have no problem funding. So let's say, for example, the incentive is you get it done early and we give you a, a better price. Well, let's say all the, the folks, the folks who can afford it are then gonna do the incentive because they can do it early and then they get the benefit of it. And the folks who can't afford it are gonna actually have a harder time getting that incentive. So I'm a little bit, I'm a little bit on the fence about it because I don't want to necessarily pay for the, um, the, uh, folks who can afford it and give them the benefit when the other.
Because if you have money, if you have money, you'll be able to get it done faster.
Exactly, right. So just putting it out there. And then also if we do an incentive for doing early, I, I can almost guarantee the folks who've already retrofitted will have a question about what about them? Do they get to have benefit because they've already done it? So just putting it out there to think about when we're thinking about incentives.
It's a fair point.
And then real quick, just as a follow-up question, the maximum discount we could give them on permitting and fees? You said it was about 1,700 dollars, which is negligible compared to the.
So because this item didn't come with an incentive package, uh, we're not prepared to really tell you.
Sure, I take back the question.
No, 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 I'm just saying that, so there's, staff didn't give you that parameter. He just told you what, uh, what you would be foregoing. There could be many options. So maybe what you want to do is have staff explore those options rather than try to change the ordinance before you know what's within the city's means.
Okay.
And taking back the floor, since, uh, to Mr. McDougal's point, that is what, where I was heading. I don't feel like I have sufficient information to just say, oh, let's, you know, do this incentive or let's not. I would love to see what the cost breakdown is for us. I would love to see what the savings are for them. And I just want to answer one point that Councilwoman Takahashi set, made. Remember this is twofold? So for me, I'm thinking about the cost and yes, I understand that this is a situation where maybe if you have more money, you benefit a little more. But the flip side of this, and I, I, I know we're very concerned, this is a council that's very concerned about the costs that our landlords are facing and we want to be mindful. The other side of that is a safety. So I do want to think about even if folks have the money to do it and they're benefiting, the benefit for the public is that the seismic retrofit is done sooner. Because the, the real benefit at the end of the day is lives saved and loss of, or less damage. Um, but to that point, I, I think that we're going to need information on the incentive. And also I would like information on the 38 dollars. I want to know how the city of LA came up with that number, where it's coming from and what that would actually look like in today's dollars. I appreciate Councilmember Mullins coming up with, let's double it and, and seeing. But we're, we're kind of, as you can see, we're trying to solve something on the fly here. I would love to know the equivalent of that in today's money is this much, right? So we can come up with some rhyme or reason. Maybe the city of LA didn't come up with a rhyme or reason to hit the 38 dollars. I don't know, but I would love to know. And I would love staff to come back with, hey, this is the reason why we are telling you this is a solid number, so that we can turn to both our landlords and tenants and say, this is why we feel this number is fair today in 2024 when we're putting this ordinance forward. I agree that there should be a number, but I don't know what that is.
And to be fair to staff, prior council never gave direction for exploration of an incentive or financial assistance program. So what I'm hearing from the council tonight is maybe that's direction we ought to give, so that that's something that can be explored. Councilmember Mullins, and then I want to loop in Councilmember Takahashi.
I, I want to go back to the incentive for those who are able to do it right now. Um, we gotta remember that this program started actually a while back. What, what year did we say?
1998. 1998 was voluntary. 2007, we tried to make it mandatory, but it didn't take. And, uh, 2017, 1919.
If they had the money to do it, they would have done it by now. Nobody, I don't think that they have that kind of, I don't, shouldn't say nobody, but this is not something that everybody's gonna run to and say, let me get it done because I have the money, let me get it out of the way. They would have done it by now, but obviously it hasn't happened because it's not required mandatory and the funding can go to other things that they can use. So, you know, uh, yes, they may be able to run and get it done, but in the same time, I think allowing some sort of an incentive to expedite the process, it, it's something that we definitely, and I'm happy to have them come back with additional information. I'm just trying to get the conversation going with some numbers for all of you.
On that note, Councilmember Takahashi, jump in.
Yeah, I think that's the, that's the direction we're heading here is to get some more information. And we've been, you know, it's getting close to 10 o'clock, so I want to just kind of not say too much more about that if we're gonna move on that direction. But I do want to say that I think it's fair, if we're gonna keep asking, you know, if we're gonna, uh, either go the five-year plan or we're gonna take some time to get this right. I do think it's also important for the tenants to know if they're living in a, in a building that has not been retrofitted. And I don't know if that's something that, um, we can also talk about in here as well. Is that if, if, if someone chooses to take their time, that maybe they should be notified that, that they're in a building that's not retrofitted, just so that the tenants know when they're moving in. And then, um, also I als, I just want to say that there's no good time to do this. 2008 wasn't a good time, 2018 wasn't a good time. You know, there's just never a good time to make this happen because of course, people don't want to be mandated to spend money, I get it. But we have to figure out something because it is, the earthquake is gonna happen. How it's gonna happen, when it's gonna happen, we don't know. It may not affect us that much, we don't know. But all of that, uh, worry about whether the, um, landlords can afford to do this, go out the window if their building collapses. So I think that, of course, it's about how we do it. So, but I do think we, we do need more information to kind of get through the details. It's just kind of, we would need to be careful to make sure that we're getting it all done in a way that we feel pretty solid about, but it does, I do, I believe it does need to be done in some way, shape or form.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to add, and, and to the mayor's point, I have no way berating staff. I appreciate what you brought forward. I just think if we're thinking with the mindset of 2024, this council has some different questions and considerations and we just appreciate you all coming back with the new asks and new information. But thank you for the work you've done thus far.
Councilmember Anthony, then I'll jump in.
Um, I would just say, I think the best time to do this was probably before the 94 quake, but now is the second best time, so. That's right. Um. Boy. They asked for this in ni, at 2019, right? This was a while back when they requested this one? All right, um, so I'm of the mindset that I don't think five years is good enough. I would actually like to see it quicker. Um, and I think we can find a way to make it work, to find some financially feasible way to get people, uh, to want to do this quick and that it doesn't need to take five years. Because every year that we wait, we're putting lives at risk. Um, I, I, I think there's a way to do it. Um, I think right now, the ordinance is almost there. I think there's a lot of direction we want to give. Um, but I think, I think the structure is there, we just have to retrofit it. Um, and there's, yeah. So, there, there, thank you. Uh, I'd like to see, I'd like to see it quicker. I'd like to see, I, I think five years is too long. Um, I'd also like to, uh, uh, if it needs to be at the end of the night or if we could give direction today, I'll ask their city attorney on finding financial systems outside of what was proposed today, some sort of, um, um, some sort of mechanism. And, um, well, I'd like to see that come back to, to especially get the way in of our, um, the financial services department and the city treasurer. There has been, uh, some big movement at the state, uh, with regards to public banking and cities abilities to weigh in financially and, and support, uh, private enterprise. And I think that would be, uh, healthy for this discussion. Um, and to the point of incentivizing speed, I, I think there, the understanding of our fee structure has always been based on voluntary participation in city benefits and programs. Um, this is a little bit outside that because we're mandating it. And so I think there's a little bit of nuance to this that we can sort of go outside our typical fee structure, uh, especially if we want to start using it as an incentive. Um, those are my thoughts. Um, Mr. Mayor?
Great, well, thank you all, uh, colleagues, uh, lively discussion. Um, so I have a couple brief thoughts. Uh, first of all, I like dealing with, uh, concrete, hard numbers. Um, I, my understanding is it'll be five years from the date that notification's sent out. I think it's better and it's more clear to say something like January 1st of 2030. I, I just think that it's easier to message. It's, it's, even though I understand you may send out notification, uh, on or around that date, I would feel much more comfortable with a minor tweak to say some date. Now, uh, Councilmember Anthony, I, I agree and I disagree with you. I understand the hardship that five-year imposes. And, uh, look, the, the legislature is dealing with this right now. This, this year, there's been debate in the Capitol about our hospitals. Hospitals are currently required to meet a deadline of January 1, 2030. And my understanding is there's a bill going to the governor's desk that may push that deadline back. But we're all trying to seismically, seismically retrofit to achieve these safety standards and all of that comes at cost. Um, so the first point I would, I would make is five years does not offend me. I think that it is, it is reasonable. I, I think that a shorter timeframe, I know there was some reference to that possibility. It's gonna be more of an immediate financial hardship and it will limit our ability to find potentially state and federal dollars that could help with this. Because I can tell you in the next 48 months, the state isn't going to have the resources to make that sort of investment. But if we're talking about five years, we might be able to pursue it. Um, the issue I see tonight is whether we want to introduce the ordinance and separate from that, whether we want to direct staff to pursue some sort of either financial assistance to the property owner, hoping to achieve the retrofit and/or some financial incentive to encourage folks to do it on an earlier possible timeframe. Um, as to that question, I would favor both. I would love to see staff explore both options. If there are, um, incentives that we can offer to get someone to do the retrofit earlier, I would be happy to explore that, even if it means a deviation from our general fee collection policy. Um, I also think that we absolutely need to, to Councilmember Takahashi's point, when the appropriate time comes next year, revisit our legislative platform and make sure that we are pursuing these sorts of dollars from state and federal agencies. As far as the ordinance itself, um, I do agree with what I hear a majority of my colleagues saying and that is that I, I, there has to be a time to do it. I understand there's no right time. Um, I would feel comfortable introducing the ordinance tonight with the modification of, I, I personally think January 1, 2030 is just easier to message, easier for folks to understand. There's less ambiguity about enforcement date. And what I would like staff to do, uh, in my opinion, is rather than come back at the next meeting and put it on consent, which is normally how we handle it, if there's a way that we could bring this back before the end of the year so that we could have it go into effect January 1, but have it come back maybe accompanied with at least a first step look at what incentive structure or financial assistance structure could look like. That'd be, that would be my request. Is it possible, Mr. Hess?
If I could, Mr. Mayor, we would want to make sure that we had the financial incentives, uh, provided to you. We'd also, um, you know, there's kind of three areas that I think we need to further information and, and for you guys, uh, potential options. And, and one was the financial incentives. The second was the 38 dollar pass-through, so we need to kind of lock that in. And then, um, uh, the one I'm not sure about is a potential appeals process for, for financial hardship. So, um, those are kind of the three that I think we, we would need to bake a little bit more.
We, we should flush that out.
Before we adopted anything.
And I actually don't necessarily, I appreciate the engineering. And I actually don't necessarily, I appreciate the ingenuity and the creativity, but I don't actually agree with the discretionary appeal process because the point is, is we need to get these buildings retrofitted. I think that we're much better looking at, yes, trying to get assistance for these folks, but that doesn't mean exempting them from the requirement. It's connecting them with financial resources.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, I, I'm wondering if we could look into a program where we could do these, like, possible low-cost loans, again, up to say, like, 20K for folks who would qualify, people who have.
So you can't do that tonight?
No, no, no. I'm saying just explore possibility.
I think the question is, would that be something that staff in theory could look at, one of many options?
That'd be number four. Yeah. And, and in addition, in addition to us being the, the financial stakeholder there, the possibility of just simply co-signing. I, I now, I know that's way outside the scope of anything we've ever done before, but just to look at options that cities have done.
Do you mind if I, just to help streamline this a little bit? Mr. Hess, I'm going to direct this to you, but any other staff member can answer. Do we feel collectively as a staff that we have exhaustively explored every available federal or state or state grant program that might exist to help these property owners with covering some of those costs? And if the answer is yes, that's perfectly fine, but have we done that thorough search?
I think we've done a thorough search, as far as exhausted every avenue. I, I, I couldn't tell you. I mean, things pop up constantly, so you just never know. I mean, it depends from year to year. I mean, last year, the state had a surplus. This year, it has a deficit. The grant programs change, so, so it's hard to really make a determination on that because literally, I think our consultant said Thursday, there might be some news on a potential funding opportunity.
So it sounds like we have something we can look at in about 48 hours' time.
Yeah, I'll definitely be.
So that would be, that would be one option. Secondly, we have this issue of fee relief or fee waiving, some sort of economic incentive. I've heard consensus on those two items. I don't know that I've heard a consensus on the city acting as a broker of sorts or offering small loans. And that, maybe we can, I, I want to winnow down what staff is looking at and come back.
Yeah, and I would say that there could be heavy overhead or a lot more administrative responsibility there.
Sure.
Administering loans, co-signing, that's a lot more work.
Both are expensive, but it'd probably be cheaper to administer a grant program than a loan program to monitor and track and enforce.
Absolutely.
I wanted to ask one question, actually. You came up with $38 over 10 years. Is there any way we can't lower that and then extend the timeout?
Absolutely. Yeah, it's totally, if, if you want to do $30 for 15 years, that, that's within your, your purview to do so.
Okay, so we've got wiggle room there because, because lowering it per month might help the tenants, but then I'd want to extend it out further is kind of the.
But again, I, I think we need to bring it back because I think there needs to, we need to hear kind of that origin story of how LA came up with that number. So you, you all could feel good about whatever number you're going to propose rather than kind of creating it now.
So even if that means staff can come back to us with options, let's say they find out how LA got their, their numbers. It may be, here's option A, which is $50 for 10 years versus $15 for 30 years. I don't know what that looks like, right?
Yes, and, and I, I think, Mr. Mayor, I heard you say we're ready, we can move forward with the adoption tonight, but they.
Not adoption, we can't adopt.
Okay, well. Introduce. And it sounds to me like we're missing a lot of information to introduce something that we still, it's like, what am I introducing exactly? If we need to come back to look at the $38, we're looking at incentives, we're looking at the other options I suggested. And I think it's something we need to explore, and I really appreciate to look at it, maybe the appeal process of financial hardship, to maybe give extra than 180 days because we already have it in here. So it's something that maybe we can explore. So I don't know. I'm missing a lot of components from even saying, I like the concept. We need to get this done. And we can tell them, yes, we want to get it done by, by 2030. I agree with you. We should have a date. It's good to have it. But I really want them to come back with all this information, then we can make a determination how to move forward to include a clean ordinance.
Could I ask a question?
Yes.
I think, I think what we're debating here is the implementation of the ordinance, but I believe we're all in agreement of the requirement. And, and I think the major part of this is where we want to move forward with requiring going from a voluntary to a mandatory system, and then we bring it back and fix all the little nuts and bolts.
I'm going to, in a minute, I'm going to pass it over to the vice mayor and the council member, but I want to be clear. You know, the, now the pass-through requirement, that would potentially be a component of an ordinance, as well as a discretionary appeal or exemption process. But the incentive program would not necessarily be baked into the ordinance. It would be an accompanying program and a, a related agenda item, but it wouldn't necessarily be in the ordinance. So I just want to be clear. If we're not comfortable introducing an ordinance tonight without having that on the agenda, that's fine. But I did want to clarify, we would probably not put any incentive program ever in the text of an ordinance because that could change. I just want everyone to be on board. So let's go vice mayor.
Mr. Mayor, and to that point, you could introduce an ordinance with $38 for 10 years.
And amend.
And amend, and that's within the scope of your amendment authority under the charter. So that could be introduced and changed upon adoption.
And for this one, knowing that there will be changes in discussion, we wouldn't, normally, we would introduce it, have a bunch of discussion, and then put it on consent usually for the, the adoption.
Not this time.
Not this time. We would bring it back as a report.
All right, let's go to the vice mayor and Councilmember Takahashi. I know you both wanted to jump in.
I was basically going to say what you said.
We were basically seeing, reading the tea leaves and we figured that it was.
Well, I am the captain of the obvious.
I was on a similar line too, but I do want to also point out, I, I like the idea of having just recognition of the difficulty of financial, but if we go into doing financial hardship determination, that's first of all complicated, it's going to take more staff, and I think it'll be difficult to do. One thing we could look at, and I'm not totally against the idea, just, but it would be difficult. We could also look at, I think Vice Mayor mentioned it earlier, Fremont has a split situation where 10 plus is one timeline and, and less than 10 is another timeline. So we can look at, consider that too. Just think about how can we identify, somehow identify or help the folks who are capable now to do it and incentivize them to get it done, and then those who are taking a little longer and need a little assistance to give them more assistance. And whether that be financial hardship or just, it's going to take them just a little longer to get their things together.
It also stratifies, thank you, Councilmember Takahashi, it also stratifies staff time. If everybody's coming in all at once, it's very different than if you have, you know, folks with five to 10 units coming in, which is the bulk of, of the, of the buildings that we want to get retrofitted, versus the folks with three to four, which is the minority of the units that we want to get retrofitted. So it may be worth looking at that, and I would appreciate if we could add that into, and I want to call it the second step report, but the next discussion.
If I could ask, so four units unless you'd want to give them more time?
We're asking if we can look into stratifying.
Okay.
Like two tiers.
So colleagues, let's, let's take it step by step. I mean, the ultimate question is, do we feel the council's in a position to introduce the ordinance in any manner tonight? Because if not, we could end the discussion now. If we do, we can get to a next level discussion of what we want staff to come back with, but, but that's really the question. So how does the council feel? Do we, Mr. Hess, I mean, taking your proposal is one option. The ordinance could be introduced with a $38 pass-through cost. That doesn't bind us to adopt that, but that would be one option on the table.
It's a five-year plan. It's, it starts January 1st, $38 a month pass-through. Okay.
That's certainly one option if it's at the, if that's the council's pleasure. We could introduce it tonight. It does not bind us to adopt that at the end of the day.
As long as it comes back for discussion as, as an item.
It would not be on consent.
Thank you. Yeah, because I, yeah, I want to go through all these items before we have any further action taken. Because and, so I hate to ask this question, how soon do you think you can bring this back? With all the requests.
I think in the next two weeks, we can do it.
You're being optimistic, are you?
How about before the end of the year?
That's a good, that's a good answer. But I love the boldness.
So, but, but I do have a question. So if we introduce this tonight, doesn't it have to be adopted in 30 days?
No.
An ordinance?
You're just introducing, you're not adopting.
There's no charter requirement. There's no municipal code requirement.
Okay, so we're, we'll be okay that we don't have to come back and like we usually do in two weeks and say, okay, now you're going to adopt.
Council may decide that the program has grown so much, you want to reintroduce a more comprehensive ordinance. But if it's only a couple of minor tweaks and you separately adopt a package of rebates or assistance by resolution in the fee schedule and do a budget amendment, that doesn't affect the ordinance.
He describes it so easily.
No, but it sounds like there is a lot. I mean, he went into budget amendment. He went to by resolution and.
We'll just deliver all that for you.
Yeah, okay, but I.
And there's a budget amendment being considered tonight.
And, and there is, but yeah, so I don't know why we can't just ask for this to come back and then not do anything with it tonight. We gave enough directions. I think all of us, we, we agree that we should do something, but it, they're not going to start anything anyway until we come back, have that discussion, and then give them more directions.
I would just say the changes that we're making are very minute compared to the major package of the ordinance, which is the requirement, right? That, that's the, the meat of it is changing it from voluntary to mandatory. That's, that's the biggest part of it.
I don't know how it will change on the next go-around. It could change very little, which then it would be easy. It could change a lot, and then we, we'd have to reintroduce it. So that would take another step if, if it changed dramatically. So it, it, it kind of depends on what's going to happen on the next step. We're fine introducing it. You, you don't have to. You could certainly just have us bring it back. If you do have us bring it back without introducing it and it doesn't change that much, we still then have to do that next step. So that's the, there's minimal complication there, but that's just kind of the process.
For the sake, I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilmember.
I was going to say that, that introducing it tonight just offers us a possibility of omitting one, one extra step. So if, if we decide to go ahead and, and, and pass the ordinance next time. And I also wanted to just ask that if, when we do bring this back, can we give us ample time in the schedule to discuss it thoroughly? Because clearly, we have a lot to say about it, and I want to make sure we have plenty of time in the agenda. There's not like five other things. So, Mr. Mayor and City Manager, if we can make a good chunk, maybe it looks like two hours discussion time on this when it comes back.
I'm happy to give him a non-binding suggestion. Happy to. He sets the agenda. All right. With that said, for the sake of discussion, colleagues, I'm going to make a motion, which I think captures what we have said. But I'll accept any friendly amendments if I miss anything. I, it's three, in three parts. I move to introduce an ordinance to the Burbank City Council amending Title IX, Chapter One, Article 16, Division Four of the Municipal Code, establishing mandatory earthquake hazard reduction standards in existing wood frame residential buildings with soft, weak, or open front walls, with the two caveats being that the effective enforcement, the enforcement date, the go-date would be January 1 of 2030, as opposed to how it's currently written. And then I also want to make clear that what I'm introducing would include the $38 pass-through cost, which we can certainly revisit when it comes back. So that would be number one.
So as to number one, the amendment would be made on attachment page 1-6, section 9-1-16-400.5. The box under milestone would be changed to January 1, 2025.
You read my mind.
Okay.
2030.
No, this is the beginning date.
Sorry, yeah, the beginning date would be 25, the endorse, yes, yes, the enforcement date would be 2030.
That box is the beginning date in the lower left-hand corner. Time from notice date, instead it would be time from January 1, 2025, one year, two year, three year, four year, five.
Five year, yes, exactly. All right, I'm going to keep going, and then I'm going to go to Councilmember Mullins for any clarification. So that's the first.
No, I thought you stopped. I was going to say there's still additional things to ask for.
I always got more. Number two, a motion includes approval of an amendment to the fiscal year 2425 adopted budget by appropriating $112,000 from revenue account ending in dot 1000. For a consultant cost to support the current senior plan check engineer and building inspector two, who will be working on the soft story seismic retrofit program. And then third would be in, to accompany the next agenda item where we will consider adoption of the ordinance. We would have a related agenda item, a discussion opportunity, if you will, report back from staff on a combination of incentives to encourage early compliance, as well as financial assistance programs to help with some of the costs that will be borne by our housing providers. I think I captured it, colleagues. If any, if I missed anything, oh, Mr. Hess, you got me.
I, I, I think also further discussion and information related to the $38 pass-through, as well as information related to the tiered approach.
Outstanding.
And then I still am clear about the appeal process.
My motion doesn't contemplate that because I didn't hear a consensus, but we can certainly have a friendly amendment. But for purposes of my motion, it does not include that. Do I have a second?
Can we make a friendly amendment to include the appeal process?
Can't make an amendment if there's no second.
So all second, and I would like to include the, the friendly amendment.
Thank you. Now we have it all in order. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Technically, I have to accept the friendly amendment. I will do so for the sake of consideration. I do not know if I would support that ultimately.
Close the amendment again?
To include exploration of a discretionary review, appeal, potential exemption process for a financial hardship. I'm just putting on the record that I don't know that I would support the ultimate product, but for purposes of a discussion and information back, I'm willing to support it. So that is now included in the motion.
Yes.
And the second, so amends?
Yes.
Anyone else have anything on their wish list?
May I just be a little bit more specific in regards to the appeal amendment? It's, we currently, as the ordinance or the staff report indicates, they have 180 days. I was looking specifically to expand perhaps additional time to the 180 days. Because it's already in existence. It's not something new, but it's looking at that 180 days, whether it should be 200 days. I don't know.
Just, just to clarify, that, that is an extension, 180 days. There is an appeal process, but it's based on, on like engineering. So if you get an engineer to run calculations and say, this building is actually not a soft story. It, it, it does have a, a lateral load resisting element, we would accept that. So there is an appeal process. It's just not financial.
I don't know so much, maybe like we're using the word appeal. I think what Councilwoman Mullins is looking for is an extension, a possible extension if somebody runs into hardship.
Okay.
Correct, and it's in a, thank you. It's in addition to the engineering component. It could be, that would be applied to hardship for loan, obtaining a loan, and they might be running later.
Okay, it's more of an extension, not an appeal.
An extension to, yes.
And Councilmember Mullins, perhaps I got a little tripped up here. I thought I heard you say exemption at the beginning. So opt out of, so you're just talking just an extension of time?
Yes, yes, yes. In order to obtain financial assistance or a loan, or they might be running late.
That's why I amended. I got you. I heard you at the beginning.
Well, now I do it a lot less begrudgingly, I accept.
See, I, I was listening. I heard you at the beginning.
I heard her say exemption. I don't know what to say. I know. All right, very good job, colleagues. So we have a motion on the floor that's been amended to high heck.
Exemption and extension sounds similar.
No, no, you're done. You're done. I'm kidding. Does anyone else, in all seriousness, anyone else have anything else to add? All right, any other discussion? Let's do a roll call vote on our three-part motion. Ms. Clark?
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Takahashi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Schultz.
Yes, great job, colleagues. Thank you, staff. I guess we'll see you in two weeks, right, Mr. Osina? Before the end of the year, that'll do. All right.
I want to get my hair exemptions done.
Well done. I, I would love, I would.
As opposed to your beard exemptions?
All right, all right, back to the agenda, right, Mr. McDougall? Okay, this brings us to our last report to council this evening. The, that was very, very mindful. The third report to council tonight is a discussion on a ban on the use of gas-powered leaf blowers in the city of Burbank. We have Katie, is it Pika, Picha? Pika?
Pika.
Pika. Okay, Katie Pika, administrative officer with the Community Development Department. Please present the report whenever you're ready. We have another first presentation to council this evening.
It's a rookie night for community development tonight.
That's great, all right. We're building, outstanding. Well, we'll see if this also takes another hour of discussion. We don't know. But good luck, you'll do great whenever you're ready.
Thank you very much. So good evening, Mayor Schultz, Vice Mayor Perez, members of the city council. My name is Katie Pika. I am the administrative officer for the Community Development Department. Tonight we'll be discussing a potential ban on the use of gas-powered leaf blowers here in the city of Burbank. This is a first step report, so the information provided is very broad, big picture, and we hope this is enough detail to allow you to have a conversation. Representatives from the Community Development Department and the Parks and Recreation Department are here to answer any questions you may have. And with that, may please have the presentation. Okay, so a little background on this report. In November 2022, then Vice Mayor Schultz had requested a report on banning gas-powered leaf blowers. Following that, in October 2023, Councilmember Takahashi requested a memorandum on the ban. So this report is responsive to both of those requests. In 2020, Governor Gavin Newsom issued an executive order and that addressed things like climate change crisis, reduction in greenhouse gas emissions, and accelerating zero emission technology adoption. In response to that, Assembly Bill 1346 was established in 2021, and this bill bans the sale of new gas-powered small off-road engines, or what is called SOARs, from 2024 onward. The only exception to that are generators and large pressure washers, and that's not, those sales are not banned until 2028. So this bill also directed the California Air Resources Board, or CARB, to develop cost-effective and technologically feasible regulations that would effectively stop the sale of new SOARs. These regulations are for new engines model year 2024 or later, and all new SOAR sales must be zero emission. So while the regulations now require new SOAR models sold in California to be zero emission, they do not ban the use, repair, or sale of existing gas-powered SOARs. So that means existing equipment can be used until end of life and must comply with CARB emission requirements applicable to those earlier models. So I bet everyone's wondering what's a SOAR. So these are spark engines with rated power at or below 19 kilowatts or 25 horsepower. So we're talking your everyday guarding equipment like leaf blowers, lawn mowers, weed trimmers, and chainsaws. So several cities have implemented local bans regarding the use of gas-powered leaf blowers. Most recently, we have Glendale in 2024, Pasadena in 2023, and the city of South Pasadena in 2022. So there are benefits to a ban, including a potential for enhanced quality of life. There could be reduced air pollution and that could lead to improved air quality. We also have potential for respiratory health improvements. Also, there could be a slight noise reduction, and noise is actually our largest complaint when it comes to leaf blowers. While there are benefits to a ban, there are also potential impacts that must be considered. Things such as battery-powered limitations. These batteries quickly lose power and need to be swapped out often. There could be potential job loss in the landscaping industry. There could be enforcement challenges and costs like resistance to the ban, additional costs for staff time for enforcing the ban, and the ban may also reduce the number of landscapers willing to do business in the city. Lastly, transition and a replacement cost also need to be considered. So just looking at some estimates, currently gas-powered leaf blowers go for about $200 to $1,700, whereas the battery-powered versions go for about $200 to $3,500. But there's also a need for replacement batteries ranging from $200 to $400. And since we need to swap out batteries often, it's likely smart chargers will need to be purchased. They're about $650. These allow multiple batteries to be charged at one time without overloading an electrical socket. There's also estimated costs to the city for this transition and replacement. So first we have to modify our forestry and parks and recreation maintenance vehicles. We have 32 vehicles that we need to be modified to allow for charging. That approximate cost is $22,000. The labor to modify the vehicles, we're looking at $6,000. Then we have to replace all of our gas-powered leaf blowers. We have 23 leaf blowers with an estimated cost of replacement for $17,000. Extra battery is about two per leaf blower, so we're looking around $18,000. And then we are in need of a climate-controlled room for charging all these items, and that is actually included in the city yard services building project. I do want to point out, not included in this estimate is the cost of maintenance and electricity for charging, also staff time, so staff time for labor and enforcement is not included either. So if the city were to ban the use of one type of gas-powered SOAR, so in this case a gas-powered leaf blower, on the basis of public health effects from related emissions, a similar ban should be considered for all types of gas-powered SOARs. This would allow us to fully achieve the public health goal and not unfairly burden one group of SOAR users, and in this case, landscape workers. With that in mind, there are some alternatives to consider. So we can start with a gradual phase-out of gas-powered SOARs through attrition. This approach is recommended. This would allow for when equipment reaches end of life, naturally that would have to be replaced by a zero emission model as the state regulations require that any new model purchased is zero emission. We could also implement a target date for a ban. We recommend approximately three years to allow for transition and outreach. We also, we need to determine if we're going to include all SOARs or just gas-powered leaf blowers in such a ban. And then a city ordinance will also be required in order to implement a ban. So overall, an immediate ban is not recommended. Adverse impacts to residents, landscapers in the city could outweigh the potential benefits. Existing regulations will phase out gas-powered SOARs over time. As of January first, 2024, the sale of new gas-powered SOARs is banned statewide. Therefore, it is recommended that the city continue to allow the use of gas-powered SOARs until the need for replacement arises or council establishes a target date for a ban. This concludes my presentation and we are prepared to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Great, excellent presentation, nicely done. We do have one public comment card. The one commenter I have who will get three minutes is Armand Matavosian. Is Armand here?
I think he may have left.
Okay, I think so too. Final call for Armand. Okay. Then I stand corrected, there is no public comment. Therefore, I assume you have nothing you'd like to add.
That is correct.
Okay, had to ask. With that, colleagues, let's start with questions. Anyone have a question from a speaker? Yes, Councilmember.
Excellent first presentation.
Thank you.
Gas-powered leaf blowers. Now, SOARs are used for more than just those, right? And you're not asking us to ban all spark ignition engines, just...
I think it definitely should be a consideration if we're going to ban based on health effects, just banning the leaf blowers. It would be more impactful to look at a ban for all SOARs.
Is that what we have in front of us right now or no?
This is just to facilitate discussion, so the option, there is a little bit of discussion in the staff report talking about those, that is an option.
Right, I saw all the other ones that are used, lawn mowers and, what was the other one you listed? But yeah, there's a number of uses for these kinds of engines.
Yes.
But right in front of us is just the leaf blowers, yes?
There is no ban in front of you. This is a first step report. So you'd need to give direction on what exactly you wanted to do.
Very well, very well. If I could, just correct me if I'm wrong here. In my understanding, your automobile engine is a four-stroke engine, an internal combustion engine, separates oil, exhaust, and gasoline all at the same time. But these are typically two-stroke engines, so it mixes oil, gas, and exhaust. And for that reason, you can't limit the exhaust in any way with either a muffler, a sound dampener, or even a catalytic converter. So it's A, louder than your automobile, and B, much more toxic with the fumes. Is that correct in my understanding of this?
I am not versed in this type of skill set.
All right, okay, do we have an engineer?
We can definitely look into that.
All right, I'm pretty confident that's the...
So there are four-stroke yard equipment?
Oh.
So it's not a simple distinction between two-stroke and four-stroke.
But the SOARs are not four-stroke?
They are not. I believe they are two-stroke.
Yeah, yeah, these are the spark ignitions. Okay, that's, that's my understanding of that. Okay, those were all my questions for now. Maybe I'll get inspired by something else. All right, Councilmember Takahashi.
Thank you, I was going to ask about two-strokes too. So just to kind of follow up on the two-stroke engine. I, you know, even though I grew up around cars, because my dad was a mechanic and owned a tire store, I don't know anything about cars or engines. So electric leaf blower does not have a two-stroke engine then, so what you're saying is it's, right, okay, just make sure. There was also a mention of, when one of the speakers early, earlier on, mentioned that even though the initial cost of buying a new electric is maybe potentially high, that actually over time, it costs less to own electric because the cost of battery is less than the cost of gas. And I wanted to follow that up with the estimated replacement cost grid. What I'm wondering is, it does say how much the batteries cost to replace and to have the charger, but I'm wondering what the ongoing cost of gas is for the leaf blowers. Do we have that information of what that...
We do not have that information at hand, and I believe since it does change so frequently, it'd be difficult to get exact figures that are, that remain reliable, but that's definitely something we could look into.
Yeah, I think that would be an information that would be good to know. Kind of, the claim is that it costs less over time is an investment, so it'd be good to know if that's true or if it's the same or... And then there was also a slide here about sound, and I think that also Councilmember Anthony mentioned about sound. And one of the commenters also mentioned different frequencies of sound. I did a little Google search about it. And I guess there's high-frequency and low-frequency sound. And do you have any information on the different sounds that the two different kinds of engines emit, or two different kinds of tools emit?
We did not do any research on the sound frequencies. We did do some research on the differences in sound levels. So for instance, the difference between a gas-powered leaf blower and something that is zero emission is about 10 decibels. And for reference, that's the sound of breathing. So it's a very minuscule difference in sound, but like you said, there could be a difference in the frequency and that we did not look into.
Okay, yeah, if we could look into the frequency, that'd be great. And also my just really quick Google search said that 70 decibels is actually the threshold before ear damage happens. So I'd be curious to, even though there's a difference in between, a small difference between gas and electric, that may be just enough to push it up over 70. So I would be curious to see, you know, how much, how, how much the gas, because it does go up to 80, would be pushing over versus electric. So that'd be interesting for me to know.
Okay.
There was one more thing. Oh, yes. Did you mention, maybe you did, the incentives that are available here through, I think on BWP's website, there's incentives, so...
Yes, so there's actually a few incentives available. We do have one through Burbank Water and Power. There is an attachment to the staff report that outlines all the incentive options.
Okay.
We have one, two, three listed on here. One of them is through Burbank Water and Power. One is a core voucher project program, and the other one is a CK, SCA QMD program. And the city would actually qualify to submit to that program as well if we decided to replace or upgrade our equipment. I'm not sure the exact process of that and how much we would be allocated to get, but we do qualify as a local government to submit to that program.
I was going to ask about that, great. Because I think that the cost about replacing the gas-powered with electric, the 17,000, does that take into account the potential incentives?
It does not.
Right, so I would be interested to know what that would look like with incentives if we did that. And also this estimated replacement cost, what it would look like if somebody took full advantage of the incentives available. Thanks. Thank you.
No questions? Okay. You know, the only question I have is, I know Los Angeles, I'm looking at slide six. Los Angeles is one of the first ones to put in place a ban. I'm not an expert.
Is your microphone on?
Oh, is it not working? There you go. Okay, it's closer. Los Angeles was one of the first cities to enact a ban, I think only after Santa Monica. If memory serves, I think Los Angeles has had quite a difficult time with enforcement. The way they had done it right, it was 500 feet back from residences and although that's officially on the books, I think their code enforcement has had a pretty difficult time actually cracking down on that. Did you look into that at all?
So we haven't really dug into how effective enforcement has been, but surface-level investigation has found that enforcement really isn't that effective or happening that often. It's possible that because it has to be reactive enforcement, it's really hard to go through and enforce that. And so you have to wait for a complaint and then go out, and by the time you get out there, it's done. So it's a matter of like timing and things of that sort, which makes enforcement really tough. I have my colleague here from Code Compliance, Juan Carlos. I don't know if you want to add anything on the enforcement side?
Hi, yes. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm Juan Carlos Murillo with... Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm Juan Carlos Murillo, Senior Code Compliance Inspector with Code Compliance under Building and Safety, under Community Development Department. So yeah, we rely on the public to notify us of an alleged violation and we take in the allegation, we would go out there, we would investigate. If we verify that there is a violation, we would notify the property owner that they're violating the ban gas leaf blower ordinance. And then we would, we would notify them with a notice of violation. And if the violation continues, then they could potentially be cited, given administrative citations. That's how we treat every violation right now. So I discussed this with my building official and my code compliance manager, and they agreed that that would be the actions that we would take.
Thank you. I'll go with Councilmember Anthony, then Mullins.
Well, two things. One, the LA ordinance is based on distance, so that's, I would assume is harder to enforce because you could just say, oh, I was outside the 500 feet. Is that a blanket, a potential blanket ban? Would be easier, I think, to enforce, yes? Is that...
I would say yes, and yeah, measuring distance, yeah.
Okay. And then lastly, I would say, are we putting the notice of violation on the person who owns the property that is being leaf-blown? Or are we vi...
Correct.
Not, not the user, not the gardener? Oh, interesting, okay.
Councilmember Mullins.
That was...
That's how we treat violations on a property now. The property owner is always responsible.
So that's going to be my question too. So when you said that you will go out to the property and give the violation to the property owner, how is it, the property owner would have to do one or two things? Number one is, I'm not really home most of the time when my gardener is around, so I don't even know what they're using.
You will if you get a code enforcement violation.
Right, right. So, so now I'm being responsible for my gardener not using the right equipment, which I probably didn't know he's using the right equipment. And then number two is I would either have to give him the notice to let him know he needs to change his equipment or fire that person and get somebody else, do a research to see who's actually using the electric blower in order for me to hire that person to do my yard. So I think it's kind of, you know, it's unfair to somewhat to the property owners because they're not in control of what the gardeners are doing, and especially if they had somebody for many, many years. I know my gardener has been with me for over 18 years. So, and I honestly can't tell you what he's using right now. You know, I did talk to him recently and found out, but I think once we look at this policy, is there any other way that the code enforcement can conduct this? Or do they, do they have to do a, pull a license from the city? I know we don't have business license.
They have a business tax. All gardeners that come into the city should have a business tax. We could inform them that the gas-powered leaf blowers are not allowed. That is, I don't see why that wouldn't be an option.
Well, and I think going to the point, you know, thank you for a great report and presentation, is this is all gonna go away eventually with time because they're no longer continuing to sell the gas equipment. From what I've been told by my gardener, because I did go out and ask, you know, in anticipation of this report, is they can't even find parts to replace certain equipment they have. And yes, eventually, they are being forced to get into, buy the batteries, buy the new electric equipment. So eventually, this is gonna be the new market for them. That's the only way they're gonna replace their equipment, or have a job in the city, whether Burbank, Pasadena, or any of those other cities have implemented it. So I think it will be a much easier way, in my opinion, to address the violation instead of giving it to a homeowner that may tell you, I have no idea, and then you guys don't have the resources to be able to deal with all the calls or complaints that will be coming in.
We can definitely provide options on what enforcement will look like when we come back.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Anthony, then I'm gonna see if anyone over here wants to go.
Could I ask our, Juan Carlos?
Yes.
If you could lean into the microphone just a little bit. Typically, we don't charge a fine on the first violation, right? We do outreach, what's our, what's our normal process for a code violation?
We notify them with a notice of violation and give them reasonable time to correct it. There is no fine initially.
Okay, okay.
Great, any other questions? All right, well then, let's go to deliberation. What is the council's pleasure? Yes, Councilmember.
I have a letter that was written to me that I'd like to read into the record. This agenda item was supposed to be in our last meeting, so this is dated August 23rd. A completely authentic letter about leaf blowers. Dear former Mayor Anthony, thank you for taking on an issue close to my heart and too close to my ears. Now there are a lot of cogent arguments against leaf blowers. The first is that leaves are the way trees regenerate, and for the first several million years of their existence, they did find without store-bought fertilizers, blowing them away or putting them into bags so they can decompose somewhere else is wasteful. There's the fact that many blowers leak formaldehyde and benzene. Exposing our youth to these chemicals for free will lower their interest in while paying, while paying fields like the funerary arts. Oh, I see, formaldehyde and benzene. Third is the some blowers for an hour of operation emit as much pollution as a car going from LA to San Francisco and back. It is my opinion that if you're going to San Francisco, at least stay there a bit. But do you really need to go? Okay. I would like to reiterate that I am a real resident, and I live over on Olive somewhere near Tallyrand. Oh, boy. Mr. Anthony, the noise of leaf blowers have ruined my life. I'm an outdoorsy guy, and I had a wedding over in Mountain View Park. The view is wonderful, the noise is deafening. I couldn't hear the rabbi say I could kiss my bride, and she took me seeming reluctance badly. Fool that I am, I agreed to a home birth for my daughter. Oh, my God, things are, we're proceeding apace until we opened the window for some air, and we were deafened by the leaf blower. This sinister development ruined the audio of my birth video. There's no epidural against noise pollution. It's almost done. The leaf blowers seem to follow me like the titular birds in Alfred Hitchcock's movie, The Birds, or the violin strings that aren't in the title of the movie Psycho. Job interviews, backyard picnics, rare leaf collecting, all ruined by these contraptions. Please ban them in our fair city that I'd like to reiterate I live in. Thank you for your help in this matter. Burl B. Ank voter. I'm sorry.
Guys, may I see that letter?
So...
Burl Bank voter.
Burl Bank voter.
Well, well, well done.
That's one way to get around a limitation on public comment.
All right.
So many questions, but with that said...
But there were some facts in there. The, the gas, the exhaustion, the noise, very much problematic, and...
And you would like to do what?
Well, I would like to see council's pleasure on moving something forward to see if we could at least put forth a regulation on, at a minimum, the, the two-stroke engine of a leaf blower. But I'm more than happy to see if we could do a full soars ban. And the reason I mention that is, they, you know, for the other farming equipment, farming equipment, landscaping equipment, excuse me, it is just as loud, right? So some of these lawn mowers and some of these weed whackers are just as loud as the leaf blowers. And so if that's an issue, we may want to look at that. However, I will say a lot of these other pieces of equipment are used for larger landscape and not necessarily in residential communities, which I think is the major problem. But definitely, at least at a minimum, the leaf blowers throughout the city.
All right, outstanding. I guess I do have one follow-up question based on, I'm sorry, the letter distracted me. So if we were to pursue, if we were even to study the concept of potentially banning all soars, we're talking about leaf blowers, we're talking about lawn mowers, weed trimmers, that's sort of one category. I guess my question is, might we, I'm assuming you need to do a bit of work on this, because if we're gonna ban airport ground support equipment that could affect operations at Hollywood Burbank Airport, so that would be something we'd have to engage in conversation with them about. And then generators, I would imagine that could affect any number of institutions, including our hospitals. So it just seems like there's a lot of work that we probably need to do to find out what others, if any other city has banned them? And if so, are there exemptions, are there hardship criteria? So is that the sort of thing that if we were to pursue a line of further exploration that you would be willing to look at?
Yes, absolutely. We definitely have to check into feasibility to see if there are actually zero-emission options available for some of those soars. Because if there's not, I don't think it'd be appropriate to ban them until there's replacements available. I, on my surface-level research, I know, I believe it was Irvine, they are banning all soars, they're working on a process for that, and they're rolling it out over several different years. So like first level is like leaf blowers, and then lawn mowers, and then like every, it's like every couple of years, they're adding a few more. So it's a progressive rollout. So it's definitely something we can look into and bring back more research and information on, if that's the direction council would like to move.
Thank you, Mr. Hess.
If I could, obviously, the more research, that's gonna take more time. So you could certainly target the, the gas-powered leaf blowers now, and we could build upon that later and get that back to you sooner, and do some of these other ones maybe later in a phased approach. But if you do ask for a lot more about airports and golf carts and generators, that's gonna take some time. We're just gonna need that time. So be strategic as far as, you know, how you want to go about that.
You read my mind. Councilmember Anthony, and then I'm seeing Takahashi.
Just a quick follow-up question. Bouncy castles, do they use those soars?
That's a good question.
You wrote this letter, I'm convinced.
Look into it, look into it.
I believe they're electric blowers, plug-in. I've seen them blow, uh, household breakers, and then the whole thing deflates for kids.
I've seen those, but I have also seen some at our parks. And I believe those are generators and those...
What would you like to add on the issue of bouncy castles?
Yes, how many bouncy castles have you participated in?
I have very strong opinions about bounce houses, but I'm not going to share them with you tonight. Just wanted to remind everyone, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, Patrick Prescott, Community Development Director, just a reminder that the direction was to look at leaf blowers. These are the ones we get complaints about, right? Okay, the, what Ms. Pika was mentioning was, do you want to just ban one? We're not saying definitely ban the others. We're just saying there are other similar gas-powered equipment, right? You don't have to, because it's all gonna go away in time because the state's banning the sale of it. And if you give us three years to implement a ban on the gas-powered leaf blowers, technology will improve, batteries will improve, cheaper, et cetera. People may have bought something less, you know, before the ban took effect. Give them a chance to burn through it, let it fall apart. The clever people may be able to keep it alive longer. As Councilmember Mullins says, parts are gonna get harder and harder to find. The other thing is that we've received emails from people saying, yes, please ban these noisy awful things. Well, they're gonna still exist, okay? Because there's, electric leaf blowers will still generate noise, they're still gonna kick up dust. So you'll just not have the smell of the fumes, right? Just, it's not going to, and Juan Carlos, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but the complaints we get about leaf blowers are that they're operating out of normal hours, allowable hours, or they're going too long, right?
Correct, yeah. Yes, that they're using the leaf blowers before 8:00 AM, or that they're using them for longer than 15 minutes at a property.
It's a noise complaint. So we will likely continue to get noise complaints with electric leaf blowers. Just wanted, I guess I'm just dumping cold water on everything tonight, but I just want to bring it back to the, the leaf blower question.
I appreciate your guidance, Mr. Prescott.
But if you want more, we're happy to look at it. As Mr. Hess said, it's just gonna take a little longer.
We're gonna talk about bounce houses, but that'll be another night. So let me kick in to some of my other colleagues. Councilmember Takahashi, do you have any thoughts on this?
Yes, thank you. Thank you for all the information and this discussion. I know this is definitely something our community is interested in because of the noise, but there is definitely a legitimate concern about the gas-poweredness and the two, what's it called again? The two-stroke engine. And I do think that while there is an economic, potential economic strain on the transition to electric power, there's also a health strain on those who use it. And it's a health strain on the people who use it every day, but it's the people who walk by it. So I think there is a concern, a general concern in the community in addition to the noise. So that is definitely there. And I think that while it is a potentially, you know, long-term, esteemable goal to ban all soars, that that will be a bigger conversation, a longer process. And I think to the city manager's point, that if we target the leaf blowers, the gas-powered leaf blowers, we'll be doing what the community is asking us to do, and it'll be a more direct process. That said, I think if we do it too quickly, it's too much of whiplash for our communities who are using it in their, in their work, especially since the statewide ban on sale of gas-powered leaf blowers just started at the beginning of this year. So I think that I would, I would like to move forward with this specifically for leaf, gas leaf blowers, but I would also like to look at it as a, potentially give it some time to transition. So maybe like a year or two to transition versus an immediate ban. So, but I am interested in moving forward with this, in addition, with the additional information I asked from staff. I also am very worried, even though I know that there's not a lot of decibel difference between gas and electric, it really does, over a long term, impact your hearing. My father has, it's funny, I mentioned this earlier, I think it was to the city manager, my father has hearing loss from years of being around machines in the, in the shop, in the tire shop. So that, that noise, even though it may be not as, it be only a little bit louder than electric, it can be enough to cause ear damage over time. So I do think that that is worthwhile to look into. And in the high-frequency, low-frequency noise. So I would like to move forward if everyone's amenable to that, and save the soars, the rest of the soars for later. But I do, I'm interested eventually looking at that, but for now, just the gas-powered leaf blowers. Thank you.
Councilmember Mullins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And Councilmember Takahashi, I am also in agreement that we need to move forward with what we have before us, which is the, the leaf blowers. And, you know, they are, obviously, we've been having discussions for a long time in regards to that because of health reasons, noise reasons. But I'm also concerned about displacing a lot of individuals who are out there working, you know, as gardeners, who cannot afford it right away, who needs the time to purchase the new equipment. And I'm also concerned about even our own city, and how are we gonna replace all our equipment? I'd like to be the leader in showing this is what we did instead of imposing something on our gardeners where we can't even do it ourselves because it's gonna cost a lot of money, we need to build the facility for the batteries. The batteries is a big problem. And obviously, they're getting better and better at it every day and making them last longer. Because from my understanding and talking to my gardener, he has to go plug it in every so often. There's a concern over theft, because we all know, we have heard or seen from individuals that post on social media, they steal their equipment from the truck, sometime they steal the whole truck, and they take everything and they dump it somewhere else. So they're concerned about that as well, because having two or three batteries. I know the industry is phasing this out, phasing the gas blowers, and they can't find the parts, they can't purchase any new equipment. So I am in complete agreement with the city manager and staff's recommendation that we do need to take action now, ban it, but do it in the three years to allow them the time to find the finances to be able to do it, find the room that where we're gonna store the batteries, and then also put out proper notifications to homeowners and to the gardeners working in our community to let them know that we are gonna start effective, and I'm gonna go with Mr., the mayor's always wanting to have a date certain, so...
I do.
So let's give him a date certain, the three years, based on the recommendation, that will be...
January 1 of 2028, is what you're probably suggesting if it's three years.
Here you go, is that three years from...
Well...
Okay, well, almost.
Three years and a little change.
Okay. So that will have the date certain, so I think...
Yeah, we don't have it organized yet, so yeah.
I think she was just giving directions.
But that works, that works, yeah.
Yeah, some directions. I think that's always very helpful to have the dates so everybody knows effective that date. If you show up at my house and you're gonna give me a warning or a violation because I'm the homeowner and I still have my gardener using gas blowers, at least we've done our homework and we've notified everyone in advance. So I am in agreement that we should move forward and then take a look at the other, the castle houses, for example, or whatever else you can come up with that is very creative, that causes pollution in the air. And then we can look at those at a later date.
Could I ask, why, why three years? Why, why so long? I want to get this done in a year, maybe six months.
So that's a great question. I'd like to kick it to the Vice Mayor to answer that and any other thoughts you have, and then we'll go around.
That leads me into my, my line of thought here. I like to think about this in a lot of the same way that we thought about the plastics ban. It's a very similar concept that we're dealing with. So we're looking at banning something that we would like to phase out and give a, give our providers, in this instance, the gardeners, in the former instance, the restaurants, some time to phase out. I have to say, I'm not in favor of just allowing the gradual phase out because I can tell you, I can get creative, I do know my way around a car, and I know my way around a motor. I'll make that gas-powered leaf blower last an extra 10 years. So I want to make sure that we are putting a ban that is gonna go in place, and that is going to have an actual date where these items are no longer allowed. I also questioned the three years, it feels long to me. The only way I'm comfortable with something like that is if it comes with a piece of education, the way we've been doing it with the restaurants. We, a lot of folks ask us, why are the restaurants getting a long time for the plastics ban? Well, it is because we have folks going in there and providing education, providing information on a topic that is not readily understandable. I don't know that, well, maybe Katie at this point, but I don't know that anybody else in the room can sit here and be like, I know exactly where to find rebates, where to find information on lowered costs on this equipment. And so I want to make sure that we give ample time for our staff to provide that education to the providers who are gardening, to the homeowners, because I actually do feel that the onus should be on them. It is the way that every city has done their ordinance, and it is the only way we have some level of control because you're essentially hiring the work. So it's on you to say, hey, the city has now banned this, right? And so I understand a three-year ban, I'd love to see like two years personally. And in a similar way to the plastics ordinance, if we... way to the plastics ordinance, if we were to say like two years plus like, you know, you get a notice and then another warning and then education and then, you know, there, there are steps before you get some kind of a fine or penalty. I would love to see that kind of system. Um, and then in agreement with Councilmember Takahashi, I'm only looking at the gas-powered leaf blowers. I don't know, I don't, I have not received a single complaint about bouncy castles. I'll let you know when I do, but I haven't. A lot of folks are complaining about the leaf blowers. And I know we discussed that there's very minimal difference between a gas-powered one and an electric one. I don't know, this is one person's opinion and this is, take it as you will, it's anecdotal. I feel like there's a huge difference. The gardeners who work around my building complex recently changed and it's been night and day because I got to tell you, I've been on many calls with city staff, with our city manager, where I can barely hear them because I hear the leaf blower outside and it's not the same anymore with the electric one. So I don't know if that has something to do with the decibels, the sound travels better, um, from the gas equipment, the frequency, right? So there is a difference, and at the end of the day, it is also a health issue. And it's why I think cities like LA have done the, the feet difference, which I know it's harder to enforce, I know it's an issue, but might be something we also want to take a look at because to Mr. Prescott's point, the main complaint is noise. The main complaint is this was happening right outside my window. And that's the only way you, you essentially handle those kinds of things.
So it sounds like we have three agreements here.
I suppose I should jump in. Uh, I'll be very quick. Great presentation again. Um, you know, I, I, I actually really, as much as we joke around, I actually, something that you said, Councilmember Mullins, really resonated with me. There is an equity piece to all of this, and the cost will be borne by the homeowners, but it will impact, um, those who will probably feel it the hardest in, among us in the, in our community. And so that's why I think that some sort of, uh, dated, uh, you know, set out a date, whether it's two years or three years, it's a much more equitable approach to me, and it will lessen, soften the impact, if you will. Um, with all due respect to the vice mayor, um, in a prior life, as you know, I, I, I lived in LA, I was involved in LA politics, and I can tell you that having an arbitrary 100-foot, 500-foot ban, it is ridiculously challenging to enforce. I, I would not, i- if, if my colleagues want to explore it, absolutely, but I will tell you from being on the receiving end of many complaints from our residents, it's very challenging to enforce, and I think that we would be setting our staff up for more headaches. I think it's just much easier to have an outright ban of use of the equipment than some sort of arbitrary, you know, setback because then the, the argument will inevitably become, you say I was 497 feet, I was actually 501 feet. And that is so impossible to prove. Um, you know, I think three years does not sound unreasonable to me. I'm also fine with two. You could ask for a next step, uh, report or even consideration of an ordinance, and you could make that determination later. That's probably for the next council to consider. Um, so what I would like someone to encourage to do is if there's consensus, Mr. Hess, I guess it would be a next step report on a potential ordinance is what we're looking at?
Yeah, we'd come back with, uh, a proposed ordinance for you based on your direction.
Okay. So what is the council's pleasure?
Well, I'd like to throw one more thing out there, and is that we could cut the time down if we increased our rebate. If we offered a better incentive, we might be
We don't actually offer a rebate, though. It's all through CARB, it's through, it's through, uh, state
Don't, BWP, don't, what do we have?
Well, I guess BWP is.
We have our own individual rebate, right?
Yes, Burbank Water and Power does have a rebate program, but I'm, I'm not versed in the details of that.
Well, yeah, what I'm saying is if we really wanted to, if we, if we wanted to speed it along, that would be my
But we don't have to, you know, you're right, but we don't have to make that determination tonight.
Exactly.
That can be later.
We can have that out next time.
I'm just throwing that out there.
Exactly.
But yeah, precisely. So would anyone like to make a motion on a next step report, potential ordinance? Uh, Councilmember Takahashi, I know you, you had originally requested the item.
Of course, I had a word it, but I'd like to make a motion that we, um, give direction to introduce an ordinance for, specifically for gas power leaf blower ban, uh, with consideration of the input that we had tonight from council, um, and information, additional information as well. Is that enough direction for staff?
Can, can I just say propose an ordinance?
Propose.
Propose to bring back an ordinance rather than introduce. Introduce can mean something very different.
Thank you.
Yeah. Does staff have sufficient information of what council's looking for? Some sort of date set out, whether that's two years or three years, an outright ban, as I understand it? Anything else?
May I ask a question? I think the city manager, um, you came up, not you specifically, but with your approval, staff came up with three years. There was, there was a reason for it. It wasn't because you were trying to push it down for three years. Perhaps sh- um, let us know what that three years means to the city and how it's going to impact us first.
Yeah, clearly there's an impact to, um, the gardeners, those using the equipment. So that was, you know, there's an investment there that we thought we could phase in, uh, but certainly to the city as well. Um, there, there's, you know, there's modification in vehicles and, and us purchasing, um, equipment too. So that's why we kind of give the, that, that was part of the, um, reasoning for the three years as well. So, um, uh, and, and you do have, we do qualify for rebates and stuff, but we still have to, there, there's, there's, um, there's quite a few things we got to do both between, uh, um, Public Works as well as Park and Rec.
Okay. So before we go on, do we have a second?
All second. And I just want to clarify and add and make sure that it comes with a plan for that education and outreach to the gardeners, homeowners, all that.
Okay. So, okay, you're in agreement with that? Okay, so we have a motion from Takahashi, a second from Perez, council member.
Just final point of discussion, as per our previous report.
We're not including the bouncy houses, I'm sorry.
No, the previous report we had this evening, uh, I'd like to see, uh, BWP possibly increase the rebates for people who wish to comply early. That's just a possible discussion.
Mr. Hess, could that be part of a future?
I, I think that really should be part of the BWP rebate program, uh, uh, because they have specific money with, uh, very specific strings attached to that. They do bring it back every year at that point, um, especially, um, you know, that, that comes up every year. I, I would much rather put it in context with all the other rebates.
Should I agendize that then later at the end of the night, or?
Um, sure. We, we have direction, but feel free to go on record with that.
Okay. Yeah. Um, thank you, Councilmember Mullins, for the motion to extend past 11, and thank you very much. Vice mayor, for the second on that. All in favor, raise your hand. We're going past 11. Outstanding.
Now, now, tell the next meeting.
Yet. Next meeting.
Next meeting.
And besides, this is the last item, so there's nothing else to push.
I really want to hear what my colleagues did the last two weeks. Um, so we have a motion and a second. Anything else? I just want to say, thank you for sharing that letter, and Adam, wherever you are, touche. That was extraordinarily well-written and made my night. With that, Ms. Clark, let's conduct the roll.
Councilmember Anthony?
Yes.
Councilmember Mullins?
Yes.
Councilmember Takahashi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Perez?
Yes.
And Mayor Schultz.
Yes. Motion carries, 5-0. We now come to that favorite time of the meeting, right, Councilmember Mullins, where we get to report out on the things that we've done. But tonight, we're going to start with our vice mayor.
Alrighty, so
Vice mayor, what have you been up to?
So, um, uh, mine is very quick and easy. Um, last week, I, along with, um, our assistant city manager Courtney Paget and two of our live fabulous library staff members, made the trek over to Arezzo, Italy, our sister city, in order to conduct the twinning ceremony where we officially sign that we're sister cities, and in order to learn more about their library structure and their waste and organics facility. It was very informative for us, and, and we learned a lot of things that make us very similar, actually. We have a lot of similarities with our sister city and the things that make us different. So it, it was very interesting. It was a learning experience for all of us. I'm sure there will be an update to come from, from staff. Um, and yeah, that's, that's all I really did last week, Mr. Mayor. It's, it's a long flight.
All right. Well, thank you, and to Ms. Paget for making the trip. Sounds great. Can't wait to hear about the report back. Um, let's go to Councilmember Anthony. Did you spend any time at a bouncy house? It's okay, they're fun.
I'm on the boat.
Would you like to elaborate, Mr. McDougal? Okay.
That was an ode to green eggs and ham.
All right, back, why am, why am I doing this job? Back to the agenda. Report out on your council committee assignments.
Uh, back on, uh, the 29th, I was at the VICA's annual local office holders luncheon. That was very fun. Um, the mayor
Sitting with the Southland Realtors, if I remember correctly.
I was sitting with the Realtors. Uh, the mayor had a very impassioned speech, uh, very powerful. Um, I, uh, went to, uh, our friends down here at, uh, the Bob's Burger, uh, production, uh, facility, and they did a table read, and it was very fun for me to sit in and see, uh, animation in, uh, table read form. That was very fun. And then I went to, um, the rent cap study in person on Saturday. Um, it was very well-attended. Um, and yes, this, the city attorney answered every question very cogently. I was rather impressed at how well you, uh, were just fielding all kinds of questions, left, right, and center. Very impressive, very impressive, sir. Thank you.
Very thoughtful.
Very mindful.
Very demerit. All right. Anything else, Councilmember Anthony?
I'm done.
No, we're going over to Councilmember Takahashi. I'm giving you a break tonight.
You get to go last, or next to last. All right, let's see, Wednesday, August 28th, I attended the senior citizen board with Councilmember Mullins. Um, and then on September 3rd, I had the privilege of attending two SCAG presentations. One was about, uh, quick build transportation safety projects, and they gave a bunch of examples about that, as well as, um, uh, active transportation and art installations together. So, which focused mostly on con- uh, asphalt art and crosswalks. So lots of cool examples, and I forwarded all that information to staff, by the way, so they can be inspired potentially to do some cool stuff. On September 4th, I attended the Magnolia Park P-Bid meeting where they're contemplating starting a P-Bid and, and listened to the small businesses there and their questions. On the 5th, I attended the SCAG Energy and Environment Committee meeting with the mayor. On the 7th, uh, it was 106 degrees outside, I think, I attended the Cultural Arts Fall Festival at Johnny Carson Park for, with Councilmember Mullins for, I think, an hour and a half, is about as long as we could last that day. Um, kudos to everyone who was there. I think it got cooler after we left, but yeah. Oh, you went later?
Beginning.
Oh, you went at the beginning? Oh, my gosh, okay. Um, let's see, um, on, let's see, yesterday, I attended the Sister City Committee meeting. Um, one of the, one of the applicants mentioned that, Robbie mentioned that, and the room was full. It was so cool to see so many people interested in doing our Sister City program. Um, there's going to be a long waiting list, so that was pretty cool. We got to hear from some of the students who went, some of the chaperones. By the way, chaperones get to go to Japan and Korea for free if you want a chaperone. So just saying. Um, and earlier today, I met with a community member that does not have a car and what their life is like in Burbank without a car. So that was an interesting conversation. And then lastly, um, right before this meeting, I had a meeting with the, um, uh, with the Burbank Childcare Needs Assessment Report Team, and then came right here.
Wonderful. Thank you. Long awaited. Councilmember Mullins, what have you been up to?
You made me wait so long, I forgot.
Don't worry, next week, you're back at the front.
Okay. Um, Wednesday, August 28th, attended senior citizen board meeting, welcomed the new members. And then on the same day, I, I had a meeting with the F- Aphriat Consulting regarding the Marriott expansion project. They gave me an update to what's happening with the project. And the same day, I attended the Transportation Commission meeting. So had a really nice fall day of meetings. Um, and then following day in the morning, I attended a restaurant dollar education workshop. It was a really good workshop put by the Chamber of Commerce, um, just trying to help our businesses how to be, um, more proactive and face all the challenges that we currently have. Um, and in the same, um, evening, there was a community meeting regarding the Burbank parking management. It was online, so I attended that. Um, and then on Wednesday, the 4th, I attended the Bisfet freshman policymaker reception. It's really good turnout, great turnout. Um, and it was at the new NBC, um, they have a new meeting room that was beautifully decorated, and, um, if you have an opportunity to see it, go see it. Uh, then I had a SCAG community meeting, Economic Human Development Committee. And on Saturday, the 7th, I attended the community meeting for potential rent cap. And yes, the city attorney did a marvelous job answering all the questions on behalf of the council. And, uh, the same day, I met Councilmember Takahashi right around 4:00 at the, uh, park where it was extremely hot, but we stuck around for like an hour and a half or so. We gave a little speech, thanked everybody, handful of people that heard us, but you know, um, I think next year, there's a plan to maybe push the date. It was, I'm sure it was nice the rest of the evening. Uh, then the same evening, left from there, went to the Colony Theater, and I saw Councilmember Anthony, who was sitting there right behind me. Great play, Civility of Albert Cashier Musical. It was amazing. I loved it. I loved it. They did a good job. And I know you were sitting behind me laughing because it was nice and funny.
It was very good. It was based on a true story, too. And I'm not going to tell you what it's about, but you wouldn't believe that it's true. You wouldn't believe it, and it absolutely is.
So if you have a chance to see it, um, highly recommend it. Um, and then Monday, the 9th, I had an interview by some members of the new class of the Leadership Burbank. And, uh, then I attended the virtual community meeting for potential rent cap. That was it.
Outstanding. Great work, everyone. I'll be quick.
I have one last thing.
Oh, you did that.
Sorry, sorry. I did it on per, no.
Yeah, good.
Um, as a member or the liaison, um, Councilmember Anthony and I for the DV Task Force, I just want to plug in, um, a movie that's been put on by Zonta, um, Club. It's called Scars Unseen. It's on October 10th at 6:00 PM. And, um, given that we are members of the DV Task Force, I'd like to promote that for individuals to go and maybe, uh, participate and see the movie. Thank you.
Wonderful. Um, okay, so Thursday, August 29th, VICA Annual Local Office Holders Luncheon, and had a chance to have a brief interaction of sorts with, uh, Council President Paul Krikorian, and we're working on hopefully having a meeting. I think I'm waiting on his folks to get back to me on their availability, so we'll keep you all posted. Um, then on, oh, uh, we had, uh, Tuesday, September 2nd, I marched in the Labor Day Parade, which was very fun, very hot. Um, and then on Thursday, SCAG Energy and Environment Committee, um, no, no reportable action per se, but always fascinating. Sunday, September 8th, um, I briefly attended the Jimmy, Jimmy Weldon Memorial Ride, uh, at their inaugural stop at the Randy's Donuts off of Hollywood Way, um, commemorating his life and what he meant. And it was, they had riders from the American Legion, and I had a little certificate to present to them. And, um, I made sure to let them know that while I was the only one there, that the entire council was holding Jimmy in their hearts that day, and they really enjoyed it. And I think they're going to try to make it an annual thing. Uh, then I went to the Eagle Scout Court of Honor for James Lawrence. Congratulations, James. And the only other thing I want to mention is that while we're dark next week, I will be with our general manager of Burbank Water and Power and, uh, Jason Maruka. Uh, we will be back in DC having meetings next week with Adam Schiff and Alex Padilla, and desperately trying to get, uh, legislative reform and more dollars for all the things that we want to do. So, you know, don't, don't burn the house down as they say, while I'm gone, please. That's it. All right. Um, now is the time for the introduction of additional agenda items. Does anybody ha- does anybody have any items not related to bouncy houses?
Um, I would like, um, just for the record, when BWP comes back with the rebate program next, um, include a possible increase for, uh, rebates on electric leaf blowers.
Wonderful.
And then one more. Um, if I could get a white paper from the city clerks And then one more, if I could get a white paper from the city clerk's office on the feasibility of allowing 16 and 17-year-olds to vote in local elections.
Great, got all that? Fantastic. Councilmember Takahashi?
Yes, thank you. I have two items. First one is, there's a program called Bright Horizons that we implemented for childcare services for our staff, it's been around for about a year, I was wondering if we could get a memo on how the program's working.
Yeah, well, I think we are almost a year or so, we could get you a memo.
Great, thank you. And then, like a first step report on potential of forming a Child and Infant Care Task Force to look at current needs in the city and availability of child and infant care, barriers to accessing childcare, cost, and also including childcare in our 15-minute Connected Communities concept, especially in a downtown civic center. So just a childcare task force.
So that would be a first step.
Wonderful, anything else? No? All right, well, colleagues, we now adjourn the meeting in memory of former Burbank Water and Power Board Member Justin Barden. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, September 24th, 2024. It will be a joint meeting in the council chamber located at 275 East Olive Avenue, 2nd floor. Thank you, everyone, and to some of you, I will see you at 6:30 AM tomorrow morning for the 23rd commemoration of 9/11. See you then.